We will go ahead and start. Thank you very much for joining us this morning at our City Council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson, here.
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Vlad?
Here. Thank you. Agenda item number two is the Childcare Committee. Representatives from the Childcare Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, members of City Council. Mayor Vlad. My name is Janee Perman. I am the Licensing Enforcement Officer for the Pocatello Police Department and the Staff Liaison for the Childcare Advisory Committee. I would like you to introduce our committee chairperson, Cory Lewis, and she is the owner of the Lighthouse and Preschool. Plus, Laura Thomas is with us today. She's a Quality Chair Consultant with Idaho Stars. First off, I would like to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to share our purpose with you guys today. It's very important. Our goal as a committee is to make recommendations regarding potential revisions to the Childcare Code, review available training classes in the area, and recommend courses which can be...
Janee, could you sit down so they can see you at home?
Of course I can.
Thank you.
So, used-to-satisfy training classes and certification requirements set forth in the Childcare Code. Currently, the city of Pocatello has 39 licensed facility, providing childcare for roughly 1,650 children in this area, which obviously affects a great deal of families within our community. Requiring childcare licensing at our level is of great value to the city of Pocatello. The requirement set forth in the Childcare Code ensures licensed childcare employees, facility residents, excuse me, and volunteers have passed background checks, verifies licensed employees and volunteers are CPR and AED certified, requires training pertaining to childcare on an annual basis, and ensures regulations set forth by the Fire and Health Departments are met. I would like to thank the City Council members for supporting our efforts in putting children first and making childcare facilities in the city of Pocatello safer.
Again, good morning, City Council and Mayor Vlad. My name is Laura Thomas, and I'm a Quality Childcare Consultant for Idaho Stars as well as a member of the Pocatello Childcare Advisory Committee. Today, I would like to share with you a few reasons why this committee is so valuable in our community. One, childcare is a necessity for many families in our community. Quality childcare is a profession that requires training and support. Young children begin learning physically, socially, emotionally, and cognitively at birth, and that learning sets a foundation for later learning. Research has shown that young children's learning experiences are crucial for child development. For example, infants who experience more words starting at birth read at a higher reading level when they enter school. We want young children in our community prepared to enter school. This preparation includes teaching children how to express and regulate their emotions in productive ways, work together, take turns, explore the world around them, and gain basic knowledge that will help them learn to read and write. This preparation is provided by many different sources in our community, including our childcare providers. Quality childcare is especially important for families who are facing challenges such as trauma or income disadvantages. Trauma and stress can affect the brain structure of young children, and quality care can help strengthen families in the community by providing families and children with support during times of need. This committee sets a standard that we care about these realities and value early childhood education in Pocatello. I work closely with many of the childcare facilities in our area, and many of them participate in voluntary improvements because they believe in the long-term effects of access to quality care on families in our community. I did give you all a handout, just to give you a little more information about different things that are going on in our childcare facilities in the community. I think I commend this committee and the City Council for really supporting this committee because it does kind of set a standard for the childcare facilities, that we value this, and a lot of the facilities in our area are doing voluntary improvements. As you can see, the first graph on this page is how many site visits were requested by our childcare facilities, and on the right of that graph is the area that they requested these site visits in. They were these quality domains here on the right, as you can see that. Parents call, looking for childcare facility, help in finding childcare facilities for referrals. You can see we had 60 parents call us in 2018 looking for referrals, and we had 14 call us for looking for referrals for children with special needs, and that also includes some of the ones that Janee gets, and she also refers them to us, so probably a few more than that in the city. If you turn to the next page, you can see what our childcare providers are doing in terms of professional development. We had 483 individual, unique training attendees. Together, we had 1,097 trainings attended by childcare providers in Pocatello in 2018. So, our childcare providers are interested in getting these trainings as well as there is a requirement required by the city, so that is a good and encouraging thing. We provide scholarships for them to get these trainings, and you can see how many, 151 scholarships were given. And then, we also have providers who, in this area, are getting academic degrees in early childhood education. Currently, we have four in Pocatello that are academic scholars, and you can see those listed there, and we also have five that are getting CDAs, which are Child Development Associates. Another thing our childcare providers participate in voluntarily is our Steps to Quality Program, and you can see that listed at the bottom. They enter in as participating, and they do voluntary improvements and work their way up. Some of these have already changed. We actually have, let's see, we have a Step Two that actually didn't get on here, so I wanted to let you know about that. That is the growing place, and they are now a Step Two, and then we have a few of these that are getting ready to move forward in their steps, one more placement than they are right now. So, I'll turn it over to Cory.
Members of the City Council and Mayor Vlad, my name is Cory Lewis. I'm the Chair for the Childcare Advisory Board Committee. I've been part of the committee for the past four years. I believe the committee serves a much-needed purpose in our community, and I'm speaking from experience, as I'm the owner of a childcare center in Pocatello. I rely on information that comes through the committee to keep us up to date on changes made concerning all aspects of childcare, including new licensing changes, changes to the code, as well as any changes that come from ICCP, which is the Idaho Childcare Program. These changes directly affect the childcare providers in the area. The Advisory Board and Idaho Stars ensure that all providers are notified. The committee provides a monthly newsletter to all providers that highlights community resources, activities for children, and health and safety information. The committee also provides three quarterly trainings per year. We have a training this month that should be of interest to many providers in the area. We will be learning about children's behaviors and the reasons behind them. We have a local clinical psychologist coming in to do the training, as well as answer questions providers may have. We're hopeful that this will turn into an ongoing meeting that providers can attend often with questions. The month of April provides opportunities to focus on early childhood. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration hosted by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, NEYC, celebrating early learning, young children, their teachers, and families. The next Week of the Young Child will be April 8th through 12th, 2019, and we would like to extend an invitation to Mayor Vlad and the City Council to tour some of the facilities in the Pocatello area. We would also like to have Mayor Vlad read a proclamation for the Week of the Young Child, as he has in the past. We're hopeful that these items will give the mayor and City Council some insights into what we do as providers and the care we provide for the children and families in the area. I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Childcare Advisory Board and your interest in providing quality care for the children in the area.
Thank you. Any questions, council, comments?
Laura, I have forgotten. Who funds the Idaho Stars program? Is that a state?
It's through the Department of Health and Welfare, and it is federally funded, but the money is run through the state. It's some of the same funds that are with the ICC, the Idaho Childcare Program.
I really appreciate your dedication, helping us here. Thank you.
Any other?
A few years ago, we were kind of cutting edge in terms of cities and the stuff we put in in terms of policy and ordinance. Where are we now? Where are we?
I would say we're still cutting the edge, shall we? I mean, we're still a little bit more stringent than a lot of the cities here in the state of Idaho. However, there has been changes at federal level that have kind of brought everybody, not everybody, but a vast majority of the state to the same level, as far as we've implemented a more stringent background check that's done, a variety of things. So, I would say there are still things that we do as a city that I have not encountered in other cities. For example, when I talk to people in like positions as mine, we do some checks into mental health and et cetera that I have not found yet. So, I do think in that aspect, we're still in the front running, shall we say.
Other questions, comments?
Maybe a quick comment?
Absolutely.
So, I'm very happy that I sit on the Child Advisory Committee. Every time I go, I learn something new and something extraordinary that we're doing as a city to care for the childcare providers in our region. So, I think it's, and I really want to encourage people to get licensed, to, you know, provide childcare. I think it's really important that everyone, all kids, get similar standard care in our area. So, thank you, guys. You guys are doing excellent.
Super. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our kids. Appreciate it. We'll move on to agenda item number three, as Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Representatives from the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
I'm Michelle Paletti. I'm the Board Chair of the Airport Advisory Board. We have Kristi Heinz, she's the Management Assistant, and Alan Evans is the Maintenance Supervisor, and they will be presenting for you today. I would like to take a moment to thank Councilman Rick Cheetham for being able to attend our meetings every month. He seems to be very present, and we appreciate that. So, and I'd also like to take a few moments to show my appreciation for Kristi and Alan for everything that they do for the airport as well, so.
Again, Kristi Heinz, Management Assistant at the airport, and I want to thank Michelle and the rest of our board. It's so great that we have some of these citizens that are willing to give up their time each month and come and help us review what we're doing. We just wanted to share a little bit of updates with you of what's been going on at the airport and some of the things the commission's been trying to tackle. Our statistics were very good this year. We had another record-breaking year as far as passenger numbers go, third year in a row that we've had a record-setting high for the last 20 years. We had just over 90,000 passengers total inbound and outbound for 2018. That was about a 16% increase. Statewide, that's the largest. I think the next largest airport was Boise, and they grew by 11%. Next one behind that was Seven, so we're growing even far faster than the rest of the airports in the state. We just completed our annual FAA certification inspection. It was February 27th through the 1st of March. It's something they have to do every year. They come out and they check our airfield and make sure that we're following all the standards that FAA has said for a vast number of things. It was the first time I actually went out on the inspection, and I'm amazed at what Alan and his crew have to do, a matter of an inch and a half here and pavement lip of an inch and a half there. There were just a few small findings that we're working on, some markings and some inch-and-a-half lips that weren't quite, a little bit more than an inch and a half, so we have to go fill in with some gravel. So, we were very pleased. It was just a couple of minor findings, and the inspectors seemed to be really pleased with our airfield and the shape that it's in, so. One thing that Airport Commission has been dealing with a lot is land development. We're having quite a bit of discussion lately trying to determine appropriate rental rates for our property out there. We do review our tenants' lease rates every year, and we've been having quite a bit of discussion and some philosophical discussions on what is market rate for the airport property. We have a hard time comparing our property to property in town because we have our own set of challenges out there and different influences and things that affect the airport property. We also are still trying to recruit. We have so much available property that we're trying to actively recruit businesses and give them, say, incentive deals to come out, so we have a hard time justifying charging our existing tenants more while we're still giving incentive rates to new businesses coming in. So, that is something that the commission has been tackling, and I don't know if you have any guidance there. You know, we've talked about maybe try and conduct a full market rate analysis, but is that really going to be comparable? We have so many differences, even with just hangars. Lots of airports don't own their own hangars. We own a few, so to try to find airports that do own hangars, that have just power and not water, because that's what ours has, and what's the condition? How old are they? It's almost impossible to get an apples-to-apples comparison. We do try, but there's always something that's a little different, so our commission has struggled with that, and they are doing a really good job at trying to wade through all of that. But that is one thing that we're going to keep working on with them, is trying to figure out what is it that we should be charging for our tenants. Our air service, as I mentioned, our boardings hit a high again for the third year in a row. The mayor and Alan and I just went and met with SkyWest Headquarters last Friday. It was a very good meeting. They know that we're here. They know that our community is supportive. We left a lasting impression when we took a group of 16 or 18 people. They will never forget how much community involvement and support we have for our airport. They are very interested to see what we can do in the future. We did have a fourth flight that they removed at the end of last year. They're not planning to put it back in yet this year, but they did leave the third flight on Saturday. When they added a fourth, the rest of the week, they added a third on Saturday. They're planning to leave that all year, so that gives a little bump in capacity, and they want to see how that goes. Hopefully, our load factors will hold, and then they can maybe bump it a little bit more. We told them we're going to do a passenger demand study this year. It's a fully encompassing study that shows us what our catchment area is, the whole region, who can we actually expect to drive over and fly out of Pocatello, and then it'll tell us, out of all those people, where are they flying and how many are using us versus how many are using other airports, so we'll know how many we're losing. It'll give us a very good picture if there's another destination that we should go after. SkyWest was very interested to see the results of that, because that basically tells you, do you have the numbers to go for another destination? And they said they'd be very willing to talk to us after that and see what kind of results those show us. So, that's the main things that we've been focusing on. Any questions?
Questions, council?
When do you expect that that would be completed?
We are just in the RFQ phase, if you will, so we're just contacting companies to get some proposals. It's a good, big, long study that takes several months. I imagine it'll take at least six months to get some results, so it'll be later in the year.
Thanks.
Other questions? I might just add that Kristi and Alan have done an incredible job at the airport, and they continue to carry that torch, and so, thank you very much for stepping up and doing what we need to have done out there, and for the committee and the Airport Commission. What you do is amazing for us, so thank you as well.
They're hanging in there with us.
They're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number four, as the City of American Falls Trails Construction Project. Mayor Mark Bedia, City of American Falls, and FFA representatives will present information regarding the construction of a proposed trail from Siegel Bay to Massacre Rock State Park. Mayor Bedia is seeking council support regarding the proposed trail. Mayor, how are you?
Good, Mayor Vlad. Council, thanks so much for having us today. We are here today to speak to you about a proposed trail that's going to, if successful, reach from Siegel Bay to Massacre Rock State Park along the reservoir, through the City of American Falls, and along Snake River to Massacre Rocks. We are here today to request a potential letter from the city of Pocatello in our request for Federal Lands Access Program grants and Idaho GEM grants. If you find the trail significantly of value to the region, I would ask you to possibly draft that letter and forward it to the City of American Falls for your support. I'm not going to talk a lot today beyond what I've just said. I brought seven of American Falls finest. I'm not exactly sure how this is going to work. They're used to doing this in front of various groups without microphones and being recorded. I guess I would ask if I could just move one of the microphones closer to the kids?
Do that, or they can come right there where you are.
They have some movement to their presentation.
Okay, don't go there then. Stay over there.
I'm not sure if we can get on.
Let me see if we can move. Can we move one of these microphones? Looks like we can.
Can you get them on camera somehow?
Can we get them on camera? This would be good, to get them on TV, see if we can't get them on the news.
They were on the news on Monday.
You're on Monday?
Yeah.
See if we can't get you picked up nationally here.
Kind of picking it up already.
What's that? Okay.
Do you want me to just hand hands thumbs up?
Let's see, Ken's got, we got the thumbs up, so.
Okay, so beyond what I've already said, these seven students are going to introduce themselves. They spent the last five months talking to various governmental agencies, various property owners, different community groups about the proposed trail, and they're going to bring to you a summary of what they found in the community of American Falls and Power County. We know that a lot of Pocatello, Bannock County resident come to Power County to recreate, a lot of them in the winter. I don't know if you're familiar with Cory White, the owner of the sand trap, Kenny's Viking group, they're over there a lot during the winter, especially on the lower part of the proposed trail. So, the group's going to talk to you today. They'll invite your questions. They may not have all the answers because we're in a real preliminary state of the trail, but they'll do the best they can. They're not nervous.
Just a little.
So, and I know Council President Johnson is a past state president
Yes.
and FFA member, so he has an appreciation for what these kids are going through, and thank you so much for having us.
If you'd speak up a little bit so the microphone will pick you up, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll just start off with our presentation. Hello, my name is Juan Ramirez, and I'm a public relations mediator. Welcome to the Power County and City of American Falls Open House. We will be conducting, discussing the potential ferry hollow trail. Before we begin our proceedings today, I'd like to give you an overview of what has brought us to this point. American Falls is requesting your support in developing a regional significant trail system. The trail system is aimed at promoting job growth and economic development by connecting the Siegel Bay recreational area alongside the American Falls reservoir, the largest reservoir on the Snake River, Willow Bay recreational area, and Massacre Rock State The closest trail system of this kind is located in southern Utah. While the line map on the map looks simple, what's down on the ground is another story. There are private property rights of way, federal, state, and local lands proposed to be within the proposed trail system. So, our question here today is, will the trail bring us together, or will it drive us apart? Which takes us back to March 26, 2015, where Governor Otterstein sent a bill 1044 into law. He stated that municipalities can no longer seize private property in exchange of court-approved fair payments to build paths, trails, and greenways. Prior to the vote, Cynthia Gibson, Executive Director of Idaho's Walk-Bike Alliance, who represents the 30% of Idahoans who don't drive a car, attests that these paths and green belts are forms of transportation. She further reported to a 2011 survey conducted by Beldon Ruzanello, strategist, who found that home buyers are willing to pay 20 to 30% more on homes in walkable communities. Wayne Hoffman, Executive Director of Idaho's Freedom Foundation, spoke in favor of Senate Bill 1044. He stated that eminent domain is a weapon. He further stated that it is used to threaten and ultimately injure private property owners. Every opportunity we have to take away this power is something I want to utilize. Both sentiments of Gibson and Hoffman exist in Power County and the City of American Falls. These opinions and personal property rights make it impossible to answer the question here today, so we ask each of you, will the trail bring us together, or will it drive us apart? At this moment, I'll call upon each representative stakeholder here today to give us an overview of their positions.
I'm Marylise Barrera, and I represent the law enforcement in Power County and the City of American Falls. My biggest concerns are our ability to patrol and how we will handle the inevitable vandalism.
I'm Rosa Mata, and I'll be representing the City of American Falls. The trail will support existing jobs and create new ones, bringing economic development and increasing prosperity to all local businesses.
I am Aleah Pedros, an outdoor enthusiast. My concerns are centered around the safety of the people of our community, as well as welcoming visitors to the way of life I grew up loving.
I'm Guadalupe Muriel, the concessionaire at Willow Bay Recreation Area. The ferry hollow trail will turn Willow Bay, Siegel Bay, Massacre Rock State Park, and our entire community into a destination area.
I am Card Sanchez, and I am a private landowner. My two biggest concerns are personal ability and the maintenance of the trail.
I am Osway Morales, fishing game warden. I believe the trail will enhance access to public resources. The Snake River below the American Falls reservoir and the American Falls reservoir offer some of the best trophy trout, fishing, and birding in the country. Everyone should have the ability to enjoy it.
Team, fall in. Will the trail bring us together, or tear us apart? That is a question to be addressed here today. Team, speak out.
To many added costs, increase economic development, increase danger.
Willow Bay a destination.
Who is liable?
Improve access.
Team, fall out. At this moment, I'll call upon each representative stakeholder here today and interview them with a series of two questions each. Throughout the interviews, please feel free to take notes or come up with any questions, and at the end of, at the conclusion of our open house, we will address your questions and concerns. Let's start off with law enforcement. What are your first concerns of the proposed trail?
One of the main concerns of law enforcement is who will be responsible for making sure there is no trespassing. A law with trespassing could come vandalism, and as of right now, we don't have enough resources to hire officers to be on patrol. The proposed trail is 25 miles long. Within the county and city, we currently barely have enough sheriffs, deputies, and police officers to be on patrol of existing areas of concern. Additional patrol efforts required on this trail can be a real budgetary concern. Even if we were able to patrol along this trail, there is no way that vandalism will be stopped, and it is our opinion that trespassing of public and private property could very likely increase because, as a result of this proposed trail.
That is a bit discouraging. What does City Council want to say in response?
The ferry hollow trail should definitely be built because this is a great way to develop businesses and recreational opportunities in the area. Through these developments, revenue should increase as should our budget. The City of American Falls already has many recreational opportunities for visitors and residents, opportunities like birding, cycling, fishing, a nine-hole golf course, access to Snake River, and the American Falls reservoir. A trail like this fits in extremely well with developments happening in and around the city. The trail will support existing jobs and create more because of more people coming to the area.
What are the views of a concerned citizen, Aleah?
My concerns are centered around the safety of the people of our community. People who are going to use the remote sections of the trail will be at an even higher risk of facing danger. Of course, everyone's at a risk of facing danger all the time, but I feel that the trail will be raising that risk to an unnecessary level. The proposed trail will be along 100-foot cliffs, as well as very close to deep, fast-moving water. Accidents happen. It is entirely possible for someone to fall off the trail into the rushing river. With that being said, rescue attempts will be difficult because most of the proposed trail will be secluded.
Accidents do happen. Let's talk with Willow Bay concessionaire about the other recreational opportunities associated with the trail.
Well, Juan, other activities include historical sites and the Oregon Trail, geocaching, swimming, camping, picnicking, hiking, biking, birding, paddle boarding, boating, horseshoe, volleyball, playground sets, frisbee golf, golf, canoe trails, wildlife, basketball, softball, exercise equipment, refreshment, and dining already exist in our community. Now, imagine what it'd be like to be able to watch all these activities and see the diverse and beautiful landscape. The proposed 25-mile trail does exactly that. With increased connectivity, it'll encourage all of us to get out more. The ferry hollow trail connects people from near and far with sights and experiences found together in very few places, creating a new destination in the West.
That does sound promising. What are concerns of private landowners? What are concerns of a private landowner, Katia?
As a private landowner, I am concerned about liability, trespassing, and property damage. I do not want to be sued. Why would I or any other private landowner lonely subject themselves to such liabilities? I won't. Farming a region involves tillage with very large equipment, irrigation, the application of insecticides, herbicides, and fungicides, all of which cause post-risk of decaution if not used. The requirement of decaution increases my liability.
Where does Idaho's fishing game weigh on the situation, Osway?
This area is one of the West's best-kept secrets. Opening year-round fishing, the river shines at one of the world's best winter tailwater fisheries. Beyond fishing, it is also one of the world, one of Idaho's best year-round birding sites. The Idaho fishing game and other public resource management agencies are charged with providing access to our public plants. I can think of no better place to do this than along the Snake River and the American Falls reservoir in eastern Idaho. The trail will provide access to sections of the river never before accessible except by boat. With accessibility comes awareness. Public awareness brings acceptable and responsible use.
What does Idaho's law enforcement feel about public awareness?
Much of the proposed trail is single-track and miles away from town. Accidents happen even in good conditions. People get hurt. Law enforcement is concerned about the safety of our community and tourists that come to use this trail. Weather conditions and water levels may make it very difficult for emergency services to get to parts of the trail if needed. The trail itself doesn't generate any direct revenue that could help us provide resources and services to keep this trail safe. If the trail were built, marker signs will need to be placed, making it easier for us to find a person in case of an accident.
I can see how emergency access will be a concern. But what are some other economical benefits associated with the trail?
The proposed trail system will allow more access for all activities in the area. These visitors and recreational owners spend money in the community. The Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation's 2018 Economic Impact Analysis of State Parks currently estimates that 14 local jobs are supported by visitation to Massacre Rock State Park and another 15 at Willow Bay. The total local direct spending by visitors to Massacre Rocks in 2017 is estimated at $402,000. Total associated spending is $735,000, while Willow Bay expects a gross income of $350,000 to $400,000 in 2019. Approximately 62% of this direct spending was directed towards gas purchases, convenience stores, and restaurant visits. The total local direct spending per visitor is estimated at $10.44, while total impact per visitor is calculated at $19.14. These dollars add up.
Those dollar amounts certainly sound significant to a small Idaho town. How do local opponents feel about this, Aleah?
I live in American Falls because I love to hunt and fish. There's no better place for everything I love to do outdoors. I hunt on the Snake River and private farm that belongs to East Bank. I'm not sure how forgiving hunters would be if hikers and bikers were to access the trail near Duck Blind or Spread of Goose decoys. I'm not suggesting someone would be harmed by hunter, but tempers would certainly flare. The trail creates a potential conflict that doesn't need to exist. It may as well change everything I grew up loving.
How do local businesses feel about this, Guadalupe?
As a concessionaire at Willow Bay, it is my hope that the ferry hollow trail will connect all activities available in Power County year-round and will bring more value to my business. The hiking and biking path will draw additional visitation to the region as proven in like-minded communities across the country. A similar trail network, the trail in Port Lane exceeds 55,000 people per year with total direct spending estimated to be $566,000 in 2017. It is estimated that an additional 10,000 visitors will come to the region with the completion of the trail, supporting the creation of three permanent and numerous seasonal local jobs within the first three years. Total impact spending is estimated to be $141,000 annually with the completion of the trail. The ferry hollow trail is good to all businesses and helps create a real destination.
Those numbers do sound promising. Yet, you will need access to law private property. Are all landowners on board, Katia?
Let's say I agree to an easement along that of my property. Who's going to maintain the trail and that easement? I know I won't, and I suspect neither will my neighbors. The trail becomes a bigger liability if it isn't properly maintained. The maintenance of the trail is one of the biggest concerns for everyone here. The county and city continually cry poverty. How are they going to keep it clean? You just heard law enforcement can't even patrol it. So unless my concerns about liability, trespassing, and property damage can't be satisfied, I am a definite no on the trail.
How would government agencies suggest these concerns?
In 2018, Idaho trespass laws changed, but the core philosophies did not. It is still the enforcement's responsibility, it is still the enforcement's responsibility to know when they are on private property and to obtain the permission to be there. If it is built, the ferry hollow trail should be clearly signed and private property distinguished from the trail. Idaho law states that private property owners are not held liable for those who trespass and become injured if there is no charge for the access. It is the obligation of the land user to exercise due caution at all times. It seems that with a little common sense and a little courtesy in regards to the trail could serve in everyone's best interest. It has been proven in time, has been proven time and again that the trails with the highest use are those that are best maintained and cleaned by the users. Time will tell if that happens here.
As you can see, it'll be difficult to bring us all together. At this moment, I'll call upon each representative stakeholder here today to give us a summary of their positions. Let's start with those opposed to the trail.
The proposed trail will add more patrol responsibility for law enforcement, increase incidence of vandalism, and make it very difficult to ensure public safety. Therefore, I am against the trail.
Liability issues and maintenance responsibilities have not been fully addressed, especially on private property. Therefore, I am a definite no on the trail.
The trail seems to be associated with many risks. Between hunting practices and those accustomed to farming, farming, undeterred, it just isn't something I'm interested in supporting.
Thank you. Well, those in favor of the trail, please summarize.
The trail will add recreational opportunities while adding jobs, increasing revenues, and diversify our economic base. Therefore, I am for the trail.
Connectivity to year-round activities will make our community a destination rather than a stop to someplace else. I strongly support this trail.
With a bit of common sense and a little give and take, public access to these areas and activities along the Snake River could well be, could well be a win-win for everyone.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our open house. We will now address your questions and concerns.
Funding is always a big thing. How is this going to be funded?
We have been applying for flat grant. A flat, a flat grant in which we had previously used for an emergency exit. Access, yes. So, we will be using the flat grants.
Have you obtained easements along the trail, proposed trail area?
There are some private landowners that are willing to let the trail pass by their private property, but there are some that are really against it. And if the private landowner is really against it, then we'll just have to change, like change the way it's going, which that would make the trail longer than it really needs to be.
What's the proposed access? Is this foot only? Is it bicycle, motorcycle, ATV? What's horses? What's going to be on it?
For now, it is actually only a hiking and biking path right now, but some landowners have been requesting. Maybe they would consider the path going through its property if it would be equine. So, a horse could go through it. Maybe they would consider the trail going through their property.
Yeah, and I was going to add, because it is only a single-track trail, that's why it would be so hard to get emergency access into there because it is so small, you cannot get an ATV or any other emergency access to get someone who is harmed.
Have any of you walked the trail?
Personally?
Yes.
I have not.
Well, the trail hasn't been exactly established. The only trail that we have in American Falls is located at Willow Bay, and I have personally walked through the Willow Bay Trail, but it's just, it's a smaller trail than the one we are proposing right now. Because the 25-mile trail is proposed to connect the Willow Bay Trail, and then we're going to build another one. We're going to create one at Siegel Bay, and then from Willow Bay, it'll go through our town. And then we'll make, build another one, which will connect to our ferry hollow section, which there still exists part of the Oregon Trail. So, people will actually walk through the Oregon Trail. And then from there, we will build it till we get to Massacre Rocks, and then we'll connect, Massacre Rocks has given us permission to use their smaller trails, which our trail will connect to theirs.
Has this presentation been made to the Power County Commission?
I'm sorry?
Has this presentation been made to the Power County Commission?
Yes, it has.
And their response?
Oh, we... Monday. We presented to them Monday, and they seemed like they were in favor of the trail. They gave us a lot of information that would be valuable to our team so we can address those concerns a little more.
I'm just curious, in your presentation, you have the three opposed and the three in favor. Is that your personal opinions or are you just arguing the case?
We're just arguing the case. We all have different views of the proposed trail, which I'm not sure what they are, but I'm pretty sure we have different views.
Were you assigned your positions or did you choose?
We all represent certain, yeah, certain people, and we can definitely say who we represent in that position.
Oh, I caught that in the beginning, but I was just wondering if you chose those based on your own views or if you were assigned to argue your case or?
Yeah, so in the beginning, we did make eight sides, and we did get to choose those. We have been making some changes to our team though, so some of them had to be assigned to a certain person. But yeah, mostly all of us chose our own.
You all did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Has the Shoshone Bannock Tribe been approached with this?
We have not addressed this trail to any American tribe, but I'm pretty sure we most likely will at some point. So, just to answer your question, we're looking for, well, probably in favor of looking forward to addressing this concern to them.
Any other questions, Ken?
What's it going to cost?
Since we haven't fully been, like, we haven't fully addressed the trail right now, we're still deciding on if we're going to ask for a grant that we can just build it completely or if we're going to divide it up into like smaller grants, like the A section, the B section, and the C section. So, we're still not sure about the cost of the trail.
We also are discussing if we want to make, how many areas we're going to make available to people with disabilities. And with that, that adds cost, and we have to decide how many of those areas we are going to make those accessible for. And so, we just still haven't gotten all those concerns, I guess.
And adding on to that, we're still in the early stages of this proposed trail. So, we're still applying for grants, and we're just, like I said, in the early stages. So, right now, we're just trying to find how much help we can get with the trail.
How many of you are seniors?
To add on to that, we are also still deciding where to put restrooms and drinking fountains, so that would also add cost to the trail.
Have you consulted with Blackfoot and Bingham County? They have a pretty extensive trail from Blackfoot up, at least to the Rose Ponds. And they would probably have experiences that they could share with you about how they developed that.
No, we haven't, but that is a great, what would you say? That was a great, you know? I can't find the word to say, but it's, it's a...
It's a suggestion.
Suggestion, there we go, that's the word. It's a great suggestion. We could totally look forward to presenting this to them also. And to answer your question, sir, sorry. These are senior in this group.
So, you the only one?
Yes.
So, the rest of you will be able to continue on next year?
Yes.
We're all juniors.
Any other questions?
This newest addition, we had a girl get sick Sunday night and had some family issues, so Osway, join the team on Monday.
If you guys have no more questions, I do have a question. The city of Pocatello does have a lot of trails like this. We were just having like some, we were wondering on some of your suggestions and like how you guys got the success in the trails, like funding-wise, how it came into the economy and helped boost the economy of Pocatello? If one of you could answer that.
Well, they'll bet you.
Well, okay, everybody's looking at me. Go ahead.
Bears, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We have a Greenway Foundation that initially started as a private entity and still is. We've been able to support as a city the projects that they have finished, and they've just been phenomenal at getting grants. And there are lots of grants out there. So, I'm sure you're going to look way beyond the one that you are looking at, but citizen involvement has been the key to the success of the Greenway Foundation in Pocatello.
And I also had a question. How do you guys, if you guys know, maintain the trails and who maintains it? And I guess, how does it stay clean?
That's your turn, Mr. Mayor.
You take the easy one and I get the hard one. I see how this works. So, really, truly, the city maintains it to a point, but the Greenway Foundation also, as citizens, maintain it as well. It, when it comes to maintenance, when a trail starts to fall apart, the city, if it's an existing trail, the city goes in and does a lot of work on that to help maintain the trail that way. But then we look for groups, citizen groups, to help keep the trails clean. And really, truly, it's pretty easy when you have a good community that's a biking, hiking, an outdoorsy community, that people are more than willing to step up and help with those responsibilities.
We actually have 250 trails immediately around Pocatello. And those are not maintained by the city necessarily, but we have lots of volunteers that keep them clean. And I think our people have been wonderful about picking up after themselves.
Thank you.
I was wondering how the city of Pocatello keeps the trail safe? Like, I had heard that there was a man a while ago that would try to harm bikers because he just didn't favor them. And he was more favored towards like hikers and stuff. And I just, I heard that story. So, I was wondering how you would keep that safe and like prevent anything like that happening?
That is a horrible, horrible rumor that's out there. I don't think I've ever heard that rumor that we've had people on, somebody tried to hurt bikers and things on the trails and so. I think that's just a rumor that's out there.
It may have been a different trail outside of Pocatello.
Probably was another community, don't quote.
That was a Boise.
It was a Boise, that was a Boise guy. No, I'm just kidding. But really, when it comes to the security of the trail and safety on the trail, we have, I mean, our police officers, they watch it as much as they can, but the citizens that use it really, truly are the biggest advocate for that. If they say, see something that's wrong or amiss, that they contact us, and then we go and check it out and we see what's happening. But the more people you have on the trail, the safer that trail is. Is what happens.
And dogs.
Do you have any, Council, do you have any questions for me as the mayor of American Falls and concerns to this?
You must have the best job in the world.
I do have the best job. I get to work with the best of the best and hopefully make a small difference in the community that we live in.
Mark, was this your idea?
I'm sorry?
Is this trail system your idea?
For the most part, probably. We have several folks in the community that like to bike and hike. To your earlier question, I've actually walked the totality of the trail, five or six... To your earlier question, I've actually walked the totality of the trail five or six different times. You see a lot of different landscapes, you see a lot of different wildlife, certainly a lot of birds. Fishing access is tremendous. Uh, they're actually gonna speak to the, uh, Regional Fly Fishing and Travel Movement Club tonight about those accesses and potential, uh, ability for fishermen to gain access to state river where they couldn't have before. So, it's a real positive thing, um, you know, it's always kept ourselves in dealing with private properties and even some governmental agencies. I know the question was asked about the tribes. There are some concerns about some archaeological areas that may be impacted by the trail. Most of those areas are on the west side of the river, but there's thought to be a few on the east side of the river. But that, that area is already impacted by, um, just random trails that people have already made, turning being trails into bike trails, hiking trails. So, um, we'll see how things go forward, but I don't know that they've spoken to anybody. This is their 13th group that they've talked to that has been adamantly opposed to what they're suggesting. And then, I, I, they are evenly split because in this, that, fake presentation, they are supposed to represent both sides of an issue and allow the citizens to make up your own mind about how you feel about what it is that they're presenting. They're not here to persuade you one way or the other. We're all adults and we can make good decisions if we get good information.
It was a great presentation, thank you.
It was good. See, we told you we would get China late down here and they came down, but they're just late.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that, uh, the city of Pocatello through the council and mayor, support this by a letter of recommendation.
Second.
Man alive, everybody. Sounds good. We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Ruth, could you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Super, it passes, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, it was great. Mayor, thanks for your time you spend with the students and the, the young kids in American Falls, it's, it's great.
Thank you for having us.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to get more presentations from that day.
So, if you'd like to hear from us again, once we get things most solidified as far as the plan of that and how we're gonna proceed, we can speak to you.
Sounds good.
Phase D could be connecting to our Greenway.
Yeah.
Phase D could be connecting to our Greenway.
That's right. Connect, connect it to Pocatello, phase D. See, we're thinking.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like that conversation.
We will go ahead and we're gonna go ahead and move on to agenda item number five, which is Bannock Development Corporation update. John Regatz, Bannock Development Corporation, BDC Executive Director, will be present to give council an update of BDC's activities and achievements. And council, council president, I'm gonna turn the time over, you'll be back in just a few minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Never wanna follow kids and animals, John.
You're gonna have to really do it today.
I thought, I thought it put everybody in a good mood. We are in a good mood.
That's right, it might be the perfect.
It's the work we do or do what we're doing for them. I'll try not to read on mine and get that to you when I'm done.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I'll give a reminder.
Okay, very good. All right, well, thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time today. And hopefully I don't open this more than once. There we go. Wanna, again, thank, uh, the council and the mayor for your continued support of Bannock Development Corporation and our mission to improve the economy and provide opportunities and, and attract jobs and investment into our community and our region. One of the things we've been working on here in the past, well, it'd be probably nine months, but six months, we've been pretty active in developing a dashboard for our community. And, uh, we'll just play with that a little bit for you today. And, uh, it presents some pretty interesting information. And now I get to sign it. Let's see if I touched something. Okay, well, let's try a different.
I'm grateful your specialty is economic development and not technology.
I think you're missing an L on that first link.
Pardon?
It didn't say Bannock Development on the, on your link, so I don't know if that's your.
Oh, that could be the issue. Um, the, the first one that I asked.
You see, it says Bannock Deva, yeah.
De-ment.
No, I'm gonna go to, um... That does it for us. Okay, very good, there. Anyways, um, we'll continue on here and do some more stuff, but I will try to get any of the phone calls into the office and see if we can pull that password.
Would you like us to go to the next item on the agenda and give you a moment for preparation, John? Would that be better?
That might help me. Is it a very long report?
It depends.
I should not log onto that laptop to gain access to the internet, is it?
That's what you need.
I, it, we don't log onto that laptop to connect to the internet because, um, it'll shut down on you if you don't use it.
I asked yesterday if we had access.
Okay, so we don't, okay, all right. Well, we'll have to talk about that at, uh, our next presentation. Uh, one thing I do want you to, to note that we have a regional workforce in the talent shed and so, um, when you, when you look at, uh, some of the numbers that I put, brought to you on that sheet, that first page that I've given you, uh, gives us about almost eighty-six thousand people in our talent shed, which is basically southeast Idaho, and that's always been the reference that's been given to me as far as, uh, the people that we have available. I was referencing that because in the presentation, in the website, um, that, uh, refers to Pocatello and Pocatello's MSA. And so that's about forty thousand people in, in the talent shed. Almost, uh, well, eighty-three thousand five hundred essentially are employed, so that's two point six percent unemployment rate and these are nineteen, our 2017 statistics. Uh, interestingly, uh, thirty-seven percent, uh, of the workers in that area are blue collar, uh, sixty-two percent are white collar. And so we hear a lot that, you know, we're a blue collar community and definitely our heritage has a lot of manufacturing in it and a lot of our, um, value-added, uh, jobs and then some of our best positions are, are blue collar. But, um, you know, that, that statistic, that, that trend is changing and, uh, so that demographic is, is gonna continue to evolve. About thirty-six thousand dollars annual, i- is the annual average covered wage and that, that's gonna exclude some professional people, self-employed people, contract and other employment. I think we're at about thirty-eight if you add those in there, somewhere between thirty-eight and forty. So, um, one, one other thing that, that's really interesting to notice, uh, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand college students between South Jordan, Utah, Rexburg and including Twin Falls, just a short of Boise. And of course, we had Boise State, uh, then we're looking at more. But we're looking at, you know, about a hundred-and-fifty mile radius. Educational attainment, um, almost nineteen percent of our, uh, our residents have a bachelor's degree and, uh, ten, ten percent have at least an associate's degree. And so, uh, and so that, that's about, um, twenty-eight percent, uh, that we have, that have, uh, an associate's degree or more of college education, and that's not counting out of the doctorates. So we have, uh, good access to universities as well. One of the things that we've worked on, uh, this year, and you'll see a lot of it when we get a chance to go to the website and, and pull up our, um, dashboard, is that, uh, housing is, is really an advantageous, uh, price point for us competitively when we're looking at recruiting companies. You know, our, our housing costs are about sixty percent of the national average, uh, they're about one-fifth of what we would see in the Silicon Valley and we've done call, uh, trips out there and that's one of the things that we've promoted because, uh, the cost of living in Silicon Valley and other parts of California is actually forcing workers out, which forces employers out. So, um, housing is one of the things we focused on. Uh, we were looking at assisting, uh, the FBI in identifying, uh, some growth opportunities or ways to increase the amount of housing that's getting built. So, first thing we did was we analyzed the strategic housing data, uh, we identified, uh, shortfalls in, in housing development and we participated in a regional housing forum about to develop or to relate some of that data and, uh, we wanted to try to stimulate some of those lagging sectors in, in our, uh, county housing market. This is some of the data we pulled up. Basically, the houses that were on the market and, uh, the housing permits that were out there. And, and the selection has been limited. Uh, as you can see, a, a lot of the homes, the majority of the homes are, were under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, probably under a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, in value or even below that. The housing permits, uh, that we saw in looking at what would get built between last year and this year, between twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, you know, we're looking at about a hundred-and-ninety-three detached single-family homes, uh, twelve townhomes that were gonna be built and then a hundred-and-sixty-three rentals, uh, of various, various sizes, from multi-unit complexes, uh, to townhomes, uh, and apartments.
John?
But the...
John?
Could you go back to, like, to, go back two slides?
Two slides?
Yeah. The one right before this. Yeah. From Bannock Development's perspective, what, what then are the shortfalls in housing development? Do you have like a specific, um, perspective on that? And then also I was curious if you could give me an example of what, of what you did on number four there to stimulate the lagging sectors?
So, what we see for the two-year projections, we were having seven-hundred, uh, units worth of housing, lots being developed, so lots were being developed between twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, added up to about seven-hundred. And so, uh, we were looking at about five-hundred-and-fifty housing units being built in that timeframe. So, what we were seeing is, is we've got lots of property being developed for housing where we were falling short was we didn't have enough, we're not having enough houses being built. And so, uh, part of this regional discussion with contractors and developers and realtors, you know, was how do we look at stimulating that? How do, how do we look at filling that need? And so the, the response that we got was we, we, the contractors need to know when the demand is gonna occur so they don't sit on inventory. And I'm sure, you know, the developers wanted to know the same thing. So, you know, with the FBI, uh, which is gonna be the driver, which is what they're all interested in, you know, the technicians are coming in at the end of twenty-nineteen, beginning of twenty-twenty. So, December, January, we're gonna start seeing the waves coming in. Uh, we'll see an announcement sometime this summer and, and before that, probably the beginning of, uh, the second quarter, there's gonna be advertisements, uh, or postings of the jobs for them in the technical area as well as the professional area. Uh, beginning of the second quarter of twenty-twenty, we're gonna start seeing professionals coming in, in, in a wave. Professionals are being brought in all along on a continuous basis now, but, uh, the bulk of them are gonna come in at that point. So at that point, uh, we're gonna need to see housing developed. But that's gonna need to be townhomes, um, and, uh, rentals and condos are gonna need to be available then for those folks in the professional, uh, professional wage ranges. For the, for the technical folks, we're gonna need to see apartments, you know, duplexes, fourplexes or, um, other multifamily units being developed and built in some time zones. Probably looking at, um, less, uh, dream home building from, from the technical folks, but the professional folks that are gonna be in those townhomes, uh, they're going to be looking for a lot and probably engaging a contractor at some point on the contract to build their design home, um, that's someplace idyllic for them. So, uh, the other thing with the technical folks is, is some of them will rotate out. They'll do, you know, two-year, two-year tours and maybe transfer to another division or another location within the bureau. So, but, but those are kind of the deadlines really for, for folks that are looking at taking advantage.
Do you know if the FBI is like other federal agencies, when they transfer, they actually will buy your house if you own it, it's just like that, like, uh, Forest Service? When you transfer, they, they give you a year to market your house and then they have a market value they pay, stuff you don't buy?
They had not mentioned that to me.
Those who have been coming in that we've helped already have not had relocation packages.
I think with the housing market, it hasn't been an issue. When people, people sell their homes, it usually goes pretty quickly now, so that may be the reason it hasn't come up, but, yeah, we haven't seen that.
So, so John, what, what have we done to stimulate the, that change here to help that housing market?
Getting, getting the contractors that information.
Okay.
So they know, now they know when, when that, um, those deadlines or when those timelines are. And so we're gonna follow back up, we'll get the team together and we'll start, uh, you know, through the association, through the Millers Association, uh, the president is on our team, we'll start getting, you know, information and notices to them and ask them questions. I mean, do they know the types of housing that need to be built? Uh, we also are introducing, uh, the FBI to developers, we've introduced them to the Northgate folks. And they, now they have an idea of what the mix is and, um, we're, you know, secure in the fact that they will understand the type of housing that needs to be built and make sure that the needs of those employees are accommodated. And so it's attractive for them and they look at the whole mix. They're, they're looking at from the apartments all the way up to, you know, the dream homes and everything in between. So, we're, we're looking to see that construction occurring this summer.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyways, um, why do we wanna do that? Uh, this is a slide you've seen before, but, you know, we're looking at five-hundred total new jobs, uh, it's probably like six-hundred now, uh, so more than a hundred-and-sixty spinoffs, uh, that all of these wages are gonna generate sixty-five million dollars of economic impact annually. And that's, uh, location-wise, that's gonna be a driving force behind development in that area in both malls and, uh, some of the other areas for, uh, commercial development. Uh, the construction itself, uh, is gonna create approximately seventeen-hundred jobs. I mean, they'll, they'll come and go as the construction occurs, um, but that's gonna generate a hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars of economic impact just building the facility. So, that's why we wanna make sure that, that these folks have the jobs coming in and accommodated and don't have to delay, uh, bringing people in and delay that economic impact. So, uh, we look at retaining and, and assisting businesses, retention and expansion is our first order of business here. Retention and expansion is our first order of business here. And once, once you get that a bit more of a science and beyond that to an art, you start talking about cluster development. And one of the sheets you have in front of you, and these are definitions by the authorities in in cluster development and in high-tech economies. Basically, the Milliken Institute is is the gold standard of folks that write papers on this. And Mr. DeWalt's been writing these papers since 1997. His definition is the kind of the classic epitome of what a cluster is. And essentially, it has to be similar or associated companies that are relying on the same supply chains. So, you know, while the FBI is going to use computers and needs cybersecurity, so does ICCU and the Department of Bureau, but I don't think they're part of the same cluster. So that's, that's the way we tend to define clusters. Sometimes they use the same kinds of labor and the same kinds of commodities, but they don't necessarily fall in the same economic sphere. So that's just to kind of set the base for that. The FBI is an office business for us, basically. It's kind of, it falls into a very broad category, but really, they're law enforcement. They use people from the language sciences department at ISU to gather data and to interpret data. They also use accountants as well as folks that are running the data center. And they actually have some presence of law enforcement there. So they use a variety of disciplines that you would see in an office. But one, another one of our clusters is finance and insurance. That of course includes ICCU, Department of Bureau, and Allstate. And these are all IT-intensive. They use IT people, information technology-trained people and equipment. And so that's a very important area for them, and it's always been an area of concern for these companies. Peterson, MSE, On, Simplot, they're all advanced manufacturing companies. But they and all the rest of these companies all need cybersecurity. In fact, everybody's going to need cybersecurity as time goes on. So these are areas that need some support and need development. And so we've been talking with the folks at ISU and and the FBI. Mike Malanowski and myself met with the president and all of the deans so he could describe what it is they need for professional personnel and get that, get that discussion started. And that discussion is resulting in the university expanding their IT departments and their cybersecurity departments. And they're doing it in new ways to accommodate what the FBI needs. And my advice to them has always been to keep checking back in and then make sure that it meets the specific needs they have. Another, another cluster that that's growing, that actually has always been a target for our community, is logistics. Thing that's kind of held us back is just the economy. Logistics really fires up when you have a good economy that's had some stability. So one of the things that we all know about, of course, is the cold storage facility with Frigitech. And that's, that's changed form. It's become a rail-served type of a project now, which adds some more complexity and more approvals and and more engineering. And so we're getting a letter of intent finalized here. I'm going to see this week if we can get that back from them with some final edits for the marriage review. But this, you know, this cluster, logistic cluster, supports food, mag processing, you know, Amy's Kitchen obviously could use a freezer warehouse, cold storage facility. But other, other food processors as well in the region could utilize it as well. Anybody that's got frozen potatoes could use the freezer portion. Anybody that has fresh potatoes that they're marketing or sending directly for retail can use it. So it supports them. But we're also in conjunction with cold storage, we're looking at unit train development. And what that is, is you make a big enough train so that Union Pacific can send it on its own directly to the coast, either for distribution on the coast or for export overseas. So what that does, when you have that unit train, is it lowers costs and delivery time for our industries and our businesses. In conjunction with that, transload development, which includes warehousing, but also the ability to transfer freight from from road or interstate to rail. And so obviously, you're going to need that kind of facility to help facilitate loading and unloading of freight. So actually, in the plans for the airport, there is a transload site that's always existed in the western, southwestern corner of the airport. So hopefully, we can work on getting that all squared away because we're looking at checking with potential customers now along with the developers of these facilities. Other areas, other clusters that we have that we want to address is nuclear technology development. Obviously, the INL has the mission to develop nuclear technology and nuclear materials processing. Idaho Commerce Director has made this a focus of his. So we're obviously paying attention to it. We always have participated. The small modular reactor supply chain is going to be a new opportunity that we should take advantage of. So we have intermittently, and again this year, attended the Nuclear Waste Management Conference. We just got back from that last week and had some good contacts with potential supply chain participants. Attended the Ready for Nuclear Conference last year with the INL. And so we'll look at continuing to do that and assist where we can to try and support that supply chain with our local businesses as well as new ones. Maybe it's going to be, you know, getting those folks into how to contract with government incentives. Another area that the Idaho Commerce Director is focusing on is broadband development. Now, we have a pretty good base here because of the industry and the university that we have here, because the university's here, the iron system is here, that's the state of government and education optical network. And so we also have multiple providers that actually consolidated, I think, centrally purchased, serving them, or at least purchased a significant chunk of it. They weren't contractors, but they've provided a lot of optical cable in the community to our businesses. So there, there always are opportunities to improve. Now, a lot of the nation looks at getting actual fiber to homes. It's not prevalent throughout the country. That's a goal to ultimately have. But you want to make sure your businesses have it now. And you need to make, for us, it's the last mile. I think we have a lot of optical cable in the community. It's just getting it that last mile to a business that maybe is off to be contracted. Or as far as residences are concerned, maybe it's getting more wireless connectivity. For a lot of outlying residences that are outside city limits, you have trouble with line of sight for wireless because the topography and the distance is an obstacle for laying cable. So that's one of the areas to channel that challenges us, as well as rural areas. But there are some grants out there now for some settlements that come along that we can work with. One of the other ways we support these is trying to get our high school students interested in the careers, in the technical careers that support these industries that we've been talking about. So happy to say that your fit is on again, and we're out visiting the high schools and taking these high-tech employers with their high-demand, high-wage jobs to the high schools and visiting the students. And also with us is the College of Technology, who are demonstrating and displaying the supporting training programs that they have. So we can show these students where they can take advantage of these training programs. And within a year to two, maybe even less if they do a dual credit, they can come out and earn anywhere from $35,000 to $79,000 a year. And so these are careers that they can have lifelong. They can advance because typically, when they start work for one of these companies, they need more training, and the company will pay for it. So this, this provides an opportunity for low, moderate-income families and children to have an opportunity for the technical career that they may have dreamed of.
I just have a quick question. Going on the, on the technology front, have you spoken with the school directors to know if they have any coding programs or intro-to coding computer program, any of that sort in their curriculum for students? So if you do go to the school, do the kids have any preliminary knowledge of this career field?
We haven't done that kind of background. We usually just take the College of Technology and the high schools usually relate to us, you know, if they have a shortfall. But my guess is, is that the Pocatello schools would have that. The others, which probably do not.
Because I'm thinking there might be a disconnect. Like if we, I mean, I think this is a great idea to get kids to get into technology. But if you go there and the kids or the school system doesn't have those programs that are going to introduce them to these fields, then they may not want to jump into that. So maybe...
That's something we can take to the College of Technology to, to see if they know if the, if the universities or the high schools have that kind of prerequisite training.
Right. Thank you.
Sure. Last year, though, it mentions we did the right fit, which is where we basically brought the counselors in and did the same workshops for them, only geared more for, you know, adults and teachers. And then I actually gave them tours of actual companies where they could see what was going on. And so they were, they are putting together programs where they are going to make plans for implementing what they learned about getting information on these technical careers to students. Because the counselors are going to be interacting with the student body year in, year out, day in, day out. And so that'll be an effective reinforcement for what the students learn at the other Of course, we want to help promote and market all of the areas that have a good opportunity for the community to grow and prosper. We've talked to the folks from Northgate and, you know, have talked about how we want to market them to the kinds of businesses that they want there because obviously, there needs to be a fit. We want to make the right targeting. So we've met with them, and we'll, we'll take the information on the project to any RFIs that we have that could use sites. And our, our sales campaigns, our marketing campaigns, we include information on sites there as well. Some of the updates on what we've been doing sales-wise this year, we've already gone to the SHOT Show with Idaho Commerce, looking at about 10 good leads and prospects or leads and contacts, prospects, our prospects till they come visit the community. Silicon Slopes, we attended that. It's a very cost-effective way to try to get in contact with some of these high-growth, fast-growth companies that are in the technical field mainly. I mentioned Nuclear Waste Management, we've got about a half a dozen good leads and contacts there. Coming up at the end of this month is the Site Selectors Guild. So as you can see, the first quarters are busy time of the year. And then, of course, we're going to get ready and participate in Select USA with Commerce and Ready and CDU and some other communities throughout the state that are participating with Commerce orchestrating. And if we have some funding, we'll do the PAC Pharma Expo in September. And what that does is it focuses on our capacity through pharmacy and the College of Technology to pursue pharmaceutical packaging projects. And then I mentioned some of the community committees that we've got, the Housing Study Committee, Smart School Committee. We have some functional committees like events and PR. But adds up to 10 because we, we were looking for something new in our spare time. So last year, eight site visits, a good year for site visits, about 24 direct leads that we handled, six of them through Commerce, one that was Commerce, Ready, and the local planning district that brought it to us. And then I mentioned the housing contractors. Energy, we were working with them to try to help them expand their jobs in their location next door here. They've taken a little bit different model, so they didn't take advantage of the assistance offered, but they have been growing. They've got a, a new warehouse. They've got a warehouse over in the old Blaze building. And they're looking at bringing the distribution warehousing jobs that they outsourced back in, which was the model change. That's, that's a high-potential project. It is an incubating role. Just a quick note, SME Steel's over 200 people. We visited them last fall. They were past 200, looking at adding another shift with 50 jobs. And there's no yard space over there. When the FBI gets done with construction, that yard space that's there is going to be hotly contended for and will be in the mix because we refer buildings 10 and 12 quite often. So thank you very much. I apologize for that, that dashboard not coming up.
I have a question. Some of your transportation stuff, how is the business at the airport for the packaging of TAPE when they were shipping it to China? Is that taken off?
TAPE is doing well.
Okay.
There was a concern, though, to your point, there was a concern with the tariffs and stuff, and that, that the tariffs have not hit TAPE the way they've hit other industries and so...
How do I say? Their product is in extremely high demand. Their product does not exist in China essentially. They just don't have that quality of alfalfa that they haven't learned to grow up, or conditions may not be conducive to it.
So it's meeting its projections in terms of growth and jobs and stuff?
I think it's exceeded...
They are, that's one reason why there's a big push for the transload system out there right now is TAPE is sending 80 semi-trucks to Salt Lake to a transload thing, 80 a week or a day?
I think it's a week.
A day, 80...
80 a day is a lot of trucks.
I think it's 80 a week is going from here to Salt Lake with their product to be loaded on a transload system. And they can, if they had the capacity, they can do a lot more. They just, that's what they can do.
Someplace where we were this week. I think it was in our boardroom.
Was it 80 a day? That's a lot of trucks, but especially when they're packaging some...
When I drive to Idaho Falls on Friday afternoons, I'm sure I pass at least 10 trucks, big trucks with the big bales on them. So they're coming in here and going out there.
So it's just, it's...
They're condensing those 10 trucks.
It's amazing how much product they're pushing out of there right now. And it's, and it does seem to continue to grow.
I think the one that's overlooked, John, is malt plant out here. I mean, they are just producing a lot of malt, and that's a low impact to an environment organization.
It's the, the leading malt plant for, for craft brewing in the, in the nation, which probably means in the world.
Leading malt plant for what did you say?
The craft.
Craft, for the craft, yeah, the craft brewing industry. And that's, that's their focus.
That is the fourth or fifth largest brewery or malt plant in the world.
Yep. And so it's... Idaho is the top state in the nation, which means it's the top province in the world for, for growing.
For quality of barley that our farmers are able to produce.
The quality of barley.
Yeah, it's very good. Any other questions for John? Thank you, John.
Next opportunity that came, we'll try to get the internet connected.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Bring your laptop because we can't log on to the internet on that one.
Okay. All right.
Sorry about that.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
You should your time.
Okay, council, we will move to agenda item number six, Police Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pocatello Police Union will give the council an update on, of their activities for the past quarter.
I do feel much safer when they're in the room.
Thanks for having us here today. Thank you for your time and support.
Will you, will you just state your name for the people watching at home and everywhere?
Matt Lawson, President of the Pocatello Police Union.
Brandon Vale, Secretary of the Police Union.
So we'll start off with some positive things that our officers have been involved with in the community. Recently, they attended some of the Teddy Bear Event, PMC. Lawson Jr., Pocatello, police officer badges were handed out to the kids, and they're running around wearing those proudly. There was a Guns and Poses event on March 29th from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Veterans Memorial Building. And then in this event, we'll be joining the fire department and... And in this event, we'll be joining the fire department and Van County Sheriff's Office for fundraising to help support the CASA, Child Advocacy Group.
What was the date on that one?
March 29th.
29.
This is the memorial building?
Yes, Veterans Memorial. And we're looking for a good turnout there and to raise some money for this well-deserved benefit for these, these kids. It's a great opportunity to help our community and the children.
That is actually a lot of fun, to go to that event and see people and, and to be able to eat and try new things, and it's always interesting to see who, I mean, there's a competition between the police and fire over that. They, they, they look at the sheriff's department as a non-existing entity, they just keep fighting between each other, and it's great, it really is, it's good to have both unions there doing that, so.
And not, not to brag or anything, but we have one that's several years in our own.
I set you up for that. I saw, I saw you walk in, and so I had to throw you a softball.
Make for a fun arena. Citizens have been bringing their children to the police department more and more recently to help them overcome the nets that police were scaring to help dispel their children's fears, so that's been a good, a good thing for them. A lot of canine demos have been occurring from our police canine officers, they've been going out to the schools demonstrating what their dogs can and can't do. There's a story of going around with the third and fourth graders that they're reading about police dogs to help educate them more. They do a lot of presentations at different elementary schools across our region and our school district. There's also been several life-saving measures that have been completed by our officers due to their training and experience and bravery. They apply CPR to victims when they can, and recently, just this past week, when our officers come across an overdose victim that was operating unconscious, no pulse, start a CPR on, on them, not sure if it was a male female.
Male.
It was a female officer of ours, she was able to get a pulse, get the guy breathing, until the paramedics got there, transported him to the hospital, and he survived. And they've had good success. Our officers have been conducting a lot of active shooter training across the region, in schools, businesses, city, and as well as with other agencies, so our guys are kind of leading that, that charge across this area. They've also helped TSA at the airport with it as well, preparing them. Since the beginning of the year, we've responded to 478 welfare checks compared to 448 in 2018. Our officers continue to take on a high volume of welfare checks on people who are suicidal, have mental health issues, that may be drug-related or otherwise. They do this in the most professional way with very little use of force, so the ability to de-escalate situations is impressive.
Do you think that's going to be alleviated a little bit with the crisis center?
I hope so. I hope so.
Just the other night, at one time, we had seven officers at PMC with patient, or with, you know, people that we needed to take up there, either in protective custody or did a voluntary transport to go up and speak to a DE or a social worker about some of the issues they're having.
That's the whole shit, isn't it?
Pretty much, yeah. I think we had two officers that were available at that time.
It exhausts our resources pretty fast.
Yeah.
Along with those lines, we've responded to 343 disturbances since the beginning of the year, from domestic disturbances to bar fights, all different times.
What was that number? What was the number?
Uh, 343.
343.
We've also had 88 child protection issues, in which our officers intervened to act on behalf of the children, so that they're taking care of the work of helping out there to make sure that these situations are handled accordingly. There's no doubt that occurring law enforcement distress, according to an article in the Law Enforcement Today, for the third straight year, officer suicides have been greater than line-of-duty deaths. That's an unfortunate trend. Some reasons for this provided in articles are stress of the job, staffing, some of the uniform, the equipment that we wear, and our, our mentality. Staffing continues to be a concern. When people are injured or on vacation or at training, we end up working short or with the hospital on welfare checks. The duty belt, invest-in-cary cause, wear and tear on the bodies over the years, as well as the incidents we become physically engaged in. We get very good at helping other people with their problems, but on the downside, we forget how to take care of ourselves. We have made some progress this last year with enhancing our EAP program with the city, and that I believe will benefit us for years to come, but there's still work to be done. I believe that recruiting and maintaining a professional staff department is paramount to us upholding our department's mission of community commitment. This starts with us individually and collectively by taking care of ourselves. This year, we look forward to working with the city on our, and our administration to help our department so we're ahead of this trend. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I, I have a quick question. Is there a huge, I don't know if it's relevant to our department or not, is there a stigma with mental health in the police force in our department? Still is?
We're working on getting there.
Do you think that has, does that tie into, does it link to maybe, say, an officer uses mental health services, does it link to their career in any sense where it negatively impacts them and perhaps that's why they didn't use it?
There's fears that if people seek out help, that they'll be looked at poorly by the administration or other officers as being weak and unfit for duty, and that worries people, and we need to set that aside so people can get the help, and they need help before it gets to a bad point or causes a situation.
What do you do to address that, to help change that?
Starts with us, our attitudes with each other.
Do you, I mean, do you have any specific programs or anything, or?
Well, this last year, through the negotiations, we came up with more visits to the EAP as well as mandatory session, and we've been rolling that out with our patrol officers since the start of this year, it started with our administration going to their mandatory visits, and then all this morning, working their way through their mandatory visits, and that's helped, you know, we know of, you know, a handful of people that have utilized those services in addition to their mandatory visit, and so hopefully, that kind of sets out the path for folks if they need to get some help, for maybe something they experienced on the job or at home, whatever it might be, that they can utilize that resource.
Well, that's great that you guys are changing the narrative a little bit on that, so.
And that's really, we're really thankful, because we're one of the few agencies in this area that has started that process, and so to be leaders in that area is, is really something special.
I was going to say, we've heard the terminology, cutting edge already this morning, but our police department has taken the initiative and, and they really are on the cutting edge of that to, to address those issues. Want to fix it before it's a major issue, or at least get ahead of it so we can, they can do some things, so. They need to be commended, the union needs to be commended for their work there.
Great job on that.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should recognize that female officer at a future council meeting.
We have a number of officers, they're doing a recognition today, are they not?
It's over.
It's over.
I haven't called.
But they.
Sergeant Bloodworth was part of those participants in the life-saving work today.
Good.
So this is what you get, they, they're in those things, and he comes in here meek and mild and humble and just does his thing, that's what our officer, that's what our first responders do, is they, is they, they go through it and, and then they just keep doing their, their job, and so it would be nice to, to do that for all of them. Every year, we have a couple of those presentations of, I have, I don't know, four, five, six at a time get, get recognized, and so it's a, it's a, they do a great job. Put their lives out there and.
Every day when they get out of a car.
What's that?
So they put their lives at risk every day when they get out of a car.
Yeah, they do, they do. We appreciate you, and please take back to your union and to the other police, the members of the police department, that we appreciate what you do, we understand that it's, it's tough, and it's, but, but it is a life-saving for people, and we love to have you.
To worry about the companions, the lives of new officers, I mean, it's got to be a lot of pressure on them.
That's truly a household career.
It is.
Can I ask another quick question? Just out of curiosity, how many women are in our police force?
I want to say six or seven sworn, nine.
Nine.
Nine now.
Nine, which, when you look at the amount of sworn, it's.
Sworn in today, nine.
Yeah, so 10% is, and that's one of the higher percentages that you'll see, so we're pretty fortunate to have that.
That's one thing they've done, is spent a lot of time trying to get diversity in the, in the department, and they've done a good job of that.
It's a very diverse department.
It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, council, we will move on to agenda item number seven, is the Senior Activity Center building discussion. Representatives from the Senior Activity Center will be present to discuss the condition of the city-owned building located at 427 North Sixth Avenue. Building Department staff will also be present to address maintenance issues and possible long-term solutions. Representatives are seeking input from the city council regarding possible solutions. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Blad, for having us. My name is Margine Wofford, and I sit on the Board of Directors for the Senior Activity Center here in Pocatello, and with me is Anita Valladolid, she is the General Manager of the Center, and Lynn Transtrom is the.
I'm a building official and hear from moral support.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Councilman Cheedam, because he sits on our board and supports us at the Senior Activity Center, so thank you very much. The purpose of us being here today is to start a dialogue, or maybe develop a plan regarding the deterioration of the building which now houses the Senior Activity Center, and I noticed in your program that you do have the address, 427 North Sixth, not too far from here. Just for the record, the building is owned by the city, and the Senior Activity Center leases it for a dollar a year, so that's a pretty good deal. The problem did not just happen overnight, but it's been occurring for a period of years, and the foundation, we believe, of the building is questionable due to water damage that has brought along a whole laundry list of issues or potential hazards for the building. We do have a slideshow, and Anita's going to be moving that along, but as you can see from this picture, that picture, that there's water on that sidewalk right there, and of course, every time it snows and then melts, that becomes a problem. If it freezes, you can imagine it's a worse problem, especially for seniors, but, and then if it rains, the same thing happens. Right now, we have lots of sandbags all along that section of the, the building, and that's a parking lot where the snow is, so the seniors come in, park their cars there, and have to step down that into the water, just, just so you're aware of that. The seniors moved into that building in 1981, and they've pretty much been dealing with that water issue ever since that time. The water puddles and pools, as you can see, on the sidewalk, and there's really no place for it to go, it eventually just drains down into the ground, I guess, but it's been seeping under the foundation, which has been causing some erosion. Of course, you know, the seasons bring frozen and thawed water, and, and then it gets trapped into the concrete. The moisture has accumulated in the ground around and beneath, causing the erosion and pushing on the foundation. We're, we're kind of showing you some pictures there, some of the damage, even to the concrete that's there. Due to the water pooling, the constant pressure is surfacing, and we're seeing an increase in crumbling, cracking, and there's sediment that's, you can see right there along the edge of the building. You can even hear some crackling going on in the building if you're there late at night, and it's quiet. And our greatest fear is that the foundation has been compromised and is destabilized. Signs of some of the flood damage, you can see that the water has eroded the metal door frames, because all those doors are metal, which is causing some issue, you can see how bricks and all that debris is coming down from the side of the building. There are some horizontal and vertical cracks that are visual when you walk along the building. The integrity of the wall, you can see some of the bricks have, they're falling out or losing their mortar. They seem to be shifting even some, forming some gaps. The windows are starting to bow due to the rain moisture and, and water is coming into the building. Does that sound cool? Well, anyway, oh, that's five. We're also concerned with the possibility of black mold. The water spillage from the roof has seeped into some of the areas around the bricks, and they are shifting. The middle picture here shows a rusted metal column that is located in the front of the building, and that's part of the structure that's holding things up. As you can see, there's random spots of wear and tear, and the honeycomb area is a sign that the foundation is in a crisis state, and we can't imagine what might be happening down below, under the ground. Then the, this slide kind of shows some of the brick shifting, there's, oh, that one picture, I think, is the one that's taken upside down, right, the one on the left. Another picture of the water, water damage that's coming down off of the roof even. I'm, okay, now you can go on to that. We are concerned with mold growth and, and what that's doing to the asbestos that we know is in the building. You don't really see this, but we are aware that water has been coming into the building, you can see stains on the carpeting that's around some of the doors, and then that, the middle picture is of an office where the water has seeped under the wall and into the room, at least a couple of feet, and then, of course, it's also, there's some problems with the roof, so it's coming down for, into the ceiling of the building. And just, just so you know, the floors of the building do contain asbestos from its old tile, but it's been covered with, it's been covered with carpet which is containing the asbestos. Our, our problem is what's happening when the water comes in and if it, what's it doing down there? We just, we just don't know. And we know about half of the rooms in the building have had that kind of water damage. The ceiling and windows have been damaged, I don't know what's happening here, but my, my phone is ringing, and I can't get it to turn off. It's hooked into my phone, isn't that weird? I turned my phone off, it's still ringing. So the water damage is in the entire building, from the top to the bottom, so that's really what our concern is. We'd just like to conclude and let you know that you're aware that seniors have a little more sensitive immune systems, and we're put, and we want to know, are we putting them and ourselves at risk being in the building? The mold that's active or inactive. The mold that's active or inactive can be a potential health hazard. And the mold and asbestos, we're not sure how serious that issue might be. Some of the employees at the center have complained of being ill and we wonder if that's coincidental or or is the mold, the black mold problem, causing that? Regardless of that, we really need to take a look at the the structure of the building. So the question that arises for us is, do we dump more money into the building? Which we feel is probably a dead horse? Or do we move forward with looking at a strategic plan for a long-term solution? We have some ideas. Because of time, we're not going to talk about that today. But we are in the process of a SWAT analysis and a business plan. And have been seeking some community partners to help us financially invest in a new building. We can achieve more and better results with collaboration. And we hope that you will recognize the need for a new or a different building. So and I know Anita has invited Lynn over and he has looked around the building, so he might have some good answers to our questions. But thank you so much for listening to our concerns today. And do you have any questions?
How many people do we have participating on a weekly basis, Anita?
On a weekly basis, well, we serve a thousand seniors a month for lunch. So on a weekly basis.
Different or that many meals?
I'm duplicating.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
You've been in the building, Lynn. What's your take on?
You know, it's an old building. It is in somewhat a deteriorated state. It's problematic the way it was designed and set lower than the adjacent parking lot, which is owned by the state of Idaho. And so the drainage off of the state of Idaho's parking lot comes into that low walking area in the backside on the west side of the building. And the water has no place to go at that point, so it puddles up there and I have not personally seen it coming through the wall. I know it comes through the doors there. I don't doubt. But these ladies are saying that it's probably migrating under the brick and and into the building. I really don't believe that the foundation is at a point of collapse or failure. It's a slab on grade type building. But it is in a deteriorated state and then there's, you know, the fix for it would be quite expensive. And and it's a decision that needs to be made as to whether we want to invest in it or sell out and move on.
What in your opinion would the fix be, Lynn?
One of the fixes, Anita would bring one of those slides back up of the rear of the building. As you can see, the area with the snow on it is elevated, probably eighteen inches above the walking surface that's adjacent to the building. The only way you're going to stop water from entering that building is to get the water diverted to run away from the building. So virtually, the fixed, in my opinion, would be to block off the doors, center block off or or brick up the doorways on the backside of that building. And then have a concrete apron that is higher than the parking lot that drains water away from the building instead of allowing water to accumulate next to the building. Taking it out either end to the curb and gutter, that walkway is probably about the same elevation as the curb and gutter. So, you know, we don't have the ability to channel that water and get it to run away from the building end to end. So, you know, that to me is is one of the fixes. It still doesn't address the deteriorated interior of the building.
If you were to do that fix, how much time would that buy you, so to speak? I mean, how much longer would that add to the life of the building?
Well, you know, continued maintenance in the building will last indefinitely, but it's just a matter of how much you're willing to spend on maintenance on the building. Might just my estimate on on the concrete and fix for the back of that building would probably be, you know, maybe twelve thousand, ten, twelve thousand dollars to fix that.
But that doesn't do anything on the inside damage.
Does not do anything on the inside. We've done we have accomplished repairs on it over the years that I've been involved with the building. We've spent better than, well, fifty-five thousand dollars worth of repairs on the building since two thousand twelve.
I'm sorry, how much was that amount?
Pardon me?
How much was the amount the everybody's spending?
Since two thousand twelve is when I started to be involved with the senior center. And we've spent fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars on that. We've put new roofs on, new roof covering on it. We've put new windows in it. We've repaired the brick on the front of the building. We've replaced power doors. We've replaced HVAC systems. We've replaced ductwork in it. We've that's that's what we've spent on it since two thousand twelve.
We put a new roof on it and they're having leaks already?
Yeah, may I?
Yes.
The curb and gutter, some the structure of the building, I'm not sure exactly. I haven't been on top of the roof. But the water is leaking. It doesn't actually go down the rain gutters and it puddles up on the building and that's why we're getting leakage. So the new roof, that was in two thousand twelve and.
Do you think the gutter is cleanings?
Well, we they've they've done the best they could. The city has done the best they could. They've been very gracious to us and every time we have a problem. So thank you. Every time we have a problem, they do help us. It's it's a dilapidated building and we're doing that's all we got. So we're doing the best we can to catch water. The the windows are actually bowing. So we do we have had new windows, but now they're bowing and the water is seeping in through the windows. So.
Part of the problem that would be created by us doing the fix that we just discussed on the back is that's a location that all the patrons like to utilize for parking. And then they would have to go clear around the building to get into the front of the building. You know, other thoughts that were out there is is if we went to that kind of a fix to try to repair the back of the building. Maybe we would we own the property in the front. Maybe there's a feasibility of putting parking in the front of the building to facilitate that. And and doing something to save the building by repairing the rear back end of that building. So as Anita said, the other roof, the roof's good. What happens is we get a lot of debris that clogs the gutters. And the gutters get clogged on it. Our Parks and Recreation Department takes care of snow removal. And when we have problems with the storm gutter or the rain gutters getting clogged up, they go over. They try to keep them cleaned out. And yeah, it's just another another place for our Parks and Rec folks to try to maintain. And I think they're probably stretched fairly thin as well.
We are. We take responsibility for the building. We know it's city owned, but we are seeking. We don't want to just put this burden on the city of Pocatello. We are seeking. We have some private donors. And we've also, we've got a few ideas that they're not committed yet, but we're we're working on it. So we don't want to financially burn the city of Pocatello with a new building. We'd like to build on the same lot. Like Margine says, we have some ideas. We won't go through them all right now, but we'd like where you own the property already, we'd like to build right there. It's in a prime location. And if we could just build out adjacent towards the parking lot and the grass and the alley. From east to west rather than north to south.
How many doorways are on that west side of the building? Are there three?
There are. No, there are five.
Five. Would it be possible, Lynn, to maintain those doorways yet build up the area between them so it slopes toward the state building? To divert that water flow and yet maintain use of the doorways?
You know, it's such a low ceiling and a low roof on that building that no, I think by the time you fill that back.
I wouldn't fill it where the doors are.
Yeah.
Maintain the existing grades so people could step down into the building, but but raise the area between the doorways.
Yeah, I'm, you know, anything's possible there, but I obviously think that you're still going to be creating a low spot, a sump where water is going to accumulate where those doors are. I think that's the main water intrusion is probably at doorways. And that's kind of evident from the rusted outdoor jams and so forth that the pictures are showing.
The water intrusion, it has nowhere to channel. So if we do raise it and we push it out, then we're we're actually. Our neighbor, the state of Idaho, will encounter what we're encountering. So we're going to channel the water out into their parking lot. They own the parking lot and it'll just go into their building.
Out of our heads, it's into their building.
Read me up and I'll absorb the water.
I think you'd like that.
Yeah.
Has there been a professional analysis, engineer look at this and say what the state of the building is, what what could be done? How costly it would be to remediate the damage in it? Has that been done?
We're in the process of doing that now, councilman. However, we had neighbor works come over and they did not. They the whole floor is asbestos. And so they were limited to what they could do and analyze. But we are in the process of what you just said.
Because it it looks to me like if it's a real problem, it's just going to get worse. And we've got to start addressing that proactively. If it's a problem that can be remediated. A building can be remodeled and needs taken care of a lot cheaper than you build. Well, not not always, but sometimes the size of the determines that. So it looks to me like we need a little bit more information, exactly who's saying how bad it is. And what the solutions would be, what the cost would be, and then compare that to the cost of going forward with the plan there.
One of the considerations, Roger, is there's the three senior groups in Pocatello are looking to try to find a facility that will accommodate all of their needs. This is too small. So how far do we go spending money on this building? When in three, four, five years, however long it takes, there's a new facility somewhere else and this is abandoned and it becomes.
Well, but I heard a recommendation to build adjacent to this.
That's one of the things that's being considered.
If this is too small, is there enough room to build a larger building?
And and is the building considering combining the three centers together, the groups together?
Yes, in fact, we we have been in collaboration with them. So we're talking about United Seniors Project along with NKA. For us to then together, we're going to need about thirty-five thousand square feet. Now, can we fit thirty-five thousand square feet on there? Maybe? I'm not sure. But we'd have to definitely tear down the existing building and possibly build in a in an L backwards. Okay, backwards L. Take, yeah, I I think I don't think we can touch the corner pocket park unless you grant us that. That would be an option. But we we are working with them. Did I answer your question?
Right, right. So basically, I wondered if there's a plan to collaborate, which there is. That's a good thing.
Yes.
What's the size of this building?
It's under ten thousand square feet.
And the senior center, with all the things, could raise the money to operate a three and a half times larger facility?
Well, that's questionable. Of course, with the other entities, that will help bring in revenue. So we do, we we are looking for, we need your support as far as the moving forward, if it be a new building. Or if it be rehabbing that building, whatever it is, we need your support financially. As we're getting in, we 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 do get the building. We also are getting a stipend for utilities. And then we are putting the budget for the Parks and Rec Department, which we appreciate that. So we want to continue that type of support.
So council, would it be fair to, I I like Roger's question of what is it? What really truly have we got to do and what's it going to take to fix this building? Would it be fair to have a an engineer take a look at that to get us at least some numbers? Right now, we don't know. They're asking for financial support of some sort, but we don't know if that looks like twelve thousand dollars. Or if it looks like twenty million dollars for all we know. We don't we don't know what it looks like. Would that be fair to do that?
I think that that's the first step. And the second step would be to get engineering if it's too small and there's a collaborative effort. If this building can be made useful and can it be attached to and expanded? I mean, that's the other part of the formula.
So we were hoping, if I may, and not to jump the gun here, but these are a couple of options. Hoping that possibly the city of Pocatello could help us with the zero low interest loan firm. And then this could be done by setting funds aside and allocating the CBDG funds to match it. Is that possible?
There again, I don't know that we even know what or the total amount of that that we're asking for. I think that step one, we need to have an idea of what that dollar looks like.
We had somewhat of an estimation from the architect and he local pro bono architect, he said it'd be about three million.
For a new building or to fix this building?
For a new building on that particular site.
Okay.
And did he indicate whether or not thirty-five thousand square feet could be put on that space?
He said it was possible. He tried to read.
So if we give you the land, you're going to build the building, right?
It makes me nervous. You have an attorney that walked up and sat down at the table too.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Just a couple of things for consideration as you talk about some of these options for for information for everybody. Jared Johnson, city attorney, for for those that don't know. The original grant application for the the spot that the building is on and the building itself included that there be park space accompanying the building. So you need to be really cognizant of that park space and not not violating the provisions of that original grant.
So you're talking about park, like the trees and the grass stuff that's out in front?
The actual green space that's adjacent to the building.
From whom was that granted, Jared?
From the US Forest Service. It was a CBD grant.
Could they release us from that obligation?
We could always pursue that, but it's unlikely based on the provisions in the grant application and the grant award that that would happen. Just just in my judgment because of what the purposes of it were originally.
We could make that application. Does it state how big the park space has to be?
We've talked a lot about parklets lately, so maybe.
Isn't there a tag that goes out towards?
Bonneville Street.
Bonneville and Seventh, is it? Isn't there a tag across the parking lot?
I'm sorry, councilman, what is a tag?
Well, it's another piece of grass and stuff. Is that a private property or is that?
Well, anything that's on, I always get confused in Pocatello.
It'd be the east side of the parking lot.
But the east side, there is a green space and we've got benches out there and some tables and there's trees. And then you walk through that section into a parking lot that's adjacent to the little Bonneville Park on the corner and then some houses that are.
So Bonneville Park's right there on the corner?
Yeah, it's over on the across on the other side of the parking lot in the alley. But there's all that.
So good attorneys would get that park.
I know.
And you know, Sixth Street ran through there and that's been abandoned. And part of their greenway in front of the senior center is was Sixth Street that's been abandoned. So I would think that that probably, I don't know how that deed would have gone, but the abandonment of that right of way.
There are some things that could be looked into. I just wanted that to be on the forefront of your thought there. And then there's also two groups that that leased that building that we have current leases with. And so both groups would have to be involved in anything that modifies the current use of the building or the future use of the building. So also something.
Now, are you talking about the Bonneville Neighborhood Association and the senior activities center?
Yes, those are the two groups.
DNA and, yeah.
If I may, the Bonneville Neighborhood is on a ten-year lease and their lease is going to be. to be, Councilman, Cheatham, in a year.
So is yours.
Pardon me?
So is yours.
And so is ours. So...
But their lease, their lease has performed the original function of the building.
Yes, yes.
So it's not really an option for whether or not that can be renewed if there's an interest. And even if there's not, there has to be the residential use function of whatever the building is on that property.
Right.
So one hearing is, you need to be, there needs to be four groups in the discussion.
That's right.
Okay, I mean, if the land is dedicated and the building's dedicated to a certain use, and there's another party that's not part of the discussion, they have to be brought to the table and has to be all four of them making the recommendations and decisions.
Yeah, yeah, and we approach them, they welcome, they sit on our board, and a non-appointed, or appointed non-voting member sits on our board, Idaho Pers, and they welcome the partnership.
So, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, we've been dancing around this issue for a lot of years. I would recommend that we have you appoint a committee chaired by Rick Cheatham to get some, get the facts and bring a recommendation back to us. I mean, this is a critical location, but all of our seniors seem to have transportation, and maybe we should be looking away from this area and get something proposed, and we step up and make it happen.
Would we do that simultaneously with an engineering?
Absolutely.
Study and analysis?
That would be a part of what we would.
I think we need to, I mean, we've got some obvious issues right here that we need to probably deal with, and so we need to have an engineer involved so we know what we can and can't do. And it's not a bad idea to get some recommendations so we know what we're dealing with. I don't think we really know what we're dealing with. We've got three different groups, senior groups that have been looking at different things, and plus we have the fourth group of the Bonneville Neighborhood that is also involved with this facility as well, and so we're going to need to do a little bit more research. But something needs to probably be done here as a fix so that we can at least move forward with a new facility of some sort.
So we can tread water.
So we can tread water.
Literally.
Maybe it would be appropriate to review if the Idaho property was developed after this, I don't know if it was, because we should have some quote that doesn't allow water to go from one property to another.
Isn't there a Sydney ordinance?
There is.
But you know what I'm saying, if it was developed afterwards, it looks to me like the state of Idaho would have some responsibility in remediating if there...
Yeah. So. A couple of thoughts to address that. I believe that probably the building that the state of Idaho was in right now was probably there first.
Okay.
I believe it was a grocery store at one point in time prior to that. The other point I would like to ask is, where the city owns that building, do you suggest that we would use our engineering staff to do that report, or do we want to contract with, do we get approval to contract with an outside engineering firm to go in and do an evaluation of that structure? Your thoughts on that?
We have staff, we should utilize them, and they're capable.
Public Works Director.
All the projects they're working on, do they have time?
I was going to say, I don't know that they have time to do that.
Can we hear from Jeff?
We don't have a structural engineer onboard. If you want a structural evaluation, it might be better to get that coming out.
So Public Works Director just informed us we don't have a structural engineer onboard, so. We have one at the back of the room, I believe.
Yes.
We have two, actually, back there. So it would probably be something that you would have to seek for outside guidance on that, because it is a structural issue.
Mayor, and I hate to ask this, but who would pay for that?
Yeah. I would like you to.
Senior Center would.
It's our building, and the lease on the building states that the city of Pocatello is responsible for the exterior of the building as part of the lease agreement. You agree, Councilor?
And if it's got to be done, then we should pay for it.
Yeah, we need to get, we need to get something done there, so.
Might have to up the rent, though, to $2.
$1.50.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Liz got one other thing.
No, no, I'm done, and we'll throw some action, or a motion that was going to be made.
If you want to make a motion, we'll take it.
Are we doing your...
That's Jim's idea, not mine.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize an expenditure to have a structural engineer expect this building to make a recommendation as to what it, what will need to be done to temporarily take care of our immediate need.
Shouldn't we have it be, sorry, go ahead if you're still...
And secondly, that we appoint, you appoint a committee to evaluate this whole situation and bring a recommendation to us so that we can act rather than dance.
I was concerned about the open-endedness of the, us committing to...
Dollar YCB.
Yeah, so can we just say that we find out what that amount is and that comes back to us or something? I mean, we still have our...
Just said.
Well, no, he said that we would do it.
No, recommendation to us.
Bring a recommendation out. As I understand the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I understand, see what...
I'm not talking about doing the building, I'm talking about doing the expenditure. We don't know what that's, what that looks like.
Somebody needs to look at it and make a recommendation.
We will find out what it will cost, and we'll bring that expense back to the city council.
That's my opinion.
Is what I understood of that motion, okay. Is it as clear as mud to you as well, Ruth? Because I haven't got a clue what we just did, but...
Can we have it reread, sorry for my benefit?
That's fine. To authorize the expenditure for an engineer to go forth, see what needs to be done immediately for a temporary fix, bring this back to the council for approval, and then appoint a committee to research the project and provide a recommendation.
So that's why I was, the authorizing of the expenditure for the engineer.
Well, that has to come back to the city council before we authorize that expenditure, from what I heard.
Okay, so I'll take out authorize the expenditure so it comes back.
Should be an RQ to do that?
We will get that figured out, but I think the intent is to get a structural engineer, get the cost of what that's going to cost, bring it to the council, so that the council can make a decision whether or not we can expend that money for that study to find out what we need to do moving forward.
Just a friendly request to the motion, can we remove temporary fix? Because I'd like for the engineer to tell us how durable the building is, if it can be fixed for a long-term fix, and then if we...
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, if we just remove the word temporary.
Okay.
I think we need to look at more than just the structural part of the building. We need to know if there is mold. We need to know what needs to be done to make this building usable again.
Safe.
Yeah.
So an immediate and a long-term need, not a temporary?
No temporary.
Or immediate may not be long-term?
Immediate and long-term probably would be good.
Those are good words.
Between seven of us, we can get a motion put together, and, can you see, do you have a question?
I do, I do. So the engineer structural of the building, I'm hearing you're, will be willing to pay for that, but are you willing to also pay for the environmental testing as far as the mold and asbestos in the air? Because that's...
I think that's all encompassing.
Yeah, I think we have to for leasing.
Okay, okay.
I'm not going to cheat him off of this.
Oh, that's right, the second part of that, I've even been hesitant of stating the second part of that motion of the mayor appointing a committee.
We've got...
Putting Rick in charge of it, that committee to get us a recommendation, but we will talk about that later. So we have a motion by Council President Johnston, a second by Cheatham, so maybe he is all in favor of him.
You didn't have that in your...
Chairing, what was his motion?
You do.
Of chairing a motion, a committee, and so with that, is there any other discussion?
Sorry, we just changed it a lot. Can I know what it is officially?
Again?
Okay, so to research the expenditure rather than authorize for an engineer to do this study, which needs to be done immediately, and long-term needs, and bring this back to the council for approval, and appoint a committee to research the project and provide a recommendation at a later date.
So we're not committing anything right now, we're just saying bring us more information.
We're getting some more information to look at it and to see what happens. Okay.
I'll make it a lot better when I actually say it.
She knows her answer.
She's got the intent, she'll listen to the minutes. A motion by Johnston, a second by Cheatham, Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you, man, that was almost painful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we've been sitting here for quite some time, so I apologize to the next few presenters, but we are going to take a few minutes break, and we will be right back. Thank you very much for joining us after, after the break. That's, five-minute break always takes 20 minutes, and so we appreciate you sticking with us and joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue on with agenda item number eight, Idaho State University presentation, Soda Springs earthquake sequence. Representatives from Idaho State University Department of Civil and Environmental Engineer will be present to provide information to the council regarding research on the Soda Springs earthquake sequence and seismic volun, vulnerability in Pocatello.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mayor Blatt, for having us here, and it's good to see all this city councilwoman and men here. My name is Mustafa Michel, I am an assistant professor in structural and earthquake engineering at Idaho State University. So my talk today, as Mayor Blatt said, will be about Sulfur Peak earthquake sequence. I did this talk last year in Montana at Joint Engineers Conference, and we're going to be having similar presentation in Florida next month at the AAC Structures Congress. I got some feedback that I should reach out to Pocatello, where the town is close to the fault line, also the towns of Soda Springs and Chabek. So far, I've heard from Mayor Blatt, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and share with your findings. So today we'll be going through not only seismic risk, but also seismic vulnerability in this town. I will be pointing things on that screen, I think I'll be more comfortable with my laser. Otherwise, I can turn around, but it's a funny angle. So my outline of presentation is pretty simple, I'll just give you some background. I'll talk a little bit about Idaho itself, seismic risk in this state, and then we'll talk about Sulfur Peak earthquake and seismic vulnerability and lessons learned elsewhere. We'll also talk a little bit about the research at IAC and some conclusions. Here's a little bit of a background about myself. I've been here since August 2016. I got my doctorate at the University of Canterbury, New Zealand, masters at SUNY Buffalo, bachelors at Kabul University, Afghanistan. Been a consulting engineer since 2006. I started joining the US Army Corps of Engineers projects in Afghanistan for building military camps, that's when I started my career. I didn't know my career was going to bring me here to Idaho one day. I'm a member of building code committees at the national level, at AAC 7, and also with PCI and ACI, and then I got my licensure for practicing engineering. So the turning point in my life for studying earthquakes was this earthquake in 2005 in Kashmir. I was in Kabul at the time, I was a student. October 8, 2005, I was sitting in the class, and I just noticed somebody kicked my chair, and I thought that a friend of mine is probably playing a prank, but then after several seconds, I realized, no, it's an earthquake. We got out of the building, I was 260 miles away from the epicenter, and I remember that earthquake went more than a minute. Oh my goodness, it was, it was terrible, like you see that, you know, that fear and concerns among people that the building is going to collapse now or now, although it was a well-built structure. That probably was the turning point for my, for me to start studying seismic, although my parents are geotechnical engineers, but I think that was the point, that I was like, I would like to study structural and earthquake engineering, would like to save lives. Obviously, that earthquake was pretty devastating and caused a lot of damage. This is the seismic map of state of Idaho, so if you take a look at it, the area where is dark orange, that's where we are located in high seismic zones, like the highest according to the building code. So you can see a whole bunch of activities over here, that's where Borah Peak is located. There are three fault lines out there, known fault lines, could be some hidden faults, we don't know, because nobody has done a more detailed study of it and trying to find the ground motions and correlate that with structural engineering and vulnerability. Southeast corner of the state also has the highest, high seismic risk, and then over here, West Yellowstone, that's also another part. These three areas are separate, they're not kind of connected, so you got fault lines in each of those areas. I'll just go to some historical events in this estate, 1959 earthquake of Yellowstone, 7.2. This earthquake was comparable to the Good Friday one of 1964 magnitude nine in Alaska. It released a whole bunch of energy, it happened like somewhere in midnight, and, you know, the ground around it dropped as much as 20 feet, caused a lot of seaches to surge around the Hippen Lake. If you go now to Yellowstone, you see that, the lake that it created, they call it Quake Lake. Several aftershocks ranging 5.8 to 6.8. Remember what happens in a quake, when the main event comes, it softens the structure, then you've got a whole bunch of aftershocks. That means with a smaller force, you can push the building further and can collapse easily.
Can you tell us what seaches are?
Well, it's basically, what happens is when the motion comes, you know, and you have the water, it starts building up these waves back and forth, back and forth, because it's excited. You normally think that that should dissipate easily after a few hours, but it just tells you how much energy was inputted, that it took it up to like 12 hours that was going, still surging in that lake. Please interrupt me anytime, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Seismic wave from that earthquake were reported in Boise, 362 miles. Apparently, it broke pipes in Boise that night. Some photos from Yellowstone earthquake of 1959, huge amount of landslides. Then we have Mount Borah earthquake. Mount Borah earthquake is one of the most severe earthquakes in the history of Idaho. It's also one of the most severe ones in North America. 6.9 magnitude, moment magnitude hit around the fault line that we have on the east side of Idaho. Some fatalities at the time, but since there were not, you know, big towns around it, it didn't cause much damage in terms of, you know, structures or fatalities, but Chalice, Idaho, was hit pretty hard. It was that bad that it made the summit to rise seven feet. You can go nowadays and hike, and you can still see the scarp, so there's some photos from Chalice at the time. Huge amount of damage to masonry structures, and also if you go now and hike, you see the scarp, so basically, it's a normal fault, as you can see in that little illustration. It's one side of it basically shifted, and you can see that shift in the ground. That height is probably like 10 feet, 15 feet there, if you go on hike. It just shows you how much the ground moved. Here's a map of our state for the last 42 years, how many earthquakes happened and where. The diameter of circle shows the magnitude of the earthquakes, so the largest one you can see is Mount Borah, actually, a big circle, but you can see again, activity on the eastern side, activity near Yellowstone and southeast Idaho, some big earthquake happened in the last 42 years. Talking about the Sulfur Peak earthquake, how it distorted, I remember that day, I was here in Idaho, around 6:00 PM, magnitude 5.3 occurred east of Soda Springs. The epicenter was about 10 miles east of it, and about 20.5 miles north of Montclair, Idaho, was filled by many people across western Wyoming, like southwestern Wyoming, northern Utah, and southeastern Idaho. Following that main event, USGS had a scenario that was going to be likely that a magnitude seven could hit the region. Now, since then, we have had several hundreds of aftershocks. I can show you a picture how many aftershocks have been noticed in that region. Now, the question was, for a magnitude 5.2, kind of is uncommon, for a magnitude 5.2, you expect some aftershocks, but not a whole bunch of... but not whole bunch of them. Like, I think we had 300 of them in 10 days. So it was showing you that I'm active here. The area where the fault line is located has a complex geology. It's, it hasn't been studied in detail, let me tell you that. We still don't know which fault line was to blame for this earthquake, because we didn't have enough stations to record. In fact, we lost the ground motion, which is the most important data from the main event. There were two stations that picked up the motion. One was in Pocatello, one was in Salt Lake City, but given the distance, you know, it dissipated slightly, so we lost all the valuable information in that ground motion history, because for an engineer, you show that ground motion. I mean, I can talk six hours about it, because I can tell you what kind of building will be in trouble for such a ground motion. It's all about the dynamic characteristic of the system. And southeast Idaho, it is the most seismically active region in our state. This is the map of showing intensity of the earthquake from Soda Springs, September 2, 2017. Now, intensity is different than magnitude. An earthquake of higher magnitude may have lower intensity, but an earthquake of lower magnitude may have higher intensity. What is intensity? Intensity basically measures the damage. So if you have higher intensity, that means more damage. Normally, we measure it with modified Merkel scale, we call it. So you can see that scale at the bottom of the figure. So it goes from one up to like 10 plus. Now, if you are somewhere more than four, it's going to start, you're going to feel it. And then if it's going like to six and seven, it's going to cause damage, probably cracking to structures. And if it reaches like seven or eight, things, things going to start falling apart and collapsing. At nine and 10, nothing will be standing, including mountains on the, on the, on the ground, if it goes to that intensity. So you can see in that little figure that although the epicenter was over here, but the intensity was quite strong north of Soda Springs, and you can also see that these nearby towns around it all kind of like fall between three to four. So a smaller earthquake, but tells you that the intensity was high for it. If you take a look around Rixburg area, there's a bit of darker color over there, so it kind of shows that Rixburg area actually felt it with higher intensity than Pocatello. We probably say it doesn't make any sense, because they're further than us. It all depends on the ground type of, type of soil condition you have and the way it propagates. For instance, it's basically an idea, you're throwing a rock in water sometimes. The waves can generate and can all build up and hit one direction sometimes, but if you throw the rock close to the, close to where you're standing, the wave propagates only in one direction, because it cannot go towards the dry ground. So it's all about directivity, types of soil, and the way that wave propagate. And it kind of tell you that anything that happens here can affect everybody in southeast Idaho and probably even up to Rixburg area. Here is the map of the aftershocks. The first one, the left side, is the aftershocks. I think this is for from September 2 and 28 only. So you see how many aftershocks happened. Each circle shows you one aftershock. And then if you try to zoom it up a little bit, the aftershock started moving towards Utah. So basically, the epicenter was somewhere in, you know, east of Soda Springs, but then more aftershock happened going south. And there were some identified fault lines out there, but there could be tens or hundreds of unknown fault lines. We just don't know. Some of these blue dots are showing you the stations by USGS and also by University of Utah. Now, as I mentioned to you, unfortunately, we lost the ground motion from the main record. We didn't have a station close to epicenter that could have recorded it. But after the quake, University of Utah and USGS, they have installed some temporary stations, so at least we have some data from aftershocks. It will show some, some information, but not as much as the main event could have presented. These are the stations, the temporary stations that they installed after the earthquake, so you can see their location and where the original epicenter was. There are a number of aftershocks that were recorded following the quake in the next several days, from 4.3 to 4.9. I remember feeling aftershocks here in Pocatello for the whole month. I don't know if some other people. I was living here and live here on South 20th Avenue, so it was active. And then it started again, I think like a couple of months ago, it started shaking again. There was, it was on news, I felt one of them. So it's continuing. That's what it makes it unique, that for a smaller earthquake, how come you can have so many aftershocks of that magnitude again? So I'm an engineer, I'm not a seismologist. I'm more interested what's going to do, what earthquake does, obviously. If there are no structure on earth, earthquakes won't do anything, right? Just get you a rocking chair and sit down, let the earthquake come and shake you. But normally, people die when you have buildings and you have structures, right? So what we did, we got some of the ground motion records. So what do you see there? That jaggedness? Those are real ground motion, like that's how earth shakes from aftershocks. If you think of the vertical axis as the seismic force, so seismic force vertical axis, and horizontal axis as the type of building, one-story, two-story, three-story, make it simple. The black solid line is what the code thinks. The building code currently thinks that for building in this range, which is pretty much like short-rise buildings, you're talking about this much force. However, if you take a look at the real ground motion, it was way more than that for the same location. So that's why the building code kind of underestimates the seismic force in the region, because we don't know much about seismicity of the area. We don't know the fault lines. We don't have any record of any past ground motion. States like California, they have invested, they got money from USGS, they have instrumented, you know, San Andreas probably all the way, and they know how much force, what location in that state. So that way, you know, they have a better record for calculation and showing if structure's going to collapse or not. This is a personal experience. New Zealand, Christchurch City, their third-largest city, 2011. February 22, the earthquake hit, was a hidden fault. Nobody knew that it existed. New Zealand is a country that's probably at the tippy-top of seismic design. They know how to design the buildings to withstand earthquakes. In fact, most of the building codes we use in this country started with some legends from New Zealand, how to design the buildings to withstand earthquakes. But they didn't know that there was a hidden fault next to their city, and what happened in 30 seconds, it destroyed the whole city. And that's downtown Christchurch just after the earthquake. There were 3,600, about 3,600 buildings. Two buildings collapsed, 3,200 had to be demolished, 200 people died, most of them in those buildings that collapsed, although they were modern buildings, but they collapsed. Most casualties were also because of the falling debris, masonry structures, facades. I'll talk about it in a bit. And there were some American casualties too in that event, actually. So starting about the vulnerability aspect, it's not only the structure that will suffer damage, but you also have issues with soil. Soil damage is a big thing, and it can actually combine with above the ground or superstructure and make it even worse. So I'm going to just elaborate a little bit on the soil side. This is my secondary area of expertise, geotechnical, probably my dad taught me. I was working for him when I was young. So as much as I know, I'm not a total expert, but we have a faculty, Jim Mahor, in civil engineering. He has 50 years of experience in soil, so he's the guy that he can probably talk about this topic for hours and hours. That's the liquefaction map of Pocatello. It was developed, if I'm not wrong, in coordination with FEMA. So the area that you see yellow, which is kind of majority of the city, the soil can liquefy. Now, you may ask, what is liquefaction? I'm going to show you a demo of what liquefaction is. It's pretty much a scenario that the ground doesn't have any resistance lift, so you can just sink with your own weight in it. Normally, silty sand area where you have sedimentary type of soil, the shake basically liquefies the soil, because you have the water ground a little bit higher, and then that means anything on top of the ground will just sink. The areas that are green and says low liquefaction, but again, this map is kind of like approximate from what I know, so you not really need to go and study this in detail. Here's a photo of, or satellite view of what liquefaction looks like. This is the first time we caught this thing, by the way. This was a ghost, basically, that people missed capturing it, but we caught it finally. Last year, September 28, there was a quake in Indonesia, and the satellite caught this. So I'm going to play you what liquefaction looks like after an earthquake. Those are all houses, and that's the ground.
That's terrifying.
After the quake, people said that they couldn't find their house, or their house was half a mile away from where it used to be. Now, that's what happens when, when you have silty soil and you have high peak ground acceleration that excites it. This is what happened in New Zealand, Christchurch. Huge amount of liquefaction, sand that starts boiling on, on the ground, and finds lower pressure point, and then you have no resistance. Cars buried alive, transmission pole lines, anything. There's no resistance, basically. It's all like liquid semi-solid thing. This photo over here is called lateral spread. This is slightly different than a liquefaction. So what happens when you have a river next to you during the seismic shake, the soil would like to go towards the middle of the river, so you get this huge crash coming up in the roads or anything next there. We have this Purnav River. We do have lateral spread risk in this town. I don't know if it has been studied in detail. Haven't found a map yet of the lateral spread. That's another lateral spread issue. That bridge, I remember I worked on it for like a year in New Zealand. So basically, the two sides, the abutments, the soil moved towards the middle of the river. That's the lateral spread. It just twisted both abutments, and the bridge was not drivable after the quake, so your lifelines were kind of closed. Now, how are you going to get the aid into the city? That's the question we need to ask. Other vulnerability that I can see in this town, landslide for sure. I mean, the perfect example is that Red Hill Mountain, a few years back, that whole bunch of sliding risk there. Boulder risk. This is all New Zealand after that quake, and some boulder can actually cause damage. Most importantly, talking about masonry structures, brick walls, these structures were not designed to withstand earthquakes, because back in 1950s or earlier or 60s, we didn't have knowledge of earthquake engineering. We didn't know what to design for. So most of these structures were built for gravity, so they just take their gravity load. But during the seismic event, masonry walls, especially the ones that are heavy on the facade, they love to go out of plane, because they find that an easy way to collapse. This is a structure in New Zealand that you see the whole facade of the brick wall is gone. In fact, one of these buildings killed the American who was returning back on the day that quake happened. She went to get a tattoo as soon as she was out. Her friend was the other side of the road. She was coming back home to Ohio, and the quake hit, and she was crashed under tons of brick, brick debris in one of those buildings. More damage to brick walls is normally if you have a masonry structure with big openings in the front, that attracts the stresses. So big openings normally were, you know, like a classic thing when they design and build those structures, but obviously, from seismic point of view, they're terrible. You don't want to have big openings in front of the building. That's one of the examples. See the opening on the two sides? That, you see the whole wall has totally lost its resistance, so now, when it doesn't have any lateral resistance, it may actually collapse also actually under aftershocks after. So what I did, in order to correlate this to Pocatello, I went and took some photos from town. Most of the town buildings in the old town, you see, for instance, over here, brick buildings, brick buildings, brick buildings. And again, the front side of them has huge openings. You know, if you combine all those openings, they're substantial. If you see, other type of damage common to masonry, this happened in Christchurch too. Pounding, there was not enough seismic gap between the two structure, because during the seismic event, the structure loves to deflect. You need to have a gap, otherwise, they pound each other. That's how it happened in Christchurch, and normally, lack of seismic gap is an issue for it. Again, in Pocatello, I've noticed many buildings, there's no seismic gap. You see, they're kind of connected, basically, wall to wall. That's again, something that can compromise, or something over here can compromise their seismic performance. Huge opening too in the, in the downstairs. Other vulnerabilities, historical structures. This is Christchurch Cathedral, New Zealand's probably oldest structure. It was retrofitted before the quake, but it still collapsed. So that's why, you know, we say earthquakes do not read building codes of retrofitting, so you got to make sure you have a secondary load path in the structure, so people don't die. Obviously, this structure was so important for New Zealanders, because they're a younger country even compared to US. They were like, we're not going to demolish this. So just last year, they got the go-ahead to go and build it again from those debris.
Is your good reason, part of that building collapsed and the other part didn't?
Yes. This part of it that collapsed was the tower. There was tower that had openings in it, and basically, for a tower with openings, you have little resistance, small like cantilever that wants to rock, but there are no reinforcing bars in it to provide ductility. And the next thing you see, you know, attract the stresses, cause a sheer cracking, and then the whole thing can topple. In fact, the other end of it had a whole bunch of damage too. It's just this side of it we see. The backside of it was completely collapsed. Again, the Catholic Church was gone too. That was, that was a big blow, because building structures like that, I mean, it costs a lot of money to repair them. This architectural stuff, and you want to build them or restore them the way it was. Believe it or not, concrete buildings also got damaged, because most of the concrete buildings before 1970s do not have seismic detailing in them. Any concrete building pre-1970, in this country, there was no seismic detailing incorporated in it. So they are brittle. It looks concrete, but they're brittle, especially at the connections, you know, where you have beam column joints, cracks or failure like that can appear in the column, and once you have column damage to that level, then the gravity is going to pancake it. This was a miracle that the structure was still standing. More damage, residential houses. You may think residential houses are safe. In fact, residential houses can attract a lot of forces, especially if you have heavy shingles, because you have that mass on the roof, and it loves acceleration, Newton's law. You get excited, the building, and then it starts pushing it back and forth. Lot of damage to ceiling and non-structural components, very common. Glazing, here's another thing that we normally don't talk about. The structure may be fine, but there are falling debris everywhere. So if there's an egress pass under the building, and somebody gets injured or killed by that, that structure has already reached the life safety according to the code. So glazing is something that we need to be sure, that if the structures have heavy glazing, they're, they're secure, they're detailed properly, so they're not falling apart during seismic event. Merchandise pallet racks, you may have, you may think it's just like a rack, but if there are valuable goods, they can actually get damaged, and a lot of economic losses. Lifelines, water, water tanks, that's also Christchurch, although the water tank didn't collapse, but started leaking, and then you get environmental issue with the microbes and all this other stuff. So even a crack appearing in that water tank can compromise its functionality for post-disaster response. And obviously, electrical substation, there are a whole bunch of brittle things, and if you haven't detailed them properly, they, or you haven't evaluated them, that they can take a seismic shock, you can have the whole city in dark. Those were the buildings. I also have a bridge family. So bridges in this state are in terrible condition, I can tell you that. Nationalists, CP, we are D. Half of the bridges on, I mean, I'm not going to read all those lines, but half of the bridges on the state highway in this estate will reach their service life in nine months, by 2020. So when they reach their service life, what it means is you need to retrofit it, or you need to reduce their functionality, reduce the load on them, and that has economic consequences. So this is a big issue. I think it's a national trend. But in Idaho, we're in a rough shape overall. And 10% of our structures are basically structurally deficient, so that's very bad. How, how much money to repair it? $2.2 billion. That's the estimate, to just repair the existing structures. And believe it or not, some of the top or most traveled, the structurally deficient bridges are here in our county, in Banning County. You can get the list of them, and it's on the state highway. It's just when you drive, you don't notice, but they are not in a good shape. So what other countries did? Let's say, you know, what New Zealand learned. So after that devastating earthquake in New Zealand, the government was like, we got to do something. We cannot just, you know, build cities and the next day it destroys, and, you know, the economic consequences, the insurance just skyrocketed after that. So what they did, they were like, before the next big earthquake happens, let's go and check the buildings. Check the, so what they did through their parliament, they actually passed a law, that if you have a structure that's less than 33% of the new building standard. So check, give the building to an engineer, structural engineer, and he or she can calculate. If the strength of that building, according to current building code, is lower than 33%, you have 15 years if your building is in high risk, 25 years in medium, or 35 years if you are in low seismicity, to retrofit it. So basically, giving you a timeframe to go retrofit the building before the next one comes, and your structure collapses and people die. If you do not retrofit it, they're going to come and demolish it. And normally, with earthquake-prone building framework, this whole bunch of these other parameters that feeds into it, practicality, timeframes, built heritage, cost, but they did it. They did it in New Zealand, and right now, they're checking it all over their country. They know they have seismic risk. They want to make sure that they're, they have more resilient communities when the next one comes. Now, what we're doing as academics here at IACU, so we have multiple projects funded especially by Idaho Transportation Department, checking the seismic resiliency of bridges. Also, we're looking into buildings. We have unique facilities that we can test the strength of these structures against earthquakes. We actually going to be doing the largest test in Idaho next month ever carried out. Strong industry partnership and collaboration, private companies. This is our new structural lab. Mayor Blatt has been there, so it's busy right now. The cylinders are firing up right now. The cylinders are firing up right now because there's building project. You can see that panel, full-scale panel, my students testing. There's a half a scale bridge column that they're testing for seismic resiliency and there'll be more specimens coming in. So I would like to invite all of you, if you ever wanted to come and see what we're doing. I mean, apart from the structural part of it or research part of it, it's always kind of fun to break things. I'd be happy to show you around. Those are my students. They love breaking things, but scientifically. So they have to get the force displacement, they have to work out, you know, the analytical models and come with recommendation how it's going to respond. We also have shake tables. So those little equipment you see left and right, they were given to us by Idaho National Lab back in the days. That one in the back is a horizontal shake table. You can plug an earthquake record and it will shake it that way. And you can put the specimen on top and you can see how resilient it is. For instance, if you're interested to see the seismic capacity of a facade, you just put that wall on top of the shake table and you plug any type of earthquake that you have records for, we do have it from California to any other country, it will shake it that way. The other one, the black one, is doing vertical because earthquake has that vertical component, so you can also simulate that one. Conclusions with my presentation today, seismicity of Idaho and nearby states, I think, have not been studied well. Probably, people think still that it's wild west. That's my understanding. But a lot of these towns, nearby towns are getting populated, Southeast Idaho, Northern Utah. I think we need to start talking about this. Sulfur Peak earthquake, I think it was a wake-up call for us and for mountain states overall. Montana people, when I talk about them, they were like, yeah, we faced the same issue in Helena because they got the fault lines, the fault lines between Idaho and Montana. So I told them that these are our faults, not your or mine. If it's going to go off, you're going to get it too. I think a close collaboration between industry, academia, and public is really important because a few researchers developed technologies to retrofit structures or new technologies for seismic resiliency. We would like to see them implemented and I think that's how industry is involved and then public was also involved there when it comes to life safety, public entities. These are two quotes from professors, legends from New Zealand who came up with seismic design of reinforced concrete building. They were saying, earthquakes do not read building codes. This is back in 70. And the other one was saying, you cannot control earthquakes, but you can control the structure. And here's a summary. Our population in 1959 was about 650,000. Now, we are at 1.7. So the question is, are we prepared for the big one? We have good relationship with industry. We have a lot of partners, especially, we have the Idaho Transportation Department, the Concrete Guys, I N L, Premier Tech, we've been doing quite a bit of work with them, Precast Research Concrete. A lot of industry helping us with our research. We would like to consult them, so we are getting practical solutions implemented. And with that one, that was the end of my presentation. That's the website that we have. You can go and check it. I also have transcripts if you want. We have a newsletter, everyone from our testing, from our research. My email is there too if you have any questions. And thank you. And let me know if you have any questions, please.
That was awesome. Very frightening.
Do you go back to this slide that you showed, the soil makeup? And you talked about it being liquid-based here in Pocatello.
Yes.
It's the one.
Yep. I'm just going back this way.
Yeah, that one. So most of Pocatello is in liquid area, but so we'd have to, if we're really going to do, what do you do for a liquid area?
Okay, so how can you diminish the risk of liquefaction? That's a great question. It all depends on the type of foundation that you're going to implement in the building. For instance, some foundation types are not suitable for liquefiable soil. So you're going to avoid that. Normally, in liquefiable soil, since the soil doesn't have much resistance, we would like to have a larger area under the building to distribute the weight. So for instance, in New Zealand, they know that they cannot go fix the soil, but what they have done, they say that for this district, this district, this district soil is liquefiable, you are not allowed to use certain type of foundations. Then use this other one which is more resilient. Normally, they use waffle slabs or sometimes a mat footing to distribute the load better. That's how you do it. There's no other way because changing, I mean, the whole liquefaction map of the city is impossible. Only time can change that, millions of years.
So there are principles of building that can diminish the effect of liquid.
Exactly. Yes, we can all.
Was that one picture you showed, didn't look like anything stood up to it. No, it was moved.
Oh, that one. Well, this one, what I'm showing you over here, now, if you had, if you had a structure with piles that was designed for it, it will stand. This is like, kind of like, not a developed country either. So it's just like all these little houses, they didn't care about the footing. But normally, when you have liquefaction, we normally, if it's a bridge, we go deep footings, put piles in it. This is way severe.
So you go beyond.
Yes.
The liquefaction.
So what happens is, this is the top of the ground. You do not normally have liquefaction all the way. So there are different strata in the soil. One strata is, for instance, good, the other one is weak. There's one strata, for instance, that's liquefiable. So if you want to put a structure to stay in their position, you make sure the footings, it's kind of like if it's a deep footing, go through that layer. So the structure is standing. Because what happens is, when it liquefies, that pile that you had in the soil is now becoming a column because there's no surrounding support for it. So there are ways to get rid of it, yes. For residential houses, again, yes, you can do it with a certain type of footings. If you have an existing structure and you want to improve the ground locally, you can do that too. We have methodologies to injure ground. You can ground the whole, I mean, if it's a, this is an important building and you want to keep it, there's a methodology to improve the soil just for this building.
What about all the houses? Many of us live in that yellow area. And I'm sure our houses are. We have to move to the green. Is there anything we can do?
No. Did you see the news about the last hurricane in Panama City? There was like huge amount of damage, all the structures were gone, but there was one guy who paid for Precast concrete structure and wasn't standing where it was. Everything else was gone. And he filmed it too and he sent it to me. Yeah, because I know a friend of him.
Is that what we need to do?
Yes. I think what we need to do, we need, when we build a structure, people, lots of people think about initial cost, the cheapest, let's go that way. But normally, you need to see the lifetime cost of a structure. So lifetime means initial plus any maintenance or repair after an event. So if you would like to spend a little bit more money initially, it will give you durability and long-term resiliency. At the end of the day, the total costs is going to balance each other. But that's what engineers have to sell to clients, to know that, look, you're going to get something. Cheapest like basically going and buying a Honda versus a Ferrari. If you're buying a Honda, it's initial cost, but after five years, I think it's gone, right? I mean, hopefully, nobody likes Honda here, but if it's a Ferrari. It's a high cost in the beginning, but I don't think that engine is going to go off that easy. You know, it's going to give you 25, 30 years on it. So at the end of the day, the amount of money you spend to repair the Honda or buy a replacement later on can balance. I know it's an exaggeration thing, but that's how you can do it with new technology versus traditional.
How do you retrofit a building?
How you retrofit what, sorry?
A building.
There are a variety of, it depends what kind of building is it. For instance, if it's a masonry, can I go with masonry? For masonry structures, if you have the risk of facades falling out of plane, you can actually have a frame in the back and you can tie it. So from the front, it will look the same as it used to be, but you have bracing in the back that's holding the structure to not topple. You can go and retrofit the connection of the diaphragm with the wall. Most of these buildings around here do not have proper connection because when the load comes, you see, you have this diaphragm and it has to transfer to the walls. So you have the inertia force that has to transfer and if the connection is weak, it's going to pull out and then things can collapse partially or fall. Other ways to retrofit them, you can reduce the size of opening for in-plane action. You can ask the guy, hey, the windows are too big. I want you to reduce it slightly, so close it up slightly. Or you can also put another frame for that. There are definitely ways for any type of structure. We have retrofitted probably tens of thousands of them in New Zealand.
I've seen Gothic cathedrals in Europe where they're at risk of collapse and they, it sounds like they've done similar things where they've, they've built frames to shear up the walls, but also I've seen real elaborate like cable systems.
Yes, they're post-tensioning, yeah. So we actually have that research going on in the lab. So there are a variety of ways depending on what's your budget. For instance, a structural structure like in Italy, they will keep it, right? So we have something called dampers. Damper is basically a circuit breaker, treat that as a circuit breaker in your house. It absorbs all the seismic shock. It's a device. It's a fluid device like your shock absorber in the car. And you can make it out of metal, you can make it out of fluid. You can install that in the structure and it will absorb the shocks. San Francisco City Hall was retrofitted that way. Nuclear power plants in this country are retrofitted that way. There are other technologies, little rubber bearings that you isolate the whole building from its footing. You lift it up and you put the bearings underneath, so now it's not excited because it's very low stiffness. So these technologies are out there. You also use the cables, as you say, threaded rods, you post-tension them to hold everything together. And they're all practical. They have been used, I mean, Italy is at the forefront of earthquake engineering. They know what they're doing because they had that La Quela quake in 2009, damaged their big, one of their big cities, I think. So they have developed and implemented these technologies.
Could you roll back to the Pocatello? What would you do if you're living in one of the green areas?
That's a very good question. I checked my house, it was right at the boundary, but I know that map is approximate, so I maybe well the yellow myself. However, when I bought the house, I found the drawings of the structure. I didn't tell anything to the owner and I checked it three hours myself to make sure that that building does not have any seismic issue with it. Now, if you're located in one of the, I don't think you should freak out right away. It's not going to go like, you know, things are falling apart. I think.
Linda's over here freaked out.
I think we need to study the seismicity. We need to know what's around us first, the risk. And then, based on that, you identify your vulnerability. What I showed you today is basically what I can see right now from my knowledge, that if there's a big earthquake of seven magnitude, we can have this liquefaction. Now, what will be the extent of it? What will be the extent of liquefaction and aftershocks? Because in New Zealand, aftershock, we had liquefaction again and again happening. I think those are the question that could be only answered if you know your seismic risk. And seismic risk is when you know how many fault lines are around you, what kind of ground motions they produce, and then you do your analysis and then you basically develop maps for the city for seismic resiliency. That's what happened in New Zealand. After that quake, it was a hidden fault, they started looking into risk first and then they found out that their hidden fault, it can go up to this level, it can hit the city that way. And based on that, they incorporated, you know, appropriate retrofitting solutions or foundation solution for liquefaction for different parts of the city. It was a process, it was a lot of work.
So in the green areas, what kind of damage results from, is it much, much lower or is it?
Liquification wise, I think if you see the.
Well, that is liquid faction.
Landslide probably, I would say. Landslide and boulder. If you have boulder, it can fall, fall down.
So don't build on the rim, set backwards.
If you build on a top of a hill, what happens on a top of a hill? All the acceleration during the quake goes to one location. So you can actually end up with higher acceleration at the top of the hill. So what that means is acceleration multiplied by the mass gives you what? Force, right? Newton's law. So it's going to push your structure with higher force. So it's not a good idea to go right at the tippy top because they call it the ridge effect. Yeah, yeah, I made sure I didn't buy my house. I'm just joking with you.
See, if you have his career, you got to panic over where you buy the house. Then is there too much space? Is it?
Do we have fault lines?
Fault lines around.
Valley?
In Pocatello?
In the Porton Valley.
In the Porton Valley? I'm not aware of it because there could be a hidden fault. We haven't studied them yet. I know the Geoscience Department at ISU, they're collaborating with I N L and some other folks for the Southeast Idaho. Hopefully, their plan will include Pocatello too. As I mentioned, I'm not a seismologist. I look at more earthquake engineering aspect of it. But yes, there could be a hidden fault. Nobody believed that there was one in Christchurch and that there was one.
Like a significant size one too. You know, it's, one company we have in Pocatello is called Core Brace and they are building braces that are out of metal that actually move for this very thing.
That's the damper. That is the damper.
That's a damper.
And they send it to New Zealand.
Yeah.
Yes. So they build it here, they're in West Jordan, and then they send it all over the world. Nowadays, any steel building coming up in seismic zone, you have one of those braces.
They're in the process of building athletic stadiums and things like that for California, San Francisco, a number of areas. It's kind of neat to see that process and see what it is, but that's.
How susceptible would a building like Holterina be?
That's a very good question. So Holterina is a truss building. So that's a steel structure. Normally, it's kind of like lightweight compared to the other one. However, when they built it, it was 1960s, I guess, I don't think that they had any seismic detailing incorporated the connection of the arch to the footing. You have to look at it. So go and find the structural drawings and do your detailed evaluation, see if it's matching the current code level, then you'll be satisfied. Most of the time, for structures like that, there's deficiency for lateral loading and the connection with the footing. Because the truss itself is quite strong, you have a whole bunch of bracing, it's going to stand. But most of the time is when the load goes, where the load goes at the end of the day, it goes to the foundations, right? You make sure that connection to the foundation is tight and at the same time, the size of the footing is enough to take that event. But again, I don't see any damage, I don't think there would be damage to the trusses because there's so much redundancy and so many bracing. It's just that connection, that's what I would believe. You can see the braces at the top, which is a good news, you need those. So next time you have a warehouse type of building, make sure you have cross bracing at the roof level. They're very, very important for a seismic event.
What about this building?
It's probably coming down.
Well, I live in Colonial Hall, which is one of the oldest buildings on the campus, 1929, and there's this huge crack that's split in half, but my office is next to Exeter Door.
Counsel, I would tell you, if you have an opportunity to go down to their facility, it is on Second Street?
Yes, I can actually, yeah.
Across from.
I'd like to go see that.
I have been there.
Me too.
Okay.
I think that we should go together.
This one.
Yeah. Or does it make some destruction happen?
Will it destroy stuff? Yes.
Scientifically?
We have got the structural specimens to start testing and there are dampers too that you can see how they work. So whatever, whatever, I just have to call my guys and then they will be there.
It would be interesting. If, we probably, I'm not going to encourage us to all go to get together because if we do, that's a quorum and then we have a meeting and then it's a mess. It would be air shaking, I'm afraid. Any other questions, counsel?
This was fast.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your time. We are going to get to one more agenda item, counsel, before we break for lunch, and that is agenda item number nine, Pocatello Free Clinic Building Request for Ongoing Financial Support. Christina Potts, Pocatello Free Clinic Executive Director, will be present to request ongoing funding from the council for operations and maintenance at their new facility. Pocatello Free Clinic is currently located at 429 Washington Avenue in a building owned by the city of Pocatello. Council has previously provided a yearly stipend of $3,500 to offset the cost of utilities at that location. The clinic will move to a new location May 1, 2019, and is requesting a monthly stipend of $558.33 from the city of Pocatello to offset utility and maintenance costs at the new location. If approved, council will consider the formal funding agreement at a future regular council meeting.
So, my name is Christina Potts and I am the executive director of the Pocatello Free Clinic. And today I brought with me one of our board members, Vicki Allen. She's been on the board for a while and our board president is actually out of town today. So I asked her to come with me. So we're actually gonna be moving, start moving into the new facility as of April 1st. We are gonna be going into this building, the old blocks building, into the northeast side of the facility. And then the Crisis Center will be on the northwest of the side of the facility. And really, the purpose of us coming together and integrating is to help save the county money, to help relieve the police officers of having to stay up at the hospital for the duration when somebody needs to talk to, like a social worker and stuff. And so we are going to be available and collaborating with them so that we can see their clients. One of Dever Hunt, Allen's RHS, and Heather Moore is his assistant, and they're over the Crisis Center currently in Idaho Falls. And one of their biggest expenses is actually transporting patients for medical reasons. And so we are hoping to save them quite a bit of money in this. And so, and then just the facility that we've been in, we've been there since April 1st, 1871. It has served the clinic for many years. I've taken over last year, actually, in January, and over the course of this last year, we have had a lot of structural issues as well. It's just, it's an older building and we've tried to upkeep it the best that we can, but it's just, it's older. And so, I don't know how, how long you guys have been funding with the utilities, but with the move, we're gonna be doing something with the Portnife Health Trust where we're paying like maintenance and operation expenses. And previously, the city would just pay our power and our gas and then we pay the water. And so we were hoping to increase the amount a little bit since we will be incurring more expenses at this facility. And we were hoping to get like a monthly stipend of 500, or $558.33.
And my purpose for being here today, I'm Vicki Allen. I currently serve as a board member on the Pocatello Free Clinic. I've been a past president of the Pocatello Free Clinic also. And I wanna come and thank you guys for the support that you've offered to the Free Clinic over all these years. I see great growth in our clinic. I'm also in my real life, an instructor in the Physician Assistant Program at ISU, and I'll be bringing my students to do rotations at the Free Clinic. They'll be working with an NP or a PA, and they'll also work with the residents from ISU. So hopefully, I can have my students understand the importance of giving back in communities. And we take care of a very high acuity level at the Free Clinic. So they're actually coming for their internal medicine rotation, which is a pretty impressive thing to do. I also have students in Twin Falls from, from the PA program, and they work in the Free Clinic there on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings, and they just see different clientele during that. I'm gonna have the students here in Pocatello working full shifts, Monday through Friday, and when we're open on Saturdays, they'll stay and do that too. So they're gonna get a better experience here at this Free Clinic. So it's very exciting to be so very close. And when we listen to the police officers talking about how very busy they are and somebody on the council, I think, Mr. Bray, you brought it up, will it make a difference with having the Crisis Center? And that's absolutely the goal, is to be able to relieve some of that pressure on police officers not knowing where should we take somebody who needs mental health care and doesn't really need to be in jail, and in fact, that's probably not the right place for them, but we don't have a safe place for them. And the Crisis Center will offer that. And then Christina and her providers will be able to offer if you have someone that has a sore throat, that has a headache, that they don't have to be physically moved to a clinic or to the ER to be checked out, that we can take care of that. So from the board, we thank you for all the support that you've done. I'd like to encourage all of you to come to the Shamrock Shuffle on Saturday, which is one of our fundraisers. And that's what we promise to do as the board, is to always be actively involved in finding ways to do funding, not just through grants, but things that involve our community so that they know about us too.
I would be interested in knowing just a little bit more about the numbers that the Free Clinic supports on an annual basis and the board participation. Who besides Mrs. Allen?
So actually, we had a growth of 19% from 2017 to 2018 in our patient visits. So we are seeing a lot more patients and we're growing. We, last year, actually, when I had started, we had a provider there Monday through Wednesday from 9:02 and then volunteers. And we're now open Monday through Friday from 9:06, and we offer walk-in clinics. Previously, if we had a patient who would not show up for appointments, it was kind of like a, a three-strike deal. And then, and the clinic part of the policy was to discharge the patients from the clinic because they were not meeting, or not coming to their appointments. And with the walk-in clinics, I've actually changed that because we're community-based and I don't, we're supposed to be serving the community and discharging people who fall within this demographics and patient population. I just didn't feel was conducive to our mission. And so we actually sent letters to all those patients and invited them to come back to the clinic with a stipulation that they cannot schedule appointments, but they can come into our walk-in appointments. And that helps our providers be more productive as well and for those patients who do come to their appointments. And then with the Crisis Center, part of the way that we've decided to share our resources with them is to be, we're gonna have like a chat system and a phone system where we'll be connected. And so if we have a patient over there who has a UTI, they would call over to us and say, hey, we have a patient who has a UTI, when do you have your next opening? That we could bring them over. And then we'll be scheduling their patients throughout the day as well, which I also think will help them in their recovery too, once they get past the crisis because they're on a better track. As far as like medications and stuff too, will help them manage that.
What's a UTI?
A urinary tract infection.
I still didn't hear a number.
Oh.
Jim's point.
Oh, I'm sorry. So in 2018, we saw 1,439 patients for, in our medical and chiropractic clinics and 445 in our dental.
Who's the 1,000 number?
1,439.
Are those unique patients?
Yes.
So the volume is higher because they, they come back. One of the things that I'll tell you that's changed dramatically at the clinic is that because we have permanent providers, there's more continuity for the patients. My husband is an ER physician and would come in and volunteer time. One of the concerns that he had was that he would see a patient on Monday when he volunteered, but he couldn't volunteer again for another three weeks. And so he couldn't follow up with that patient. And if there wasn't someone there, because we were only open Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, that patient was again back in limbo with expanding the hours, having permanent people there as an NP and a PA to be able to take care of the patients. We can offer that patient a better opportunity to come back to us and not still have that gap where they have to go somewhere else again. So those are things that are making a big difference. And then we are able to have not just the unique numbers, but consistency for the patients so that they, they do follow through and get better.
Help me again with the composition of the board.
Do you wanna tell them the board members?
Oh, yes. So Sherri Joseph, she is our board president.
And she's an RN, now practicing currently.
We have Matt Bloxham, he's our membership director.
And he works at Idaho State University, and so he helps with a lot of the outreach that we do.
JD Henson is our treasurer. He owns JD and Company, and so he has a, a lot of business experience, which helps us. And then we also have Meg Long. She's been on the board for how many years?
Longer than me.
Oh, a long.
And she works in dental health care at ISU and brings her students there.
We also have Dr. Roger Bowe, he's been on the board and a part of the clinic, I feel like since it started almost.
Close.
And then we have Alex Bollinger. He also works at ISU. We have Nate Coolio, he is an attorney.
Kathy Holson is a retired PhD RN. And Grace Jacobson is also one of the founding members and she's an RN.
Mike Doyle.
And Mike Doyle is a physician assistant, works as a volunteer at the Free Clinic and is also a part-time faculty member in the PA program at ISU and works in student health at ISU.
John Abreu, he's the CFO of Portnife. He actually recently joined our board as well. And we've had a longstanding relationship with Portnife as well, and they're actually helping fund Cindy Bundy, she's the PA that just came back. And because she is 50/50 with ISU, they're starting this new program at ISU. And so she does 50% at ISU with like the PA program and then 50% clinicals with the Free Clinic. And so Portnife is gonna help pay her salary so that we can have her at the clinic doing rotations as well with her students too. And then we have Johnny Sinides and he's with the Evans Bank. And then I think that's actually it.
Seems like I was counting them as we went.
Yes.
How big's the new, thank you.
Yes.
How big's the new space?
It's about 3,500 square feet. We do, actually have an extra exam room, which we really need. Right now, we only have two exam rooms and there's actually three. And then we have, in the front, actually by the waiting room, we have what is gonna be a multipurpose room. We have ISU Audiology, they're going to start providing services to our patients. They're gonna come put like a hearing booth into our multipurpose room and helping patients with free hearing aids as well. And in that multipurpose room, we'll use like our chiro clinics and any other clinics. We're working with other providers in the community to try to bring a little bit more with like specialties and stuff because we do have a lot of patients who are, they're just very complicated. They're not coughs and colds, they're multi-system, multi-disease in their systems and stuff like liver failure and some of them are pretty complex, so.
And then there's two dental chairs.
Yes.
How big was the old space?
It was hard to measure because a lot of it is not usable space. I don't know if you've been in the old clinic, but we have several flights of stairs. We're not ADA compliant, and our furnace doesn't really work very well, so every room has a space heater right now. But I would, I would guess that it's around 2,500, just based on the space that I've seen in comparison to what-
But I think usable space, I'm, I'm gonna say, just guessing, we've doubled it for usable space.
And I actually have my own office to work in peace, which will be nice, because right now, it's the break room and pharmacy storage. So it's actually a really big, it's a big deal for us.
And you guys all have to go over and take a look at it. It's very impressive. It's a common door to go into the Crisis Center and into the Free Clinic.
Oh, we separated them. So the Crisis Center's up there.
Oh, and yes. Okay, so they're moving it. So they just put in our door because I drove past and looked, oh, so that's not the common door?
No, that's ours.
So we got a new door, it was a window.
So, and they're gonna be done landscaping and a bunch of stuff actually around the facility, so you guys will kind of start seeing some beautification in this parking lot, actually.
Quick question, do you guys get any support from other government entities like County or City of Chabik or anything?
Yes, Bennett County does support us. City of Chabik, I've tried to call it, I haven't been able to get through to them, but, and they haven't supported us in the past, but Bennett County has been a big supporter.
What do they contribute?
Actually, they used to do about 30,000 and they're doing 60 now for us. And that's to help pay for our NP. So we use that funds because before, where they were at 20 hours and we really wanted to increase the hours and to see more patients. And we have a very tight budget. And so in order to pay for things like that, I've had to reach out to different organizations and ask for funding for specific things so that we could increase those hours. And so that was one thing that Bennett County was able to help us with. And then we get funding through United Way of Southeastern Idaho. We just completed our panel hearing with them. We haven't found out the amount yet, but we do apply. So we've got money from Pink Ribbon to help pay for mammograms and women's health. So we're working with Portnife Imaging and they give us like Medicaid pricing so that we can make sure that our women are being checked. Especially some people, like if they are not a US citizen, they cannot use like the Women's Health Track program that's provided through the Public Health Department. And so we can actually help those people who fall into that gap because it's not through a federal program. And so some of them get worried about stuff like that, like being deported or being reported and stuff. And so through those other programs and those other entities, we can provide those services for them.
I'm curious, with Health West so close, are they supporting at all?
We actually work together. So we will send patients sometimes over there because they do have more services than we have. And then they will actually send patients to us as well because they have like the $20. And I know that occasionally, they'll work with people on like a zero sliding scale, but patients will still have to pay for medications. And with our patient population, they can even afford the $4 medications at times. And so we have like a prescription assistance program through MOG Pharmacy, and that's part of the money too that comes from Bennett County is to help pay for the indigent funds because they'll refer people who can't pay for their medications to us. And I've noticed a tremendous increase in, in that program, just even last month, like our annual bill with MOG is 1,700 a month. Last month, it was 3,400. So we provide prescriptions for patients of the Free Clinic, but we also provide prescriptions for just any residents of the county who's not able to afford their prescriptions.
How do you qualify?
You have to have no insurance and be at or below the 200% federal poverty level.
One of the things, you're asking us to plug in to a budget we haven't seen, essentially. Second thing is, the city has stepped forward. We had the, the building and we, our, what we allocated was essentially to help you stay in that building. Part of my dilemma about doing any more is that you, we're gonna inherit a building we still have to maintain. So we've, we've got a cost there too. The other part of it is that the city, by its design, does not do indigent care and things like that. That's not part of what our budget is. We get criticized a lot for anything we do that is benevolent because people see their taxes as going to provide a service to them, not to somebody else. So my struggle is with, you're asking us to almost double down, not quite. We're gonna inherit the, the load of our building to maintain it or get rid of it, whatever we decide to do. I just don't feel like we're in a position to know what we can do. Does that make sense? We don't know what your budget is. We don't, so I really applaud your work. This city, I know we've worked real hard to make sure that the clinic stayed open at times.
Right, absolutely.
And so, but I, I think we're kind of in a new era in healthcare with the, with the Crisis Center and with the Health Trust and indigent care and maybe Medicaid expansion. And it's hard for the city who doesn't have a defined role to sort our role out right now. And I was just real reluctant to go anywhere right now until that role's sorted out a little better.
Well, expressed, Roger.
I think that's incredibly reasonable. Always you guys can have a look at, our budget is open, you know, for you to look at and see. I still would like you to come over and see what the new clinic is. Part of it is gonna be that things that you do put your budget for are going to be improved with, I believe the police department will be one of the people that come back to you with saying that, that they don't have to have seven of their officers sitting at Portnife because there is a place, that they don't have to stay with that patient.
Well, and that's something I think we can explore.
Right.
Until we understand that transfer of responsibility and obligation and stuff, it's really hard to address it until it becomes a little more tangible.
So I think it makes sense for you to just follow what we do. Christina can come back at another time also and, and present what's happening and see what's happening when we've moved over and put the two together.
You guys are, I don't wanna say a moving target, but you're evolving target.
Absolutely.
And I think our role also will have to be to understand how we evolve, to understand the partnership that is, that will come in some way, but we don't know what that will be yet. And that's, I'm only speaking for me, I don't know. But I, I kinda feel like that's something we're all under is the duress of trying to justify what we're doing and we need, we, we need to have a reason for what we're doing and- And we need, we need to have a reason for what we're doing and it's hard to hit that reason right now.
I think what I'll do specifically is I will work with the Crisis Center and the numbers and so that I can show you guys how much time it's saving the police officers because that, that transfers into money. You know, because they're handling issues that are, you know, if more important at the time than just to be sitting at the hospital. And I think for the taxpayers, they've seen a lot of the police officers sitting up there and I, I do believe wholeheartedly that when the city recognizes how much we're working with the Crisis Center, how much we're saving the city's resources, I feel really confident that they would feel okay.
And you know, just to kind of paint the picture a little broader, that's one of the reasons we can justify hate for friends. Because we have a place that our officers can count on at times to not have to figure out everything with the homeless person. And that's another reason we have some support for Family Service Alliance because we're freeing up our personnel to do their job because of those agencies. And so right now, I think we're going to have to have a, I guess we could go by faith, but I think we're at the point with what we've seen in our budget development so far, it's real hard to go by faith because we've got to look at dollars. And so I, I just feel like right now is probably most appropriate for you to chart what you're doing and for us to have a little bit of feedback from our, our police department after there's a track record established.
If I may get this clarified, so you are requesting on top of the thirty-five hundred dollars, right? Or is that, oh, it's not, okay.
No, no, it's in place of the thirty-five.
In place of it, okay. You know, I'm saying if it's additional to that, that's the same, that plus five, five hundred something a month, okay.
So would it be good to come back in like six months, maybe? Or like a year? Would that be like a better timeframe, do you think?
We will be, a year is going to be nice to have you back to kind of give us a report of what's happening there.
Right.
As, as per the dollar amount, we're working on the budgeting process right now and and we will have to kind of make some decisions whether or not we stay at the same level, whether or not we stay at a level, increase that level. We'll need to be figuring that out before July. And so in the next few months, we'll have a better idea of what that, what that dollar amount will actually look like or what it will look like. But if there's not an increase now, you know, in a year, it will be nice to have a report that shows us some more things that, because we'll be working on the next year's budget a year from now as well, so.
Thank you so much. I have admired what you've been doing for years and years. You have saved the taxpayers of Bannet County hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I would be interested in you actually reaching out to Chubbick again and finding out why in the world they're not willing to participate with the free clinic. I don't see why that would be the case and it makes no sense to me if.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so I would, I would encourage you to reach out to them again and.
Do you track the residences, the addresses of the patients, where they come from?
Well, a lot of them have houses. We actually don't even, it's a common misconception that we see a lot of homeless people. We actually don't. Our patient population is females age forty-five to sixty, so.
My point is, are they coming from Chubbick or Pocatello?
Oh, they're coming from Pocatello, Chubbick, Blackfoot. We have people who come from Idaho Falls, Power County. We had somebody drive all the way down from Salmon to come see our providers.
Do you get a lot from South County?
A little bit, yeah, but not as much. Like we get some people from Bear Lake and stuff like more down there. But I would say more from Idaho Falls and Blackfoot and American Falls.
Oftentimes it's a transportation issue. If you don't, can't afford healthcare, you often can't afford the gas either. So one of the things this city did was help us with the bus route in our old location. This is going to be an easier place for people to get to, which was another way that we were looking at that for our clientele that come. So in answer to you, Chubbick, yes. Pocatello, yes. And Bingham, those are probably the biggest areas that come to us.
And American Falls.
And American Falls. When you get down to like Mount Pilgrim and everything, it becomes a cost issue for them.
What about Inca and McCammon, Downey?
Yeah, that's what I meant by South, South Bannet County.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I do see people from Inca.
Yes. McCammon, Downey, all that.
I personally haven't seen as much from Downey and McCammon, but if I talk to my patient coordinator, she would know more about like that part of the demographics and stuff because she inputs it all, but on the report that I ran like at the end of the year, I didn't recall seeing a ton from Downey or Sodaspring. We do have some from Sodaspring, not a lot though. And we have a dentist that is actually down there in Sodaspring that will see a couple of patients for us for dental needs. And so that's nice for them because then they don't have to come all the way up here because it's pretty, it's a pretty good drive.
So do you know that, that we have the dental chairs and dentists can come and dental hygiene people come? But oftentimes a dentist will prefer to have the patients come to them, so they'll do a dental day and have us take care of the patient, do x-rays that they might need. And then they all go on a Saturday to that clinic and that's what they give back to the community so that they have their resources there and can do the best care for the patient. We do very basic at ours and yet some of the patients stay in line for six months to be able to get to one of those. So we can do some maintenance, but our dentists will use their own facilities.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, counsel, we are going to take a break now for lunch. And we will, I would encourage everybody to try to be back a half hour, forty-five minutes. It's going to be more than a half hour. We can't take a break from more than a half hour. Forty-five minutes-ish. And we'll get moving as quickly as I can. I'm looking over here because you're the next one.
Thank you very much for joining us. The mayor will be with us shortly. We will turn to agenda item number ten, Fleet Department Progress Update and Request for Counsel Direction. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, and Teresa Codel, Fleet Department Manager, will be present to update the council on development progress of the Fleet Department. Staff will also ask counsel for direction regarding placement of a mechanic position within the department and allowance for tools. Tom, turn to you.
Good afternoon, counsel. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. I'm joined with Teresa Codel, our Fleet Manager. I'll apologize in advance that you have to listen to three in a row from me, so we'll take that out of the table. So we'll try and make it as quick as possible. I know you guys have had a busy day already. So today we want to talk about, just give you a few updates and then there's a little bit of direction that we need moving forward for part of the budgeting process. So we're going to talk a little bit today about the software and where we're at with that. We've got the development of the shifts that we want to implement. And then we're going to get into some of the action items that we need some of your direction on. And that'll be defining a tool allowances, a fleet positioning for mechanics, as well as the moving forward on the NAPA IBS store, which is a part store within the building. We'll get started with the software. We purchased Assetworks to be our single supplier for all mechanics citywide. It's a nine to twelve month process. Teresa's done an amazing job. We've got it done in about six months. Last week, this is the first training we had at our new facility. This is the new conference room slash training rooms. We had mechanic training over there. We're scheduled to go live next week with that. So it's about three to six months ahead of schedule, so we're really happy with that. We see we got pretty good feedback. It's pretty user-friendly. We hope that that stays that way. Next, we want to talk about some of the shifts, the shifts we want to run over there for the administrative staff, which would be the Fleet Manager, our Fleet Materials Coordinator, as well as the Service Rider. That would be five days a week, eight to five. What we're proposing is to run two shifts. Those two shifts will be on four tens. So you'll have one shift that goes Monday through Thursday and then another shift that goes Wednesday through Saturday. So those will be ten-hour, four-ten-hour days. The direction we're looking at that is that gets them started early and it gets them to stay a little bit late. And then the big thing for the weekend is for Fridays and Saturdays, that's when most of the preventative maintenance we plan on happening. So for instance, during the summer, when the street department and the water department are on their four, on four tens as well, Fridays is when good preventative maintenance will be done, so that's not interfering with their, their daily routines. And then for the other departments, that was where the Saturday shifts would come in. Any questions on that?
Which, which departments are going to be encompassed initially?
So right now it's city hall, all the departments in city hall, the water department, the parks department, the street department, and the sanitation department. Right now, the police have not begun union negotiations yet and so we don't know where we're at on that mechanic. HR is working on that as well as the fire department hasn't started either, so. But I think the long-term goal was to have police and fire part of fleet, but we're just kind of seeing where that goes.
Are those technicians existing people?
Those are existing people, yep.
Do they shift foremen too?
Yep. Those are currently called lead mechanics. We'll get to that in a minute.
So when you look at the structure that you're proposing, do you think that structure automatically builds in some more efficiency?
Absolutely. You know, I'll just give you an example for, for the street department, let's say. The mechanics at the street department work the same four tens as the operators do. So we only have one asphalt paver. When that asphalt paver needs work, then that, the asphalt crews down and they have to do something else. So anytime that we can do preventative stuff to prolong the life, our productivity rates, that's when we start really seeing, you know, good productivity rate increases. You know, and that's hard to put a quantitative amount on.
Oh, go ahead. Say we're saving a million dollars.
We're saving, yeah. But yeah, that's, that's the big push for the four tens or the two shifts is to be able to take care of some of the preventative maintenance off-shift of other departments.
And I would imagine that when something goes down and that gives you, if it goes down on Thursday, you might have the part back on Saturday to fix it too.
Absolutely. Instead of waiting till Monday morning to fix it, that thing can be run by Saturday.
Were all of these personnel included in the original estimates of this program?
They are, yes, they are. And those are, that's the one thing I want to get across. Those are projections only. If you remember from when this started a long time ago, we used vehicle equivalent units as, as the gauge of how we determined technician sizes. That's one thing that's kind of a moving target, you know. We've, we've done a lot of research on that. Some, some fleets are operating with less manpower, some are operating with more. You know, some don't have sanitation trucks, which are a lot of maintenance, some do. So that's, some of those staffing levels, we flushed those out as best we could. But we're going to have to kind of get in there and get in the nuts and bolts of it and see where we're going from there.
Tom, I recently had the opportunity to go into a shop where my car was being worked on. Mechanic is there with a computer diagnosing what's there. Are people equipped to do that?
Yeah, and I can probably let Teresa talk a little bit about that.
They are. We currently have Scan Tools, which is a computer that you connect to the diagnostics of the vehicle. However, each department has their own. There's an annual maintenance cost to that, to upgrade. So that in itself is going to increase efficiency and decrease cost because we can have one good one and reduce the cost of having to maintain and upgrade all of the others.
The other nice part as well is with this asset management program, the technicians, we're going to be pretty much paperless. And so technicians will be inputting their hours as well as when they make a work order on a vehicle. And that, that kind of transitions a little bit into the NAPA store that we'll talk about a little bit later of how that integration works. And some of the benefits we'll see on that.
So if you're going live with the software, when are we going live over there?
So we're, we're shooting for October first for go-live on, on mechanics. So we've got the, the program up and running right now so that mechanics at their own individual departments right now that haven't centralized can input their work as they're performing it to start collecting data.
Why the delay?
On the.
On moving everybody?
The logistics is just the hard part, you know. When we first started this thing, the, the, the best advice we got is this is an eight to ten-year process. You know, it's, it's a big, it's a big step. And so we're trying to knock that thing, this out in a year and a half, two years. But there's just a lot of behind the scenes policies, procedures, the logistics of everything, so. The asset management program's going faster than we are. She's too fast, so. Any other questions? Okay. Next, we want to talk about tool requirements. Right now, we have a little discrepancy between departments. So some of the departments purchase tools for their mechanics and some departments require their own mechanics to provide their own tools. The industry standard is pretty much the mechanics supply their own tools. That's the direction that we'd like to go with this. The way we look at it is if a mechanic is supplying his own tools and paying and buying his own tools, but you have another mechanic that's receiving their tools through the department, it creates a little bit of pay and equity there. And we'll discuss a little bit about the tool allowances. The tool allowance is pretty small and that's something we want to talk about. But the street department, sanitation department, this mechanics supply their own tools. Water department and parks supply tools for their departments. So that's a transition that we're going to have to make. And so we've, we've generated a list, a minimum requirement tool list that we're going to require each technician to have come October first to work for the Fleet Department. It's a pretty small list. Most technicians have their own tools at home. It will be a little bit of a burden. We understand that. We had to draw a line somewhere.
So do they, some of them get an allowance for their tools?
That is correct.
And so all of them, all of them will go onto an allowance basis?
Correct.
Do you think that are, there's a difference in a startup allowance and a maintaining allowance? But are we doing just the maintaining allowance?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're proposing and if we want to go ahead and we can just jump ahead. That's all right. So we researched back as far as we can and the tool allowance is three hundred dollars per technician. And the farthest back we could find was nineteen ninety-seven. It hasn't changed since then. Three hundred dollars for a tool nowadays doesn't buy you really anything, you know. So we're asking right now to increase that tool allowance for those mechanics. And this is something that we feel is more of a maintenance, you know, not a, not a upfront cost. I mean, some of these mechanics have ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of tools, so we understand that that's an investment that they have to make for their trade.
So in essence, for some of our mechanics, we're just renting what they already have.
Yeah. So what we're proposing is fifty dollars per pay period. It's a, it's a big jump. That's thirteen hundred dollars per year, per technician. But I think that's a good start in the direction of getting this tool allowance where it needs to be. Three hundred dollars right now is just not something that's feasible for a, for a full-time mechanic. You know, you can go to some of the box stores and buy certain things, but for someone that's using those every day, that's a pretty small tool allowance, yeah. And so we're proposing fifty dollars per pay period, per technician, for an annual cost for all ten technicians of thirteen thousand dollars a year.
Are there going to be any tools that will be maintained by the shop because they're unique and they're very expensive?
Yes.
Everybody should be buying one?
Correct. That's a good point. For instance, an air conditioning machine that you charge air conditioning with, that would be something that the Fleet Department would purchase. You know, some of the larger tools, the diagnostic tools, that would be, that would be things that the Fleet Department would, would purchase and maintain. Just a quick overview of the positions we've hired so far. We've hired our Fleet Manager. We've hired our Fleet Materials Coordinator, which is the procurement person. We're looking at hiring a new Service Rider in October. I think we talked about, you guys talked about that a little bit last week in the budget meetings.
Describe what that is, right?
So the Service Rider is. So the service rider is, is the, the main contact for the department. So when a department calls and says, "My car's got a clunk," he's the guy that tries to diagnose what the clunk is over the phone. Gives them an idea of what they think that clunk's going to take to fix and then schedule it to get it in for the technicians. And then we're going to have two shift foremans and eight technicians. Um, the shift foremans are something that we're going to, we're going to talk about a little bit moving forward. Right now, we have a city in the departments that are affected, we have two lead mechanics. Um, as we move into the new fleet department, we're going to shift those two shift foremen.
Are they going to be mechanics at the same time?
They will. They'll be working.
So we'll get a tool allowance?
Yep. Okay, so we talked a little bit about before, parks, sanitation, street, water, as well as city hall will be involved. Police, we're looking at union negotiations starting here in 2020 and fires in 2021. So we're just kind of on standby on those ones and just see how that, that works out. Um, there's three options that we're, we want to propose to you today. It's difficult to take a bunch of people from other departments and try and unify them into one department, so we just need some clarification on how we do that moving forward. So the first option we have is that we just transfer all the mechanics over, as is. We have two lead mechanics in two different departments in the city that will be affected. Um, this option one means that those two lead mechanics come over, they get made into the shift foremans, and the remaining eight mechanics stay as eight mechanics. So this one's just kind of a lateral shift over. Doesn't change anybody's pay, doesn't change anybody's steps. Um, all it is, is the lead mechanic now reports to the fleet department. And I'll try my best to not make these confusing Heather's here if we need her to help me, but because it gets confusing. Option two is where we reclassify the lead mechanics into shift mechanics. So option two and option three are pretty close to each other. What it boils down to is, um, everybody, when they come to fleet, we interview for new shift foremans. Even if you were a lead before, you're going to have to apply for the shift foreman. All 10 technicians will be eligible for that. If the two existing lead positions get the shift foreman position, then they stay right where they are, the other eight stay right where they are. If two other mechanics happen to do better in the interview and they receive the shift foreman position, basically the two leads would be demoted. That's probably not the right word, but reclassified, there you go. So the two new shift foremans would receive the pay increase. The reclassified leads would now become mechanics, but their wage would stay the same as it was when they were the lead. And then option three is the same thing of that, other than they will be demoted instead of reclassified. So if the shift, if the two lead mechanics do not get the position and so, and two other technicians do, then those two lead positions would be demoted to mechanics. Does that make sense? So we've got some examples here of what, what we got. If you want to go back one, please. Option two, you can see that the lead mechanic currently at this, if he goes to a shift foreman, he would go to 2498. If he was made into a mechanic or a technician, he would go to 2403, but he would be higher on that pay scale. He would be slotted in higher steps in that pay scale. As opposed to option three, where if the lead mechanic stays, he gets the pay that he's got. If he's shipped, moved to a shift foreman, he would get a slight bump. And then if he's moved to a technician, it would be a pay cut.
Does that example apply to both the current leads?
We just used kind of a round number. We didn't use the actual leads' wages.
No.
Yeah. Just to kind of give you a ballpark, but that's probably a pretty accurate assessment. So kind of a, kind of a tough...
At what point are you going to call for us to make these kinds of decisions?
We were either going to do it at the end or we can, you can do it as they come up. That's entirely up to you.
Were you going to ask for, are you asking for today or are you asking?
Yeah, that's what I was...
I think you were asking for today.
Well, I understand that if you guys want to discuss it at a different time, that's fine. Um, I think finance and HRs just, they have dominos that were waiting, they're waiting on us for this.
I frankly would prefer to have some additional professional counsel on this so that we don't create any undue problems.
Fair enough.
Well, Rick, I know can solve it, but...
Are you quick picking on me?
I frankly could not make that decision at this moment.
Okay, fair enough.
Counsel from whom, from who cares?
Probably from Heather.
Okay.
Well, if, if we're going to make the, the decision today...
I'd rather hear you clarify now, too. I think it'll help.
I tried.
No, you did a pretty good job, man. I think the lunch is...
He didn't try that hard. I saw how fast he was jumping out of that.
Heather Buchanan, human resources director.
What are the implications of this decision-making from your perspective as our professional guider?
Um, about the three options?
Yes.
Um, so to just simply move someone over is usually the easiest thing. It doesn't guarantee you have the right person in the foreman job, though. There's going to be a slight difference between what a lead does and a foreman does, especially where they'll be working on a Saturday with no other administration in the building. So it's very important that the foremen are the appropriate people for the jobs, not necessarily because they hold a lead position now. If you, option two, if you reclassify them, you cause a little bit of issue with pay because you now have someone that's doing the same job as the person next to them, maybe with not as much seniority and they're making much more money. The problem with demoting is you take someone to a step three, whereas if they'd have been slotted as a mechanic originally, they might be at a higher step. If we decided to demote, which would be option three, and I think is their recommendation, we could look at doing a one-time exception to slot them where they would have been if they were a mechanic when the hybrid pay plan was introduced. Demoting's probably the easiest to avoid compression, but it could cause an impact on where they slot compared to coworkers who've been there the same amount of time. Make it much clearer for you there.
Exactly, looks ugly.
Do, do we stand the possibility of losing people because of this decision?
Um, I think just the move to fleet itself is causing some heartache among the mechanics. I haven't personally spoken to them. This is not something that's been vetted through department heads or mechanics. This is the first time they're seeing it right now. I think if you take a lead mechanic and they are not successful at becoming a foreman, you could see someone leave.
What are the possibilities in terms of hiring people to meet the qualifications of what we want in this new...
Recruiting mechanics is always tough. There's always an open market value on those. That's one of the reasons we are going with a more aggressive tool allowance.
Be nearly impossible, Jim. Every automobile leadership in this community is one or two mechanics short.
So if we choose option two, we empower the city to make what we would believe is the best selection for the, not necessarily taking anyone out. I mean, if we do option one, we stay status quo pretty much. If we do option three, we actually stand a chance of demoting somebody.
Correct.
I, I feel with option two's probably the best option, just myself.
I'm still concerned about the, the point that was brought up with, if you do that, then you've got two people potentially doing the same job and one's getting paid a lot higher and that could create more issues, it seems like to me. So I feel comfortable moving forward with their recommended option, number three.
And what about option one? That's an option two. I mean, there, I may not make any at the current levels. I mean, what do you guys recommend on that?
When we first started discussing this a while back, where it's a brand-new department starting off from scratch, we just wanted to make this as best we could from the beginning. And if the two lead mechanics or the two shift foremans through the interview process is great, we just don't know. And so we just basically, where we're starting from scratch, we figured we should start from scratch, so.
See, I would, I would still contend that option two's better because I think if you want to try to keep people level, it's better to have somebody that's still getting paid what they were or anything at the moment, which option three may end up with two demotions, which could really create a...
So is also someone being paid for a job they're no longer doing?
Yeah. I guess I'd go three.
I think that, I think it makes sense, I mean, to do that and give everybody that opportunity and we're starting scratch, which...
Let's start it right. Mr. Mayor, I move we, that we choose option three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Is there any further discussion? Ruth, could you please call the roll?
So I thought we'd be talking about the new parts store.
We took the hardest thing first, Ruth.
Not only that, another step is changing, the grade is changing.
First by Johnston.
The motion by Johnston, second by Adamson.
Thank you. Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
Gina?
Yes.
Laura?
What did she say? She said, "No."
It was very decisive there.
Can I swat?
I'm not feeling...
That's all right by me.
What?
Uh, yes, in staff's recommendation, yes, I, I think that's the proper thing to do.
Can I ask a question about this option three? Under proposed item, the second paragraph, what are we doing, one or two? We demoting them or hiring them a shift foreman? What are we doing here?
If they're successful in the interview as the shift foreman, they wouldn't be demoted. If they don't, aren't selected for the shift foreman position, they would then be demoted.
That, that emotion wouldn't occur if they passed the interview ahead of that?
That's correct.
I think the opportunity, they're already the leads anyway right now. The opportunity for them is there, they'll apply, I would assume they will apply for that position again. And it seems like they would have to leg up on...
Do we have good people in those positions now?
The city as a whole is just great. I mean, we have great employees, so. They're not under my, under my department, so I, I don't know. Actually, one of them is, but I just started with that, so.
So there's potential that we would not have...
There's a potential that nothing will happen to them, there's a potential it's not. But with that being said, in the interest of time, um, we've, let's move forward.
Okay. Do we want to talk about the tool allowance and get that out of the way real quick?
The what?
Tool allowance.
I'd move we adopt the proposal.
Second.
Which one?
The tool allowance.
One.
One or two?
Probably.
Thirty or fifty.
We skipped the second option because we like the first one better.
I think option one's best.
Option one, yes.
I second...
So you already have a second on this? I, I just want to see this because the way you guys are acting, I'm going to end up voting on it.
Tell you what.
I want to take a, take a look at this thing.
Option one is $50 per pay period for $1,300. Option two is $30 per pay period for $780 per technician.
So based on what it is right now, 300, even option two is still more than double. So option one is like quite a bit, just a thousand. Are you looking for it still?
I'm still looking for it, thank you.
So right now it's 300. Option two is 780. Option one is the one we want for 300.
Okay, this is what they were going to...
$780 doesn't even buy a toolbox.
Well, some mechanics have their tools now and some don't, if I understand right. One department's bought all the equipment, the other department hasn't. So is this for every employee?
Yeah, that's an ongoing, ongoing tool allowance to take care of throughout the year when they break their tool and that money goes. It's like a clothing allowance.
Are we, are, is the consideration, is there any consideration for the people that already own their tools?
This was just a maintenance, basically a maintenance fee for their tools for the year.
So I got one question. Could we just give the tools we, and they go with the person?
That's something the departments have purchased, so it'd have to be with the departments. I think we get into that same boat where you might have one mechanic spend 50 or $15,000 on his tools and then another guy next to him that got his tools for free.
Additionally, you're going from an enterprise fund to a non-enterprise fund.
But we're not going to have any use for those tools, right?
The departments will still need tools within the departments.
There's mud flaps and tail lights and stuff that need change.
You need to...
So since we're... Oh, sorry.
So...
Well, I'm just asking, since we're phasing into this and, and it's a big change from what it has been in some of the other departments, what would be the, would it be terrible if we did option two and we could reevaluate next year and bump it if we need to? What would be the reason for going all the way?
It's just, I, in our opinion, doing the research, 1,300 is still pretty low for what most people are getting.
Okay.
So we just, like you said, when we're starting from scratch, we will, we wanted to get a, you know, a pretty fair tool allowance. And I think option one's pretty fair. But it is, it is a big step, I think.
What is, what is the plan that you have for the ones that don't have tools now because the city's purchased all of the tools? Now they don't have tools because of moving, moving into this, but some of them do have tools. What's your plan?
And that's where we talked about the minimum tool requirement. So mechanics are going to have to have a minimum amount of tools to start on October 1st.
Snap-on has paid by the, by the stop plan.
It's tough, though.
Okay, I mean, okay.
I understand and, and, you know, it's like Councilman Chetum said, we go fast. There's a lot of these tough decisions that need made, so we understand that it's, it's difficult.
So they'll have to have their, oh, you got toolbox on there.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion by Chetum and a second by Johnston for option one, and that is the recommended option.
Yes.
Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Gina?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
We had a slow no and a slow yes on both of them.
Okay, we'll, we'll move quick. We'll get into the NAPA parts store. This is something we just need some direction today, if this is something we want to move forward on. This is something that will be, will be bid as well as have a contract, so you'll see this again if this is the direction we want to go. Basically, what it boils down to is nationwide parts stores will actually construct, maintain, staff a parts store in your facility for a certain fee. The biggest one, and the one we've got the most response from, we've reached out to many of these, is NAPA through, it's called an IBS system. And what it basically does is NAPA, IBS fronts the inventory, they front the person to man the inventory, so we basically get, it's about $200,000 worth of inventory upfront. They supply a parts man. Their parts man has a computer program that integrates with our asset management program. So as technicians need parts, they enter it in their work order, it automatically goes to the parts store that's in the facility and the parts are there, they're, are there then when the mechanic goes to pick them up. They, they guarantee an 85% on, on-hand inventory. They do an amazing job of inventory management. Some of the, the problems we have around the city is we've bought 10 oil filters for a certain piece of equipment because it was a good deal, but we got rid of that equipment. Now we got eight sitting on the shelf collecting dust. This is, this is a better way, in our opinion, of how to manage this, this parts program. The benefit of it is, is they supply the parts guy, the parts person in our facility, he's, that person is paid by NAPA, but they're under our purview, under our control. They, like I said, they supply the upfront inventory and then we can, we can decide whichever parts brand we want. We're not limited to the NAPA brand. So mechanics, when they have their own, their own opinions on what... So mechanics, when they have their own, their own opinions on what parts they would like. It does come with a cost, and what it is, is NAPA puts a ten percent markup on their part. So they, they sell parts to us at WD, which is like a warehouse price, which is about thirty-five percent cheaper than what you can buy it if you walk in off the street. So they're able to buy these parts at a low cost because of their, the complexity and the, and the size of their, of their company. And then we purchase them at this lower price, but then they put their ten percent markup to cover the cost of the employee, the cost of the inventory. So we've, we've got an example from the IBS program of a city that's similar to us, and that's about what they're paying per month as well as per year. And so this, these costs would be put on top of the cost of the parts to each department. So let's say the street department comes in to put new brakes on their truck. The mechanic starts his work order. He gets the parts to repair that truck. When we get them from NAPA, if that's the, the direction we go, the brake drum would be two hundred dollars that we purchased from NAPA. It would be, they would bill us two hundred and ten dollars to cover their overhead. This is just another, another way we're looking of how to streamline things and to make it more efficient.
It's cheaper for us.
So we're getting rid of this position estimated to be a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Correct.
And we're paying a ten percent markup, but we've got somebody that will shop for us and perhaps save us money on that ten percent markup. That means we're going to spend, in my estimation, if they got to cover just that, a hundred and fourteen, we're going to spend a million, one hundred thousand or more in parts.
Yeah. So...
Is this a savings, cost savings?
Absolutely.
We add out the parts?
Basically, we're leveraging NAPA's buying power. They're a worldwide company. So we're getting parts at a lower price. We're getting a system that integrates with our asset program, so there's not duplication of, of work orders and hand copies. The biggest thing it's going to do is, as the production aspect of it, mechanics spend a lot of time on the phone chasing parts. They spend a lot of time reconciling their P card at the end of the month because, you know, they purchase parts themselves. It's going to free up mechanics to do what they're good at and not get them caught up in chasing parts all over town.
And do we get savings from not having parts we don't need anymore?
Absolutely.
Is that major or minor?
That's a great point. So we've talked to them about purchasing our old inventory, some of our old inventory. They're, they are willing on some of it. If some of it's too outdated, of course, it's of no use to them. But they'll purchase our inventory back and then use it at their other locations. But as far as the inventory on the shelves, the city pays nothing for that. We just pay as it's being used.
And, and we won't have employees chasing parts to Salt Lake. They will do that for us.
Yeah, they have a truck running every day, so, yeah, they've, we've discussed that with them.
This would prevent a truck being down for a week waiting for a part two, it sounds like, because if they have somebody running back and forth, we're...
Absolutely. It just gets into those economies of scales and the leverage, buying power, you know, it's...
Is this an action?
There's a lot of markup in parts.
Councilman Bray? I would move that we do the auto, uh, NAPA Auto Parts Fleet Store.
Second.
We have a motion by Ray and a second by Adamson.
If the NAPA person is chasing parts, what's our fleet materials coordinator doing?
So our fleet material coordinator is doing the large purchasing, like vehicle acquisition, material purchasing. That's a good point, though.
Okay, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we're going to move to agenda item number ele, are you done with that fleet?
Yes, sir.
We're going to move to agenda item eleven, senior sanitation operations hiring request sanitation department. Tom Kirkman, deputy public works director, is seeking council's approval to hire two senior sanitation operators. These positions were identified in the two thousand fourteen utility rate study and were identified in, to be hired in two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen. Information regarding the justification and funding for the positions will be presented.
Thank you, Tom Kirkman, deputy public works director, and I'm joined by Brian Waller, operation supervisor, and Theresa Cottrell, fleet manager. He's going to keep me out of trouble if such is necessary.
I guarantee that.
There's no guarantee.
I don't, I never sign up for that.
First off, I just wanted to, to start off by saying I'm very sympathetic to the addition of head count. I, I understand that that's difficult, and, and we toiled on this a lot, and we didn't take this lightly because we understand that it's a difficult decision. But we're, we're kind of at a point, we're at a fork in the road right now with sanitation, of where we're, we're starting to lose level of service. We haven't lost level of service, but we're at the point where our staffing levels are getting so low that we're, we're running into a lot of issues. And that's why we're here today, to just discuss those with you and see what direction that we can go. So we'll start off by just talking about the previous rate study that was done in two thousand fourteen. It was implemented in fifteen. They run through nineteen. City council approved that in two thousand fourteen. The subsequent, subsequent years, there was a three point eight and a three point oh increase, and those increases were taken each year to the rate study, to increase those rates. During this five-year rate study time, there was three positions through sanitation that needed to be filled, filled during that period. One of them was a third of a utility billing person, so it was basically a third of that position, as well as two senior operators for the sanitation department. Senior operators are the ones that run the curbside service as well as the roll-offs. They're the more expert, the highest class of the operators down there. For whatever reason, those personnel did not get hired in sixteen and eighteen. I know it was a lean, lean times for the city, which I understand. The big thing was is the rate increases were taken, and so we've taken in that revenue without expending it on those employees. And it's still one of the reasons why we've seen sanitation's reserves climb and have been climbing the past few years. So just a few quick statistics, I'll make it really quick. As you can see, employees have stayed static for quite a while. They've seen large increases across the board. I won't go through all of them, but you can see like yard waste is up a hundred and thirty-six percent. I just got to commend the, the guys at sanitation, what they're, what they're accomplishing down there because they're, they're working, they're working right now. So on top of that, we've started a new recycling program. We're getting to the point with yard waste, that yard waste is getting so popular that due to the staffing levels, we have one operator collecting probably more yard waste than he should. So we're getting to a point where the trucks are almost overloaded, and we're asking him to drive a truck that's overloaded because he's got to take in so much and run the landfill back and forth. So that's one of the, one of the issues that we've seen with some of the staffing issues. We've also seen where we've had to cut back a little bit on the partners and pride containers because we just don't have the manpower to do those. We're still doing as best we can to get those out. Those are the free containers we give out to, to the citizens, but there was a point where we were turning away paying customers to do that, and so we had to, we had to make that decision. The roll-off division is going nuts. They'll start off in the morning with three trucks running, pulling three to five containers a day, and by, by lunch, they're up to six. Brian's in one, Dave and Casey, the two lead operators, get in one, and they've just done admirable of what they can do. But we're just getting to a point where it's, it's getting to be a little too much. Sorry, am I going too fast? I didn't want to...
You're perfect.
So some of the biggest issues we're seeing right now is, of course, maintenance workers are now out pulling containers as well as supervisors. So they're, they're working out of their, out of their class. But we're also seeing, is we're seeing some of the junior employees pulling the slack on some of the senior positions that they really haven't been trained that well on. And unfortunately, there's, just hasn't been a lot of time because they've been pretty short-staffed. Our overtime rates are up. However, it's not as simple as an overtime problem, you know? If we could run two shifts and just have a little more overtime and run longer days, we're, we're limited on the landfill. It's only open a certain amount of hours, so we only have a certain amount of hours to get as much stuff up there as we can. And then the other big thing that we're seeing is we're starting to overload trucks. We've added routes on Thursdays and Fridays. We're just growing, we're growing, and it's hit the department pretty hard, and so that's why we're here today.
Is this anticipation of growth in our community, do we need to be looking beyond where we are right now?
Absolutely. You know, I think that's something that we always want to keep our eyes focused on, and, you know, we're in the middle of doing the, the current rate study moving forward, and, you know, no one's got a good crystal ball, but I think everybody's trying to, to do as best they can to plan for that.
Equipment-wise, are we satisfactory with adding these two to the...
That's a great question, and we, and we've talked about that. So part of, as the rates were, were raised throughout the years, the three percent were taken, the equipment end stayed pretty good. They were purchasing the equipment as they needed. It's just unfortunate that right now we don't have enough operators to run the amount of vehicles that we have. So basically, what we're asking is to hire these two senior positions. We would like to just use the current revenue stream that's coming in based on the rate increases that have happened over the last period of the rate study. And then those two positions would just be factored in moving forward from there. So right now, it's a cost in FY nineteen of about sixty-eight thousand dollars because we're, we're into this year already. And then during budget season, we can, as we have the budget meetings, we can talk more about those moving forward.
Well, council, this is really truly before you because it's two new positions. They were approved in the, in the past years, but they haven't, hadn't hired them. They were focused, focused on making sure that we kept costs in line and everything like that. And so because it just, it really needed to come in front of you before, I just approved it to make sure that you knew what we were doing with those. But it, it, this makes a lot of sense to me. It shows that the sanitation department and the city as a general, we've really truly been holding the line and been really tight on employees, and it's, it's catching up to us, and this is just reasonable stuff in my mind. I've got a great job. There were three employees mentioned at the outset, and one of them was a billing department employee. Is there any anticipation that if we increase the productivity, that we need that billing?
And that actual, that position was filled.
Oh, it was?
The billing position was filled.
Okay.
Back in fifteen, I think.
So they just have to work harder. Okay.
And I, like I said before, I just want to commend our sanitation department because they just get in, they get it done, and it's a very time-sensitive job. We just don't want anybody to get hurt. We're seeing, we're seeing our workers' comp claims are going up. You know, we're, we're in a hurry, we're, we're trying to shove in, you know, ten hours of work in an eight-hour day, so...
I spent a day riding around in one of Brian's trucks last fall. I was amazed how much they get done and how fast they work. It just, it blew me away. It was a good day.
They do a lot of work, there's no question. Adamson?
Um, yes, I was going to say that I'm in favor of this, so I move that we approve this request.
Second.
Man, Linda, you got to speed up. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item twelve, two twenty-four oh five Garrett Way building maintenance plan. Tom Kirkman, duty public, deputy public works director, will present a maintenance plan to this council for janitorial services, grounds, keeping services, and building maintenance at the street and sanitation fleet facility located at twenty-four oh five Garrett Way.
Hello, Mayor, Council.
We can't get rid of you, can we?
Public Works Director, I'm joined also by Theresa Cottrell, fleet manager. Again, we'll make this quick. This is basically an efficiency that we're, we're, we're looking at, and we wanted to bring it before you guys and see what kind of direction that you see moving forward. So currently, right now, the street department, the sanitation department are in the process of moving to the new facility. We got our certificate of occupancy last week, or earlier this week, so we've been moving people in. I can't say enough about the street and sanitation department. You know, we've been cramming two departments together, you know, into one location and starting a third one, and it's been hectic, and everybody's just put their heads down and went to work, and it's, it's just been great. So moving forward, we're looking at how we want to maintain this building. We've got a couple options for you moving forward that we just want to get your opinion on. So currently, right now, the street, the street department hires an outside vendor to do all janitorial work, and the sanitation department utilizes city hall's cleaning crew to maintain and clean their building. There's pros and cons to all of these, all of these options, as you, as you could imagine. So one of the options is we're going to continue to hire an outside vendor to come in and do some of the janitorial work. We're either going to, or we're going to utilize current employees to absorb this duty. We would, or else we're looking to hire a dedicated facility maintenance worker, or a mixture of any of these options. Cost plays a big part, and also the scope of work plays a big part. The difference between just a janitor and someone that's a facility maintenance worker that's also taking care of the grounds work, the, you know, keeping the weeds down along the fence lines, changing the light bulbs and, and things of that nature. So we went out for quotes on the new bill, on the new facility. We got three vendors that came in, and we've got the, the cost for you right there. This does not include any groundskeeping, any snow and ice, any repair work that needs done, no record keeping. Some of the outside vendors have been underwhelming. They, they haven't really done a great job. We've had issues with security where doors get left unlocked at night, lights are left on, things like that. We have had good luck, but we've also had bad luck as well trying to keep facilities clean. So option two is to get a current employee to kind of cover this load. We put kind of our lowest and our highest paid employees up there of, of what that looks like. And that level of service is going to be kind of difficult because in the middle of a snowstorm, it's sweep the floor, go get in the plow truck, they usually go get in the plow truck, you know, it's, or clean the bathrooms, go get in the plow truck. So there is a little bit of level of service that's compromised by just having our current employees absorb that, that duty as well. Option three is to hire a facility worker, and this person would, would just be responsible for groundskeeping and maintenance on that facility. Last year, the, the street department increased their, their janitorial budget. We raised that up, we almost doubled, or we over, we went over double on that. Unfortunately, sanitation didn't raise theirs up as well. So moving to this cleaning, whichever direction we go, we're going to be paying a little bit more money than what we were paying at our previous location, as you can imagine, because the square footage is higher. But right now, we're currently sitting at a point where kind of all three of these options are sixes and nines right now, as far as, as cost, based on scope of work as well as level of service. Does that make sense? I'm trying to hurry but not go too fast.
Is it possible for one person to assume the responsibility of all this?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a full-time job. What we thought about that is if that person's on vacation or sick, then that's when we call for another, you know, one of the operators or one of the, the people that works for street sanitation or fleet to cover for that, that week.
How much of the building are they going to be responsible for?
So we've got three different options. We've got the option of where, and that was back on that graph, of where they just clean the administrative part, or they can clean the whole shop. That's just another efficiency thing. At the end of the day, most mechanics clean their bays, they sweep them out. We'd rather have a lower-paid person doing that after hours when they're done. But to clean the whole shop, it's, you're getting to be pretty high costs, so... The vendor and the, the vendor two is the one we currently use right now at the street department.
And we just approved thirteen thousand dollars in new tools every year.
I know, I know.
Plus parts.
I understand.
Might want to do it in-house.
Yeah, okay. And that's why we're here. So like we were saying, this was just the level of efficiency that we wanted to bring in front of you and, and decide whether or not this is a direction we wanted to go in.
Would they, would the duty also, because I think that, I don't know what you call it, de-watering facility? You know, where you wash vehicles and contain pollution, would that be something they would maintain as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So they would be responsible for the whole site? For the whole site, whatever needs to be dealt with that is a maintenance issue?
Correct. If it snows in the morning, that person goes out and plows the parking lot so all the sanitation trucks can get out. You know, currently, right now, when that happens, one of the sanitation guys plows currently, so we are, we are making do. It's just another level of, of efficiency that we... It's just another level of efficiency that we conceive can happen, and that's what we wanted to bring in front of you.
Want to talk about option two?
No, I have a question.
We have a question, real quick.
So on your option two, where you've got the highest hourly and the lowest hourly, and then again, if you go to the visual comparison chart that you have, that is just their hourly rate. That doesn't include benefits, right?
Correct.
So the cost is actually more.
More, yeah.
So then what, can we adjust on our visual comparison then to account for that? Because that's a real cost to the city when we talk about insurance and other benefits that are paid out. So then maybe the vendor starts looking?
Yeah.
Better? I don't know, but it, the graph isn't quite representative of that, the cost. How would we? I don't know how to, without just, without just thought where that would go.
I was actually talking, option three, I think.
But still.
Well, option three is hiring someone new. You were saying, I thought you said absorb it.
No, I'm saying, now, I need to have, for the purpose of discussion, some of this would come from enterprise fund.
Correct.
And some of this would come from, so that could be in the rate study, and the other part would come from tax.
It's more than that.
So what we're talking is, what was that number, 67,000, 68,000, 64,000?
Probably.
Three? We just have an expert join the table.
Take out.
I'm at Samson Compensation Specialist. I ran a cost calculator for this position. For the remainder of FY19, the hourly cost for this position will be about $16,435, and the benefits will be $16,000, oh, sorry, $19,967, for a total of $36,559. And the full fiscal year '20 cost would be $66,290, $29,000 of what your benefit costs.
So really, that graph goes clear up over $60,000, and we're talking about an annual cost.
Yeah, it goes to $66,000.
Yeah, and so would the current employee one as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed how we wanted to portray that.
I would love to see someone in there that took pride. I mean, we're so excited about this new program, this new facility, that I'd like to see somebody in there that bought in and stayed a long time and made this really their pride and joy.
And we understand it's difficult.
So where would you get the current employee from?
So the wage would, it would be a new hire, and the wage would come half from sanitation and half from Street. And then once Fleet's up and running, I think that we were talking at first, Fleet was just going to kind of stay in limbo for a bit till we get it up and going. So half of the cost of this employee would come from Street, and the other half from sanitation.
Okay, so it's, so it'd be split still?
Yeah.
I, I really think, the vendors don't, didn't you say they don't have snow removal?
No, the departments do have snow removal.
So, so all the maintenance would fall on one person except for when they're on vacation?
Correct. I think that puts some responsibility on each of the areas to help keep their territory properly maintained and cleaned, but I, I like hiring a facility maintenance worker.
I'm talking about just one graph here. But this option two.
How much equipment are you going to take in addition to the person?
Option three was to have the, it would actually be higher cost.
And we're hoping not a horrible amount. The big part's going to be like a big floor scrubber or something. It's a large facility.
Yeah.
But I think between the two departments, that, old Street Sanitation, we provide the cleaning supplies to the vendors right now.
So would the maintenance person, I'm just asking, would they be responsible? Because you probably have some catch basins for oil or hazardous waste of some kind.
Absolutely.
They'd be responsible for all that maintenance part, too?
Yeah. Yeah, we're looking, we kind of did a breakdown, we got that back. It would be cleaning, electrical plumbing, any construction or carpentry that needs done, painting, welding, groundskeeping, snow and ice control, landscaping, mowing, tree trimming, fertilizer, fertilizing, irrigation, pest and weed control. So that's where the big difference between the vendor comes in, is the amount and the scope that we're looking at, you know? The vendors just basically are mopping the floors and dumping the garbage, whereas this person, the scope we're looking at is an actual full maintenance office.
You're looking at compliance in every area so that it frees other working people to do their specific job.
So a question I have, just as I look at the facility maintenance worker being up at $66,000 and potentially vendor one is down at $20,000, I can appreciate that a dedicated worker would be a lot better, but are they more than three times better than a vendor?
I think so, because that facility will stay in better shape.
I hear multiple vendors.
You know, when you look at that list of responsibilities.
Right.
Some guy coming in off the street's not going to fix something that's broken, and this guy would.
Would the duties of both those people be the same? Would a vendor only take care of?
The vendor just vacuum, mops the floor and dumps the garbage. So that's where the big difference is, is the scope.
This is more in-depth and longer-term.
So if we were wanting to just go total vendor to do everything, we would probably hire one of the cleaning companies, and then we'd have somebody mowing the grass, and we'd have a contractor to plow the, you know, parking lot. And so we're just trying to get that all into one body.
I do feel the mechanics ought to be responsible for their area, though.
Yeah.
That's the only way you keep toolboxes clean and tools clean, and make them responsible for their work area.
Fair enough. So.
I agree with that. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve of the option three.
Second.
So we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Menon. Any other discussion?
So we're voting for the budget impact of $33,000. And the fee impact of whatever they pay.
And for instance, the Street Department, we budget about $20,000 for our facility, so.
Your budget, yes. Okay, that you're right.
What's sanitation currently?
Um, I think they're at about $7,000 or $8,000.
So we're going to double that expense.
And we were planning on doubling that anyway, it just got lost in the, in the mix last budget season.
Or when, if and when Police moves over, that would be another piece that we could figure into sharing into that cost.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, seeing no other discussion, we have a motion by Johnston and a second by Menon. Ruth, could you please call the rule?
For option number three.
Option number three, yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Menon?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry to.
Are you done now?
I voted yes, just to get rid of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item number 13, Water Facility Plan Amendment. Update and request for council direction. City staff and representatives of engineering consultant Murray Smith will provide a summary of a draft Water Facility Plan Amendment. This plan provides a detailed analysis and recommendations pertaining to water infrastructure planning for the development of north of Chubbuck Road. Council may also wish to confirm related to future water infrastructure projects.
So you can stand up and do a skit like the FFA did.
We actually appreciate it, that. If you'd line up over here and do it, that'd be great.
Role-play the whole event. We can just do, and use this laser pointer. It is working. Thank you, Mayor Council. I am Skylar Allen. I'm the senior engineer for the public utilities of the city of Pocatello. I'm joined by Ladon Harris and David Stengel of Murray Smith, the consultant who worked with us on this particular project, and Justin Armstrong, the water superintendent. The presentation we have for you today is to provide an update to the council on the amendment to the Water Facility Plan for the city of Pocatello. In 2018, excuse me, 2016, a study of the water facilities of the city of Pocatello was completed by Murray Smith, which provided an outline of our 20-year outlook for the necessary capital improvements within the water system. That particular plan did not include, as part of the planning area, the northeast area development, sometimes referred to as North Gate Development. And that area was brought up as needing to be addressed as part of our facility planning in order for work to proceed there, for us to be able to outline to developers what would be necessary as far as the water infrastructure that will be required as part of that development. The city contracted with Murray Smith to complete an amendment to the Water Facility Plan in order to incorporate that additional area. And I'll let David speak first. He's going to cover a little bit of the background of the report, and then as we get into more of the water-specific technical details, Ladon will present a bit of that. Go ahead, David.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and then present. Again, I think everybody's probably aware of this little development you guys have looming to the north and east of the city, and the potential impact that has on a lot of city systems. We were obviously tasked with looking at the water and sewer components here. And so we're going to talk today about kind of what that means, both for both water and sewer, kind of covered in two different or separate sections. We're going to look at how many people that means, how much water and sewer loading that entails, and then what's the impact, both in terms of the infrastructure required and in terms of the development itself, and then to convey that supply or sewage to the treatment plant for the water and sewer system respectively. And then we'll talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan associated with that. So, yeah, I think everybody's familiar, we're talking about this area to the north and east of the city, a pretty sizable portion of geography there, located on the hillside there, which again, has its pluses and minuses. It's a positive thing when you can use gravity to allow sewage to flow downhill towards the treatment plant. It's on the other end of the spectrum, you got to pump water up the hill to serve those customers if you don't have supply located in that, in those areas. So that can be a little bit challenging. We'll talk about the number of different pressure zones and different facilities that are required to serve those areas. We're going to talk about kind of three different timeframes today. The near term is what we're talking about in terms of basically 2020. Again, that could float a little bit, a plus or minus, but very near term, a 2035, which again, is about a 20-year horizon, leveraging some of the projections that were done as part of the facility planning efforts. And then what we're terming as a build-out, which again, no one really knows what the timeframe is there, but it gives us a kind of a point in the distance to understand how many people, how much demand required, how much sewage flow would be ultimately produced, making sure that we size facilities appropriately. We do not want to be putting any infrastructure in that's going to last 100 years and only is sized for 20, and those types of things. So again, making sure that the long-term investments are done in a wise manner. We looked at a number of different opportunities for how we serve these different areas, including potentially serving and leveraging Chubbuck facilities as part of this. And so Ladon will talk about some of those in some more detail. So transitioning over to the northeast area itself, it's set up in a number of different pods. And so one of the things we did with the city staff when we started this was to kind of take that step back and say, okay, if, if there's going to be areas of development over here, are there also other contingent or areas adjacent to these pods that are also going to develop? You know, if that old adage of, if you build it, they'll come. Once you get the road infrastructure, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure in, there will be adjacent development occurs. So again, we want to take a comprehensive look at what could the ultimate development in this area look like. And so what we initially focused on there, you can see in the highlighted yellow are kind of the initial three pods that we're focused on for the development. Again, that's the near term. And then focusing on the kind of the purplish area for the 2035 timeframe, and ultimately the brown area towards build-out. So again, a pretty significant scope of geography there over the full timeframe.
What are the white spaces?
White spaces were areas that we didn't believe were developable due to a number of different, based on ownership, for example, by the state or federal government, or even areas that were potentially too steep to develop on, those types of things.
Nice. Thank you.
It's kind of nice that they came out squared.
Property ownership seems to follow those kind of lines at times. So EDUs, how do we look at this? So again, what we wanted to kind of bring this back to then was understanding it's going to be a mix of different types of development, not just residential, commercial, and industrial, bring this back to an equivalent dwelling unit concept. And so again, each of the different pods, and most of this information was provided by the developers, how much water, or how many people, or how many square feet of industrial or commercial space was going to be developed, put that in terms of equivalent dwelling units. And so you can see here, based on this table, I have one EDU is approximately three people in terms of water use and sewage production. You see Pod 1A, 1B, and the corresponding numbers there. And then ultimately, there's about 19,000 EDUs that'll ultimately be developed based on the current land area and current zoning that's identified for those areas, which could mean as much as 58,000 people, which again, really puts that into contrast or context in terms of the existing city population. It's basically a new city of Pocatello on the hillside ultimately. So again, very significant infrastructure requirements then demanded over that period of time. Initially, in the 20-year timeframe, it's about a 15% to 20% increase of water and sewage loading compared to existing city rates. So again, the developers got some specific plan for what they want to do on, within that area. We took a step back and again identified the big picture, infrastructure required. These are the transmission pipes, these are the storage reservoirs, booster stations, the amount of well capacity required. Then on the collection system side, again, the large conveyance piping and the boosters or the lift stations in particular. Again, the treatment plant facility was not evaluated as part of this. They are planning to do an update to their facility plan this next year. And so again, we'll identify the requirements, longer term, short term. The treatment facility is adequately sized to handle the kind of the near-term growth.
Does, does that anticipate Chubbuck's role in that treatment plant and their growth?
My understanding is it does. I don't know, Skylar, if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so our, our current facility plan, and we could talk about that a little bit more when we get to the sewer portion, but the current facility plan does include looking at the increase in wastewater flows to the plant from the city of Chubbuck and the new plan, which will be coming up in the next couple of years, we'll also look at that as well.
So ultimately, kind of looking at the infrastructure in two different areas, again, breaking that kind of on the existing service area boundary. What's on the property is going to be primarily funded by the developer. What is within the current city infrastructure, and what's required to convey that new flow to and from the development will be primarily city-funded. But again, some of those details are obviously worked out by individuals such as yourself. So, but that's kind of how we approached it. With that, we'll get into details of that.
Sure. So I'll cover kind of the analysis that we did for the water system and some of the results that came out of that analysis. First is kind of what components are we actually looking at when we're saying what is required to provide water to new customers in the new service area, and what's the impact on the existing area and infrastructure? So we look at both your water rights and well supply capacity, how much storage you have in terms of your tank sizing, booster station pumping capacity, pipe size, obviously. If you're conveying more flows, it's going to impact the pipe sizing. And then one of the big drivers is just making sure that you have adequate fire flow everywhere in the system. And that's kind of the primary drivers for what leads to the actual projects that we end up recommending for infrastructure. So David mentioned, and you all are aware, there's quite a bit of topography in this area. So one of the key things that comes into play on the water system area, so one of the key things that comes into play on the water system side is we break things up based on how much pressure the customers can have at their service connection, and so as you go uphill, you have to kind of serve those customers in different ways so that you maintain that consistent pressure band. So those are called pressure zones. We actually have 13 separate pressure zones to serve this area, which is pretty significant, and one of the things I wanted to call out is obviously the pods in the development timeframes don't track with pressure zones. People don't usually use the hydraulics to drive where they develop, so we have to kind of work within those parameters, and what that actually translates into is needing infrastructure everywhere those pressure zones are delineated. So you'll either need to boost the water up through a pump station, or reduce the water down through something like a pressure-reducing valve. So that's kind of an important background to understand just why there's so many facilities when I jump to the next slide. Something to keep in mind, we do have kind of, in the report that you were provided in the amendment, a couple of options that are evaluated throughout this process. Obviously, there's a number of considerations, so first, we wanted to make sure that it actually was consistent and coordinated with the facility plan that was approved for the existing system area back in 2016, and kind of see where some of the projects in there did or didn't, weren't impacted by this new additional area. So when I actually talk about some of the projects in a moment, a lot of those, it's important to keep in mind, are actually, were built into this, but were already recommended as reasons to serve your existing system and the growth that was going to occur in your existing system. The other thing was, you know, looking at different ways that you can serve these areas. So one of the key components that we ended up with is you have a lot of storage at your Highland Tanks facility, but we didn't want to rule out the possibility of serving from some other areas such as the High Country Tank. So we did some analysis there, like which infrastructure makes the most sense to actually utilize.
Who are those two tanks?
Sure, so the Highland's tank is, oops.
The Highland tank is right here.
Okay.
And this is the High Country Tank. This is the highest elevation tank we have in the water system, up on the hill above Satterfield Drive.
But putting that into context, the development goes up significantly higher than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of elevation, so. The other thing was considering, again, one of the components of the facility plan was looking at the Spalding Booster Station, which is one of your current facilities, that is located kind of, yep, there we go, just west off this map on Butte Street, and that facility currently is kind of the sole supply to all of this area in the northeast and the existing service area, and one of the components of the facility plan was actually looking at, you know, the required redundancy for that facility even to serve your existing customers, let alone if the service area expands. So kind of looking at that in conjunction with some new facilities, a new booster station to provide redundancy for that facility. And as was mentioned, one of the components that was looked at on the water side, and we'll mention it again on the sewer side, was what opportunities are there for coordination with the city of Chubbuck, and kind of what would that look like potentially from an infrastructure standpoint, understanding that there's a lot of kind of other coordination and pieces that would have to come into play for that to occur. So this is the result of kind of our ultimate recommendation of a service area concept for this area, and that's a really busy figure. I understand there's a lot going on up there. So what we're showing here is again, kind of all of the infrastructure at a relatively high level, so we're not getting down to like the neighborhood piping, but at a kind of transmission piping level, what would be the piping requirements, what would be the requirements in terms of booster stations and then storage facilities? And ultimately, obviously, to serve that many more people, you're going to need additional well pumping capacity in addition. So this is kind of the full service concept to cover all those areas, and one thing I'll kind of point out here, so the infrastructure that's listed in green is to indicate the near-term piping and infrastructure improvement recommendations. The purple kind of transitions to that 20-year horizon, and then the brown shows if this full area developed at build-out, what would be the infrastructure requirements? And some of the key components to this are the infrastructure that you put in to meet the near-term requirements. A lot of them have kind of two pieces of information here, which is if you were to size it just to serve the near-term development versus if you want to actually size it to meet a larger horizon, like a 20-year or a build-out timeframe. So that's something to definitely keep in mind as projects are kind of moving forward is, you know, obviously, a lot of these, this infrastructure has life cycle costs that are well beyond a 20-year, 30-year, 40-year horizon, so you want to kind of build it with that in mind. What's indicated in the blue dash box again is kind of a mix of what's already in your existing system, and I just want to mention again, some of this infrastructure would be recommended actually to serve this new area, but some of the infrastructure here we did in conjunction with the 26 facility plan, that was infrastructure already needed or recommended to serve your existing system. So that's kind of a zoomed-in version, and kind of the near-term projects that came out of this are largely an additional booster pump, like I mentioned, to be redundant for the Spalding Booster Station that currently is the only source of supply to that northeast area, and with that booster pump to get the water up to the Highland Tanks would be transmission piping, so that's kind of the piping that's illustrated. And again, both the size of the pipe and the size of the facility are going to be contingent on what time horizon you're looking to actually serve and how many people you're actually looking to serve. Another component, and Skylar will speak quite a bit more to this, but is, you know, where's the water actually going to come from in the ground? So looking at well supply options, which is kind of another factor in all of this. So we've just put some placeholders of locations, but as you may or may not be aware, actually locating water that's of high quality and adequate capacity is a little more difficult than just dropping a point on a map, so there's some additional work to be done there.
I think we had a report sometime that we drilled three test wells, none of them were found to be sufficient for various reasons, and it looks like we're going to have to drop down to the guide board.
That's correct, and to speak to that, the booster station and transmission line is an alternative to having a well source in that area, which we're currently exploring a little bit, in a little bit more detail, but that is something that is the alternative to having a well source in that area is to have the well supply in the valley floor and booster pump it up on the bench.
So there's, are we going to try to create like, I forget what, was High Country Tank Plus up there so that we get above the elevation and we pump it and then we can gravity feed? Seems to me like it'd be more efficient to just fill a tank up with one pump.
Sure, so our current need is not for more storage capacity or for capacity at higher elevations, we're adequately served in those respects. The current need, which was addressed in the 2016 facility plan and was the driver for why we were looking for a well supply, is that the Spalding Booster Station is the only way to convey water up into the Highland area.
Okay.
And that feeds to the Highland Tanks, and from the Highland Tanks is pumped up to the High Country Tank. That area represents about 20% of the city of Pocatello water system, and so having a single way to get water to that really limits how our level of security against a problem on either that booster station or the transmission pipeline, so we lack some redundancy there. We need another way to convey water to the Highland Tanks, and that's what this booster C and the transmission line would accomplish, is providing a second way that we can supply water to the Highland area. And in the context of this amendment, we looked at how does the sizing of that booster station change if we're also thinking about future water supply for this area to the northeast of the city of Pocatello's current limits?
So if we, I don't remember how deep we drilled, is there a trade-off between really going down deep up there and maybe hitting an aquifer way down versus all this other infrastructure so you could be redundant from the well up there, or we just ruled out the well?
So our current understanding, which was brought to us by the test well drilling, it seems unlikely that we would improve our quality and get into a different groundwater regime, although that, you know, I wouldn't completely eliminate that as a possibility. Drilling does become more expensive the deeper you go, and particularly as we're exploring, that becomes a challenge to spend money without knowing whether it's going to have a benefit.
Yeah, you never know. I lived in a town where there was a riff, and they had oil on one side and not the other. Somebody decided to drive, drill down another 3,000 feet, and they found they had oil on both sides of town. So, you know, I don't know if water is like oil, but.
There is some similarities between the way that subsurface geology is constructed and the way water and oil move through that. So certainly, it's not something that we can predict, which is why we do a test well, but the indication that we received from our hydrogeologist that consulted with us on that project was that it seems unlikely that we would change much from what we found in our test well drilling. To move on just a little bit to some of what the near-term water improvements that we're looking at right now with the water department, we're looking for additional well supply. That need is still present. We did that exploration in the northeast area, did not find a suitable source or a suitable location for that source, and so we'll continue to explore other options. We have a few ideas in consideration of existing well locations within the valley floor that we can look at, redevelopment of wells that we're, that we've gone away from using in the past for various reasons. We're exploring those, as well as a couple of ideas for other locations we might want to consider doing a test well and see what the likelihood of getting a good production well at those locations would be. We're also, as I mentioned, the booster pump and transmission piping, this is that booster C and transmission line to the Highland Tanks. As you can see, there's a pretty significant cost to that project. A portion of that cost, of course, is what was, would be necessary to satisfy the existing need for redundant supply into the Highland area, and a bit of that is kind of the range that you get there is, reflects a little bit of sizing that up in order to address some of this future demand further to the north. Do you want to cover this one, or should I?
Either way.
I can. This table represents the total capital improvement plan based on those time horizons, along with the capacities that those encompass. So you can see there's several booster stations, tanks, there's a line on there for the pressure regulating valves. We're looking at the build-out 41 pressure regulating valve locations. There's three tanks in there, three booster stations, and about 26 million gallons a day worth of well capacity included in these numbers. There's several miles of large transmission and distribution piping, and again, this represents just the major piping, not the neighborhood-level piping, which would need to be installed. The cost by the timeframe on there, you can see adds up pretty significantly. The near term, which again was those first two pods of the development, represents about 3,500 EDUs in that area, and total water infrastructure estimate there is about $25 million. You can see that rises as we go out further and we add more of that infrastructure, additional booster tanks, additional, excuse me, booster stations and storage tanks, and additional piping as well, giving us an estimate of $63 million at the 2035 horizon and $88 million roughly at the build-out horizon. These are all $2018, so that, of course, will change as time moves forward.
One thing I would just add as well is these costs are kind of to serve the entire timeframe, they're not adding, building on top of each other, so that $87 million would actually subsume the previous timeframes. If you were to go out there and build the entire infrastructure to serve build-out, it would cost $87 million, not 25 plus 63 plus 87, just so that's clear. We wanted to kind of break it out that way, there's still enormous numbers, but we still just wanted to break it out that way, with the idea again, that some of the infrastructure may actually be sized to meet the 2035 requirement, and that would be the cost if you wanted to jump straight to that service level versus doing it kind of incrementally.
Are these costs included in our rate study?
They are not, and the reason for that is generally speaking, this infrastructure represents what would be needed by development to serve the development, and historically, that has been paid for by developers as they construct their development.
So this isn't necessarily city cost, this is a development cost?
Correct.
It changes a lot.
So this, as I, you know, we discussed the booster C and the transmission line, that is included in these numbers, and there is some need for the city of Pocatello to do that project regardless of the development. And so some of the numbers in here would reflect city costs, but the majority of it is to build this development the way they have presented it to us as what they intoned in their master plan, this is what we estimate would be the large infrastructure required for the water system within their development. The purpose of this report is to provide to us as staff some, a framework within which to assess their proposed development and to make sure that the things that they're proposing to do will be serviceable by the water system when we accept it. Then we can provide the direction to a developer to say, okay, this development will be fine in order to serve that development, this is what has to be constructed as part of it in order to provide the sufficient water service to that area.
And the developers would pay for each unit that they are putting into a subdivision, or is this all on the city?
The, as a developer constructs a development, they are responsible for construction of the infrastructure associated with that development.
So the developer pays for this, the city then assumes responsibility for it after we've, the maintenance on it, after we've taken it over and stuff. They've joined the system when, once we take it over, they've joined the system, and then it's our responsibility, once we, once we take it over, but. This cost is really, with the exception of that little portion that you talked about that we're going to need regardless, C I think is what you had it, that portion is going to be the city's responsibility because it really truly is to get a secondary access up to the Highland area.
Correct.
20% of our users.
Correct.
That's significant.
And we've begun a discussion with the developer right now about whether they're interested in participating in increasing the size of that booster and transmission line in order to serve their further down-the-line capacity needs for development. They have not yet responded to that question.
And Councilman Bray, just to answer your question a little more completely, booster C and the transmission piping is currently being considered as we develop our next rate study, but only the portion that is immediate to our needs. So like Skylar says, the increased capacity is kind of a decision for the developer.
So that would be the 2,447,000?
That would, that's for the booster C, and then there's another few million dollars for the transmission line. If you recall the slide previous, we'll go back to that, those numbers there are the city costs associated with that, the estimates at this planning stage for that booster station and the transmission pipeline.
So it's, the total of that's what we need to do to be up to speed right now?
Correct, and we're, you know, 7, 8 million dollars.
And that total is being contemplated in the rate study plan?
Correct.
Perfect. All of the other is just what is going to be the build-out, but that is a development, when development pays for it, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So right now, we've discussed a little bit the test well project, which was done in 2018, which unfortunately was unsuccessful in identifying a good well location in the Highland area. We, subsequent to the completion of that, began an alternative evaluation for the Highland area water supply. That study is nearing completion, and the preliminary recommendation of that evaluation is the booster C and the transmission line to the Highland Tanks. So this shows just a general outline with a couple of alternatives of transmission line location. We also have two locations for the booster station that we're currently considering and evaluating against. we're currently considering and evaluating against each other to determine which would be more viable. Did I talk about the rest of that stuff on the currently happening?
Well, this is just details.
Okay. So also, we had, a couple months ago, we discussed the Highland area pressure improvements, which were completed in 2018, where the water department installed two pressure regulating valve stations, and we modified the pressure zone boundaries in the Highland area. That was a project that was outlined within the facility plan in 2016. It was in the intermediate terms, so the five to 10-year horizon, and that was moved up to be completed in 2018 in order to provide the service pressures needed for the first phase of the Northgate development, the crossings, division one. Also with the Northgate development, right now, they have completed the construction of the Olympus extension, and that includes installation of some water distribution main. And division one of the crossings is in construction right now. We have some additional phases of this development, which are in various stages of plat review and planning review. Essentially, between divisions one through three of the crossings and the district's divisions that have been brought, at least at a preliminary level, to the city staff at this point, that encompasses all of the area that's currently been annexed, which lies to the west of the Olympus extension. So between the Olympus extension and Interstate 15, within the current annexation boundary, is currently under various stages of planning review for development. At this moment, I think it would be wise to mention that when we undertook these amendments, we anticipated that all of this area east of I-15 would ultimately be within the areas, the City of Pocatello area of impact and potentially annexed to the city. And that has somewhat changed as the City of Chubbuck annexed a portion of that property. So a portion of Pod 1A, all of Pod 7 and Pod 9 within this evaluation outline is no longer what we would consider as potential to be incorporated into the City of Pocatello's service area. That represents about 17% of the total build-out EDUs that we talked about before. So right now, that does change a little bit some of the projection of what this looks like at the build-out horizon. Pod 7, which is the section immediately to the north of the Northgate Parkway, is, was in the 2035 projection, and Pod 9 was in the build-out horizon. So it does shift those numbers just, just a bit, 17% overall, as I mentioned. Right now, we are working with the Department of Environmental Quality for approval of this amendment. They've had the chance to review that and provide comment, and we've revised the report to address those comments, and we have not yet received their final review. Because of the timeframe with the rate study going on right now, and the projects that we've discussed with the Highland area alternative and that booster C and the transmission line, we're looking at that in the 2020 fiscal year as being a project that begins within that timeframe. And so we need to begin moving forward on that. And that's part of why we felt it was important to get this in front of you now. As soon as we receive that final approval from DEQ, we will bring the final report to council for approval. We're, as I mentioned, finalizing that Highland water supply alternative evaluation. And again, that is somewhat waiting on final approval from DEQ of the overall concept of this amendment, so that we can move forward with that plan. We will continue to evaluate water supply locations where we may be able to find additional water sources and explore those and evaluate how they make sense. And then, of course, as we get some of those approvals and some of the planning completed, we'll look to begin the design of the project for booster C and that transmission line. Right now, we continue to work with the developer to coordinate their work. We have been utilizing this report in its draft form as somewhat of a framework to provide that guidance. As I mentioned, that is the purpose of this plan, is to provide that framework for staff to use as we evaluate what the developer is proposing, to be able to provide guidance to them on what they will have to construct in order for us to accept that infrastructure. And then, of course, planning and budgeting. We did look as part of this report at some metrics that we can use to look at how this will impact our need for future operations staffing. So we do have a few metrics that we can benchmark against. As this expansion starts to come into the City of Pocatello water system, we do anticipate that there will be a need for additional staff as we see more facilities that would require maintenance. And then, of course, construction of the near-term projects, both on the city side and as we see the developers constructing their portions of this project. Before we move on to sewer, is there any further questions on the water?
Water rights.
Water rights. We, the report does address water rights. Both the facility plan report and this amendment discuss water rights to some extent. Currently, the city has a fairly good ledger of water rights on paper, which can be applied to these, to these potential sources that we're discussing, right? So what that means is that we do have the rights to the water, but having rights to be able to get water and physically being able to get water are not the same question. So we have sufficient water rights for well above the need that we have within the 20-year horizon, even including this additional, additional population under consideration with this amendment. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Do we have any kind of a plan to minimize your sub-water in these developments? Is there any way to, I don't know what you figure an EDU is going to take for water?
I can answer that one. So an EDU for water, again, is about three people, and we assume a water consumption of 185 gallons per person per day. So it's about 550 gallons per day per EDU. That breaks down to about 0.3 gallons per minute per EDU. And then, as we multiply that back out through the number of EDUs, ultimately, we're talking about a lot of water. It's in the order of 15,000 gallons per minute.
I think I saw something in the plan, difference between winter and summer?
There is definitely a difference between winter and summer. So that, you know, 185 gallons per person per day is an average across the year. The winter demand is significantly lower. We see our normal residential utility bills range from 3,000 to 5,000 gallons per month to, the average is 14,000 gallons per month on a utility bill. In the summer, of course, that's higher and varies widely depending on the size of the lot and how much irrigation is being done.
Okay. Any other questions?
I feel better today, being enlightened than I did when I was in the dark yesterday.
Thank you, Councilman. At this point, we're not asking for any specific action from council, other than just general agreeance that the direction we're heading is agreeable to the council.
It looks like we're in good shape.
Got some thumbs up.
Got some thumbs up and nods.
Yes.
Very good. To the next.
Then we'll move to agenda item number 14. If we're done with water, agenda item number 14 is wastewater collection system master plan amendment. Update and request for council direction. City staff and representatives of engineering consultant Murray Smith will provide a summary of the draft wastewater collection system master plan amendment. This plan provides a detailed analysis and recommendations pertaining to wastewater collection system planning for the development area north of Chubbuck Road. Council may also provide confirmation related to wastewater collection infrastructure projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Skyler Allen. I'm the senior engineer for the City of Pocatello's Public Utilities. I'm joined by Ladon Harris and David Stengel of Murray Smith, and Levi Adams, the wastewater superintendent for the City of Pocatello. I hope not to reprise Deputy Public Work Director Kirkman's adherence to this seat. This is our last agenda item.
Just a minute. I'm going to go ahead and step out. I've got that four pock. If you've got the meeting then.
As soon as we adjourn this, then we'll go into the budget meeting.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, I've got to run.
Not at all. So in order to not revisit all of the preliminary portion of the study, in general, the construction of this is very similar to the water side of things. The collection system master plan was completed in 2012. The combination of the time horizons that were in the 2012 collection system plan and the 2016 water facility plan is what led to picking the time horizons we did in the amendments. And also, the information that was provided from the potential developers in this area that we're considering overlapped between water and sewer. So the projections for the EDUs and the population associated with that is the same information for the sewer system as it was for the water system. So we'll move directly into the details of the sewer collection system.
Thank you, Skyler. So this just kind of gives you an idea of, again, the infrastructure we're looking at on the sewer side. It's primarily piping is the real driver. Where gravity isn't available to convey flows because of the topography, you may have lift stations that pump it and then force main piping to convey the flows, ultimately ending up, obviously, at your WPC to treat the water. So those are kind of the components we were looking at to make sure things were adequate. Very similar to what we just talked about on the water side, there's a number of alternatives that we looked at. One, we wanted to make sure that we were coordinating what you already had looked at and approved in your 2012 system plan. The other was kind of similar to what we talked about on the water side. What existing infrastructure could be utilized to serve this area and where were there benefits to going one route versus another? For example, one of the areas we looked at was using your existing gravity piping that ultimately ends up in the McKinley lift station, and was there adequate capacity there, or does there need to be a new trunk line put in? So you'll see kind of in the near-term recommendations that there's a little bit of capacity that can be utilized there, but ultimately, new gravity piping will be required. Again, there was some, well, and just kind of just to mention the difference between gravity piping versus pumping and force main. Sometimes, gravity piping is quite a bit more expensive upfront because you have to dig pretty deep, and the piping can actually cost a bit to construct. But long-term, the life cycle costs are obviously cheaper because you're not maintaining pumps and, you know, the power and everything required to operate pumps. So there's a bit of a balance there, so we also tried to look at that, where there were options available. And then ultimately, again, especially here, even more so than on the water side, the potential for coordination with the City of Chubbuck and what are the, what would be the implication there in terms of the infrastructure that was built if you were sending your flows west first and then obviously ultimately ending up in your WPC, or whether you were kind of sending them south through your system and ultimately ending up in your WPC. So looked at a number of different options in this report. This is kind of the recommendation that came out of it. Again, a lot going on up here. Keep in mind, a lot of what's north, the color coding just represents the timeframes, and again, kind of indicates where pipe sizing would need to be different if you were building it for long-term versus short-term. And as Skyler mentioned, we really wanted to look at that, even though it may not be the city's requirement to construct that infrastructure. They need to be able to have some idea based on the loading and information we were looking at, whether what the developer is proposing is adequate or reasonable to serve the area. And then ultimately, how that much flow would impact the existing system area. So kind of zooming into the existing area, this blue box information, the, the red piping that's kind of off to the right along Olympus Drive is a recommendation for some near-term improvements to, again, just increase the capacity on your existing gravity system a bit that conveys to the McKinley lift station, but understanding that ultimately, that wasn't going to meet even the kind of 2020 horizon that we looked at. So the next recommendation was to start thinking about a gravity trunk line on Fairgrounds Drive that would convey flows, and ultimately, again, end up in the McKinley lift station. Then you have a couple of options from the McKinley lift station, which is do you put it through the lift station and pump it, which is option A that kind of shows the alignment with a force main up along the I-86 corridor, or is there the option to find a gravity alignment that would actually get the flow to the WPC without having to pump? So we looked at Quinn Road as actually an option, but as Skyler will talk about, there may be some different alignments that are considered ultimately, even if you were to go gravity service versus pumping. So again, as I mentioned, kind of the near-term, the very near-term, is some of these improvements on the McKinley gravity pipeline, which hopefully ends in the lift station. Some of these improvements, including the ones Skyler's going to talk about on Griffith Road, were actually recommended in your 2012 plan that needed to be upsized to serve your existing customer base. And then the Fairgrounds pipeline, obviously, would be kind of another complete trunk line that would convey flows potentially to McKinley or gravity all the way to the WPC. And Skyler can talk a little bit more as well about kind of the coordination of that and the side with the developer. But those would be kind of the near-term requirements for infrastructure. Again, this is a similar kind of full service cost outlined through these different time horizons to get all of this major infrastructure in place to serve this area. It gets, you know, there's some variation depending, again, option A versus option B, and the long-term would be whether you're doing gravity or pumping, and just keeping in mind, so option A is a force main option where you're pumping, and it is a little bit cheaper, but life cycle costs can come into play there. Option B would be trying to utilize gravity all the way to the WPC. And most of this cost is, again, piping that you'll kind of see, and a lot of it is where we have the first item indicated, northeast area piping, all of the area internal to the development. So similar to what we talked about on the water side, this is not a estimate of city-born cost. This is just to serve the entire area, including developer construction and some improvements to your existing system. So, Skyler, if you want to talk about what's going on?
Sure. So to discuss just quickly what we are working on right now. The Griffith Street Collection Pipe Replacement Project came before council last week. We had the pre-construction meeting for that project yesterday, and it will begin construction on the 25th of March. That project is a little over 1,100 feet of sewer line on Griffith Street between Yellowstone and McKinley. It was identified in the 2012 collection system master plan as needing upsized. We are upsizing that pipe to an 18-inch line and attempting to correct some areas where it had insufficient pipe slope to convey the flows that we need to have. The costs on that were 318,000 and some change. A-plus construction will be doing that project. As again, we have March 18th on here. They informed us yesterday they'd like to start on the 25th. Particularly with the weather we have had yesterday and today, that seems like a prudent decision. So that will be happening shortly. We're continuing to look at the McKinley lift station to try and identify what kind of a capacity we could, we could achieve in that lift station. The lift station's not equipped right now with any fixed flow monitoring, and so we're only able to tell how long the pumps run and get an estimate based on that, what we have. We have taken some mobile flow testing units and attempted to pump test those, but due to the lift station and how close it has to be to the pumps, there's some constraints on that. We've had a difficult time getting a very accurate reading on what that flow, that we actually are able to push from that lift station right now. So we're continuing to work on that. What we're trying to identify is what's our true capacity now, and what potential would we have at that lift station through, hopefully, some fairly simple improvements through the electrical controls and maybe upsizing some pumps, which wouldn't require a complete reconstruction of the station to increase the capacity there and provide some additional time before we would have to construct a second lift station. we would have to construct a second lift station. So in addition to that, we are currently working with ITD on some, a concept for utilizing the I-86 corridor as a potential route to get a future line to connect all the way out to the WPC. The option A within this report shows that pressure line. We currently have the pressure line that is fed by the McKinley lift station, which, if you don't know, the McKinley lift station is right next to Costco, over next to the railroad overpass. So it pumps from that lift station, goes to the north a bit, and crosses the railroad, and goes around Lowe's and then into the I-86, along I-86. It's not in the right-of-way, but adjacent to the I-86 right-of-way. We have an easement that runs all the way out to west of Philipin Road, and then it crosses over and goes on out to the treatment plant. We would essentially parallel that line, and if ITD is amenable to this, we would be able to utilize the right-of-way for the interstate to chase that line out to the treatment plant.
Would both lines remain in service?
Both lines, our current consideration is that both lines would remain in service. The second line would serve either a new lift station near McKinley or at another location somewhere along this overall conveyance corridor that we're considering. So as I mentioned, we're working on what exactly that means and trying to get some concurrence from ITD on that overall concept. We'd like to get an agreement with them, says they're willing to allow us to do it when we get to that point. It's not an immediate need, but we project that it will be something that we need to do ultimately. North Gate Development, again, the same pieces of the development that applied to water are in the process right now. There's a major portion of gravity trunk line, which was constructed within the Olympus Extension, and their first lift station is partially constructed within the crossings Division One, and we have the remaining two divisions of the crossings and some of the districts in various stages of plating in their interview. Moving forward, again, we'll look to, as soon as DEQ provides final approval of the amendment, we will present that to council for final approval. I mentioned the I-86 corridor discussion with ITD. We're continuing to work on that, presenting them with a concept and looking forward to receiving some feedback from them on what will work along that corridor, what they're willing to accept and agree to. Within the rate study and current budgeting efforts, we are planning for the facility plan for the WPC facility to be updated in 2020. So we'll be looking to contract for an update to the facility plan. The previous facility plan was 2010 and was done prior to the recent phosphorus improvements at the treatment plant. That improvement made a lot of changes to the treatment plant and was also nearly 10 years ago. So it is time to revisit that study. That study would incorporate the flow projections included within this amendment in order to analyze where we stand in terms of plant capacity and what will be needed as we move forward. We did look at part, as part of this amendment, at our current treatment flows and how much additional flow we can add to the plant before we are hitting our capacities. We do have some room still. So right now, we're averaging about 6 million gallons a day, a little over 6 million gallons a day. And our first treatment threshold for capacity is about 8.5 million gallons a day, and that's on our biosolids. That portion is also part of what we're looking at within the rate study to provide some, some funding in the next few years to further study what can be done to address the biosolids And again, the McKinley lift station evaluation, that's one that we're continuing to work on internal to the city.
How old is that lift station?
It was built in 2004, 2002, I believe, was the number it was given. No, it was older than that.
It's older than that. It was '99, I believe.
Your map showed going under I-15, too, so you got, do you have to get a permit to do that with ITD?
Correct.
But that is not a major obstacle.
It's an obstacle, but not the biggest one.
And where you're doing it, if I'm, I think there's a grade here. How are you getting it? Are you going along the freeway or through the edge of the subdivision? How far down do you have to go?
Yeah, that will, that will depend largely on what ITD is willing to allow within that, the interstate corridor through there. Part of what prompted that is the fact that ITD intends to update the flying Y interchange in the next few years, and we would like to kind of have this plan in that mix as well so we make sure that whatever we're, we have conceptually planned matches with what they're intending to do with that interchange, and as well as some timing for being able to have that conversation with people at ITD.
Is there a seasonal difference in flow rate, Levi?
There is what you would call a wet weather flow, but there's not a lot of difference. We do a pretty good job of maintaining what they call INI, the influx of rainwater, but there still is some change in flow. We don't have nearly the change the water does as far as the, that's what I've come up here.
Generally speaking, we don't have flow metering on the wastewater side. Our wastewater rates are based on people's water consumption in some places of the city. And so we base that off of the average winter water demands because that, that matches most closely to people's wastewater production. So moving forward, we'll continue to coordinate using this amendment as the framework to guide development in the infrastructure that they need to provide in order for us to accept that infrastructure. And then planning and budgeting, we discussed a couple of the things that we're looking at, needing to complete. And then again, we did look at some, some benchmarks to use for operations staff needs within the collection system side of wastewater. And then I mentioned the Griffith Street project, and we have a couple other smaller things that we may have construction for over the next couple of years. So again, as far as council action items, we will be presenting the final facility plan amendment, the collection system master plan amendment for the council's approval after we get approval from Department of Environmental Quality. And then we'll be moving forward with the Griffith Street project. We have that. Gravity pipeline auction coming down Fairgrounds that the developers expressing some interest in the not-too-distant future, that they need some additional capacity there. So we'll continue our planning efforts on that, working with ITD on that corridor, and then the ones we discussed on the water side.
Somewhere in these two reports, I saw something about electrical upgrade. I don't remember if that was water or sewer.
That would have been on the sewer side. That would have been related to this McKinley lift station.
What does upgrading electrical have to do with flow? Increasing motor RPMs or?
Yeah, so we had, at the time we were working on the report, we suspected that the controls in the lift station were restricting the maximum speed of the pump. So those pumps are on a variable frequency drive, and they were set to operate at a 95% of total speed. And in order to take them to 100%, there was suspicion that we may need to do some upgrades to the electrical infrastructure in that station. That no longer seems to be what the issue is of that station, but we're still digging into that and trying to identify what, what we can do at the McKinley lift station.
How deep do you vary a sewer pipe?
It depends on the location. So if we're in a pressure transmission line, we try to vary it sufficient to be below cross depth, normally about between five and seven feet. If we're talking about a gravity collection line, that is dictated in large part by where you start and where you're going to end and what the topography is. So we can size a pipe and go a little bit less slope with a larger pipe, but there's constraints on that. And we do have to make the pipe slope downhill, even if the ground doesn't slope downhill, in order to convey water by gravity. So even if you're, if you have to come through a built-up section, it gets pretty deep in some spots. So the gravity collection line, we don't like to be more than about 15 feet deep, but we do have lines that are deeper than that.
On your cost, the, I caught the McKinley gravity pipeline upsizing cost, but what was the fairgrounds? You have a slide, but it was your near-term?
Sure. About seven, almost $8 million?
Back.
No.
Back one more, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Fairgrounds Drive Pipeline, that is discussing all the way from Chubbick Road all the way to the McKinley lift station. That's a fairly sizable length of pipe with several physical obstacles to have to.
You said all the way from the McKinley to Chubbick Road?
Yeah, beginning at Chubbick Road and Fairgrounds, and then coming to the south and then across the interstate down to the McKinley lift station.
What security is there for your lift stations?
They are all locked, and they all have fencing, for the most part, around them?
Not all of them have fencing. The McKinley does have fencing around it, but everything's always locked up. And most people, I aren't really sure what they, vandalism would be the biggest part. If there is anything that's above ground, it's usually in a concrete building as well.
Same thing true for the water?
It is. Yeah, they're not, most of the water buildings at Wells are not fenced. A few of them are, but they are all locked, and the majority of them are in cinder block or concrete buildings.
Do we have any security warning systems or anything in those?
Some of the stations do have intrusion alarms, which connect through the SCADA system, but not all. We do check them all. All of the active wells are checked every day at St. Truom on the lift station side.
Anything else?
Unless you have more questions for us, no.
Any other questions? Skylar, Ladon, David, Levi, thank you very much. We will stay tuned.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, five minutes, and then we will go into the council budget development meeting. We will not cover all of the items. We will not have time to do that, so we will probably deal primarily with the fiscal year budget development items under Joyce's direction.